All right. Y'all ready? Welcome, everyone. I'd like to welcome everybody to the Public Hearing Board Workshop for the 2022-2023 Budgets for Thursday, June 2nd. We will open with an invocation led by School Board Member Dyson and the Pledge Allegiance led by School Board Member Mark Blue. Please rise.
Heavenly Father, we come to you today asking for your guidance, wisdom, and support. Help us engage in meaningful discussion, allow us to grow closer as a board, and help us to nurture the bonds of our school community. Help us to continue to grow our educational partnerships with an increased passion for and dedication to our work for children. We pray, Lord, for every child, those with learning challenges and those who are soaring to new heights without limitations on their full capabilities. We pray for our teachers, paras, and educational leaders across the district as we together maintain our dedication to the work of increasing lifelong opportunities for all students through our current challenges. Lord, we ask for the joy of learning to be restored to students who are discouraged by their progress. We ask for the joy of teaching to be restored within our educators across the district. We pray that they feel our high admiration, appreciation, and support. We pray for all of our schools to be places of great discovery, adventure, respect, and creativity. In your holy name, amen.
Excuse me. We move now to roll call. Madam Secretary.
District 9, President Chapman.
Present.
District 4, Vice President Collins.
Present.
District 1, Mr. Blue.
Here.
District 2, Mr. Lannis. District 3, Mr. Howard. District 5, Ms. Ware Jackson. District 6, Ms. Dyson.
Present.
District 7, Mr. Goday.
Present.
District 8, Ms. Bernard.
We have a quorum. We move to Item B1, Discussion of the Proposed 2022-2023 General Fund Budget, the Budget Resolution, and the 2022-2023 Salary Schedules. Kamis Lopez.
Superintendent, I am pleased to present this balanced budget for the 2022-23 fiscal year. Fiscal year. Maybe, okay. The proposed 2022-23 General Fund Budget includes staff recommendations for revenue and expenditures, revenue projections based on the revised 2021-2022 budget approved in May of 2022. This public hearing is required by budget law, and proper advertisement was provided through the advocate. The financial summary for the general fund includes total revenues of $517.5 million, total expenditures of $515.5 million, a final balance of $2 million, and an ending fund balance of $54.6 million. The district has worked diligently to maintain a positive balance in the past several years, and we are strategically using our dollars in additional funding. As a result, we will have a positive balance of over $2 million for the fiscal year. The superintendent and the finance department are committed to bringing you a balanced budget each and every year. This chart shows the relationship between student enrollment and general fund staffing. The district is strategically placing staff in appropriate funding sources. As a result of this strategy, the district will continue to build a reserve in the general fund. The projected unassigned fund balance at the end of the fiscal year will be $54.6 million. Unassigned fund balance is the fund balance that the district can use at its discretion with no restrictions. Projected assigned fund balance at the end of the fiscal year will be $29.7 million, inclusive of inventory cost. Assigned fund balance is the funding that must be used for that specific purpose it was designated for. The total projected fund balance at 63023 is $84.2 million. As a percentage of the general fund revenue, it is projected to be 16%. As many of you know, the Louisiana Department of Education requires a 7.5% fund balance as a percentage of general fund revenues. The district's board goal is 15. By reaching this goal, we can ensure that the district is financially healthy and our fund balance is stable. The next slides will provide you information regarding our projected revenues for next year. Revenue is projected to increase by $7 million. Ad valorem tax collections are projected to increase 5% or $11 million. The vast majority is due to the roll forward millage approved by the board in March of 2022. Sales tax collections are projected to decrease 14% or $13.8 million. The district will follow the city parish government and the recommendations of Dr. James Richardson, and assuming a 3% increase over the 2019 sales tax collections. While we know this is a very conservative approach, it will protect the district in the long run by ensuring that there is not a financial cliff in the middle of the year. Other local revenues will remain mostly unchanged, with a slight increase in administrative costs due to the growth in charter schools and an increase in the use of the extended programs in the district. MFP is projected to increase by 7.2 million, and this is inclusive of the raises provided by the legislature this year. Federal revenues will increase $2 million with an additional year of ESAR funding in comparison to the revised 2021-2022 budget. ESAR funding has continued to provide a unique opportunity for our district. It will allow the strategic plan to dictate the movement of both budget and general fund for all students and staff. It will allow the opportunity to increase the district's fund balance to ensure that we can build a reserve in later years. The next slides will provide you information regarding our projected expenditures for the fiscal year. A reduction of $1.6 million is included, which includes our prior year encumbrances. Regular education will decrease by $1 million, inclusive of streamlining staff by using student enrollment projections. Magnet education will increase by $2.2 million through the growth of the Montessori program, the opening of both of our Focus Choice schools, as well as the expansion of the Mandarin program in our district. Special education will decrease by $1.8 million as staffing is being appropriately aligned with both student needs and student enrollment. Other instructional programs will increase by $3 million. This is inclusive of the Fine Arts Department funding, Athletic Department, and the increase of the ROTC throughout our district. This also includes an increase in the number of TOR positions based upon student enrollment. Special programs will increase by $2.8 million with the inclusion of 40 ESL teachers that will help many of our students within the district who struggle with English as a second language. Vocational programs will increase by $1.5 million as Pathways to Brighter Futures grows throughout our 9th grade cohort. Pupil support services will decrease by $4.6 million as the district realigns both staff and student services to align with our strategic plan. Instructional staff services will decrease by .7 million, and general administration will increase by .4 million. The majority of the increase in general administration is due to the $300,000 for election fees to pass our property tax in this next fiscal year, as well as an increase in property tax collection fees. Operations and plant services will increase by $1.1 million. Along with the continued growth in both electricity and natural gas, the district has not completed the contract with Hess for facilities management. We are maintaining our current cost levels for this contract, as well as increasing funds for our building management contract that is currently under RFP. Security will decrease by .2 million. The district will begin hiring 26 full-time SROs for the district that will ensure the safety of all of our students. Transportation will decrease by $1.8 million. The DERA funding will continue to fund 26% of our bus purchases. While fuel costs remain higher than average, we will continue using our ESAR funding and federal funds to fund the programming and our software purchase for the district's transportation department. Central service will decrease by .9 million. This is inclusive of accountability, information technology, human resources, and public information. Other use of funds will increase by $15.4 million for the continued growth of charters in our district. The next two slides are a summary of the special revenue book that is available on board docs, and each board member has a copy at their chair. It is also available in the general fund budget book on pages 221 and 222. The district has several opportunities. We've taken advantage of the first one by rolling forward our millage, and we will receive a $9 million boost in the district in January of 2023. The review of land sales and school consolidation in the district continues to be an opportunity. The pathways for brighter future programs is allowing the streamlining of instructional programs at the high school level. Departments continue on an ongoing review for possible opportunities to consolidate and streamline activities. Program evaluation continues throughout the district to align all programs with the district's strategic goals and KPIs. We will continue to shift our priorities to both literacy and numeracy of our students. Comprehensive staffing program has assisted the district in properly staffing all locations based upon both the enrollment and needs of the student populations. Now, as you know, we have shared all of our information with the board. This is our committee of the whole workshop, and our next step is the approval of the budget at our next board meeting on the 16th. Any questions?
Not at the moment. So we will go to Item B2, the special revenue fund budgets. Did you cover it? No presentation for that? Okay. All right, seeing no comments from the board, we are taking comments from the audience on the budget. Anyone would like to comment on the budget?
Hello, board members. My name is Mary Patricia Ray. I reside in Evelyn Ware Jackson's district, and my son attends the Doofrock School. This annual budget has a lot of things that I find satisfactory, but I'll cover as many as I can in my brief three minutes. The charts provided for us on a school-by-school basis that are meant to show the changes from year to year are not crafted in a manner calculated to let the public understand what's actually happening. So one good example would be that Doofrock's chart shows that last budget year, we had two employees listed as therapists, and now we have none as the parent of a student who receives speech therapy and occupational therapy. While I would love to trust that that is being fully funded in some other area or bucket of the budget, I have requested repeatedly information on where it is funded and cannot get that information, so I will continue to attempt to verify that. That's just one example. The other thing I wanted to point out is that if you visit Bessie's dashboard on COVID expenditures, our district received $262 million. Less than $3.5 million of that money is being spent on special education, and I'll disclaim that by saying that I'm sure the response would be that there are special education services built into other portions of the budget. This doesn't reflect purchase of equipment that's under other line items. What I would tell you is that 15% of our students are special education students. That number's going to go up because of COVID, and this allocation of a mere $3.5 million is not appropriate to address the special education needs in this district when we can't get the ESS office to answer us, when we email them, ever. When we cannot get the resources we're asking for now and are told when we ask for resources in our IEP that the district doesn't have money for those resources. And also, when we know that the number of special education students in our district is about to go up because of our inability to diagnose and assess students during the pandemic, the point of this money is to service those children. And I have a lot of other concerns about the staffing changes that I think are incredibly ridiculous, so I'll sum them up by saying this. You don't, anyone who's telling you as board members that you have to take from some children in order to provide to others is wrong. You don't have to do that. I'm a taxpayer here in this city on three properties. I'm proud to be a taxpayer here to support this school system, and I'm here to tell you, you don't have to take from any children to give to others, and whoever's telling you that you do has an ulterior motive. So please don't support any budget that reallocates staff. There's three, there's two administrative positions being cut from Doofrock, and to their credit, they try to answer us when we contact them. They don't have enough staff now, so cutting them is not realistic. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, Storm Matthews. If I wasn't the hoarder that I am in keeping everything before the flood, I had a box I could have gone and found receipts from 2007 where I paid my electric bill. So I have last year's budget, where I can go in between the draft of this year and last year's, and I can see if the numbers match up. So I'm really glad that I have that because I have access to the fact that the MFP budgeted for every single school last year is not what is listed as the MFP on this year's, or this year's budget, where it's listed as what last year was supposed to be. The numbers don't match. Why did those numbers change? Those numbers shouldn't have changed. That was last year's budget, so it should be the same as what was on last year's budget, shouldn't it? I mean, I would think so. I mean, I have the budget with me back there in the back if you guys would like to see it. Also, why is the virtual school elementary fully staffed? I mean, I wanted that under EBR. I was firmly saying we should not outsource that to ASU. I was at home on my bed emailing all of you fervently, like, please don't do this, and then y'all passed that and sent it to ASU. That was the board meeting where Dr. Narcisse said that that was the flagship university. And, but we fully staffed it. Why is that budgeted when this board said, did what Dr. Narcisse wanted, and sent it to ASU? Why is that fully staffed by EBR teachers? Why is that budgeted? That's not what this board decided to do. That's not the policy that was passed. Also, there is a school in this district with one 5th grade teacher. Do not pass this budget. Look at your staffing allocations for every single one of your schools. Your schools cannot function with the way that they are currently staffed. They are set up to fail. Call your principals. Talk to them. They have been made promises that have not come forward. In fact, at the last board meeting, it was said here and said that one specific school would get all those literature teachers back. They, I think it was said four times on record. Oh, they'll probably get those teachers back. They'll probably get those teachers back. We haven't gotten those teachers back. We haven't gotten the positions back to even find other staff. What happened to that? That hasn't happened. But there is a school with one 5th grade teacher, one. What is that school supposed to do? If by some miracle, there are only 26 5th graders in that entire school, please tell me what that, what that school is supposed to do with one 5th grade teacher. Please, somebody answer that. Any educator knows that that can't happen, but this district isn't being run by educators.
Jamie Robinson. Today I come to you guys appealing to your, since it's leaders, serving in different capacities. We all know that it's not easy to be a leader in this town. Sometimes we make difficult decisions, and sometimes we don't agree with our friends. But guys, I think here we can say that the way that this has been done is wrong. This administration has done a horrible job in the way that they have presented this to the community, its stakeholders, faculty and staff members, and you guys, the people who hire this administration, the people who are set to hold this administration accountable. And their apology should not be enough. They have consistently lied to us at every turn. They've thrown principals under the bus and made them seem as if they had something to do with this budget, that they had real input, and they did not. They have threatened school leaders and told them they better not come forward. They better not galvanize with their community leaders. I have leaders who are afraid to call us, who are elected to other capacities. We're not even on the school board, and they're scared to talk to us. And it's because of the intimidation and the fear tactics of this administration. It's sad, and I never thought I would see such a dark cloud over the East Baton Rouge Parish school system. When you look at this CSM and you look over this budget, we talk about equity, and this is going to help underserved communities, underprivileged communities, and it doesn't. You look at those schools that are failing and schools with children that look like me, they are going to have part-time clerks, part-time guidance counselors, no assistant principals, no deans of students. They're going to have a principal, and that principal won't really be a principal, only entitled only, because they won't be able to adequately do their jobs. There's too many fires in a day that they would have to put out and not have the support that they need. How are they going to push through classrooms? How are they going to develop their teachers? It is not too late to say no to this. Tell these people that we don't want it. We want what's best for our children. They tell us it's about the children. They tell us it's about the community. It's time for us to make them show us. And as I conclude, we, we have to call these people as they are. And the truth is, they're liars. But will you be able to sleep with yourself tonight or in coming weeks when it's time to approve this budget? Are you going to be the liar? Or are you going to uphold liars? I don't believe that any of you guys are capable to do either or. Thank you.
Hi, Angel Bradford. I'm just up here to ask y'all to please vote. Well, I know today's not the vote, but in your considerations, please plan to vote. No, for the budget as it stands, and consider any of the school programs that, in schools that we asked y'all not to approve to go back and get rid of because we can't afford them, and get back to reinstating the teachers and the job positions that we had, dismantling your comprehensive staffing model because it doesn't serve anyone equitably or equally. In addition to that, I will say Pathways to Brighter Futures, also something that we can't afford, that we should consider not approving, and of course, people don't support it anyway, especially if it's mandated or attempted to be mandated. And the only other thing I'll lift up is I am the chapter leader for Moms Demand Action for Gun Sense in America. I have reached out in the past, so if we want to talk about school resource officers versus sheriffs and all the other capacities, we need more time to discuss that versus just throwing that in the budget or making those changes. Thank you.
Good afternoon. I am not sure. Good afternoon. I'm Kelvin Wells. What this budget does for the teachers and parents and students of East Baton Rouge Parish, puts them in between a rock and a hard place. The rock is, the road to hell is paved with good intentions. We know that. So either this budget is well-intentioned, even though we enforce this mandate that the majority of people don't want, and moves teachers around in a way that's inequitable and distributes resources in ways that are inequitable. And these are not opinions. These are things that are demonstrable numerically and statistically. So that's the rock, that this budget is well-intentioned and does things incorrectly. The hard place is, there are no good intentions in that this budget is in a continued attempt to destabilize and eventually privatize the East Baton Rouge Parish public school system. And if I were trying to destabilize and privatize East Baton Rouge Parish's public school system, I too would move teachers around in a way that's inequitable. I would disregard parents and teachers and students and their opinions with these notions of knocking on doors, but there's a big difference between knocking on the door and living in the house. And so it's very easy to sit behind the dius, week after week, month after month, and make these claims of phone calls and knock on doors and listening to constituents when constituents come here, month after month, meeting after meeting for hours and hours and hours on end, and sit and ask you either to not do the things that you're planning to do in this budget or to do them differently, and members of this board, some more than others, sit there, look them in their faces, and proceed to disregard their commands. So that, that's the hard place. And it seems like, you know, this is just some sort of masochist cycle that members of the community that are so engaged and have time and sacrifice and make time to continue to come here and ask you all and plead with you all, put numbers in front of you all. It seems like it's an exercise of futility and insanity to do so, but there is a way out. We have two options. Option A is, we wait for our leaders to change their hearts and their minds and their opinions and decide to listen to us and work for us. We wait for that to happen. Or option B is, we change our leaders through the electoral process. And I think after my time here in East Baton Rouge Parish, which is my entire educational career, from elementary school to graduate studies, I think we're a bit tired of waiting for y'all to change. So we're getting to the point, and we're at the point now where it's time to change y'all. And that revolving door of leadership is no good, but if bad things keep walking in the door, then we'll have to walk some of you out. So thank you. Um, so thank you for your time.
Any other comments from the audience? Seeing none, back to the board, Madam Vice President, Collins.
The presentation mentions use of Esser, E S S E R dollars a couple of times, like regular education. Uh, we'll be funded through Esser funding, um, in several other places. My question is, where in the proposed budget, general fund or special budget, it should be in the special budget for, uh, special revenues? Where do we see the Esser dollars? Esser, wherever we at? Esser two, three, one, any Esser dollars, whatever Esser dollars we saying we gonna use to balance the budget, where is it in the budget document?
Sure. So the Esser dollars are not in the special revenue budget, which is where they would typically be because they are a grant because they've already been approved. So the special revenue budget gives us the opportunity to approve the 20.
I'm sorry.
Sure.
Other items in the special revenue budget have already been approved. Just because, I mean, we still have to show approved before this moment or not. The point of the budget document is to show all the revenue we receive, all the expenditures we intend to spend. We did it last year. When are we? So let me ask this other question. When, who's responsible for sending an update to Louisiana Department of Education on what money we have budgeted and what money we have spent?
So that would be done through the AFR process and that would be myself. I collect all the data from all of the different departments of what is in for revenues, for grants. I also collect the same data for our charter schools and it is put together into one consolidated annual financial report, which is submitted to the state no later than September 30th. And any corrections that have to be made must be submitted by October 31st.
Okay. So it's submitted annually?
Yes, ma'am.
So then as of October of last year, maybe, then what is currently on the website since we already supposed to have planned to spend and spent all of the Esser dollars, it should be there?
What we spent in '21 and in 2020, 2021 is available because that is already spent. The '21, '22 fiscal year will not be available until this coming October because the year hasn't ended and they give us the opportunity to close the year, which typically will not happen until August 15th. And that's when the auditors begin their true work, which is when we do the annual financial report, which they then tie into their data. And then we provide you with our annual comprehensive financial report by December.
Okay, thank you. Uh, I knew there were probably, which is why I asked, uh, you know, when when you send it, et cetera. Uh, and so then now I can go back and process based on when things are submitted?
And if you need an AFR, ma'am, I'm happy to provide you one. I I keep copies of them years back.
I appreciate that. Um, on page 13 of the budget, is it correct to say we had an increase of 35.3 million in the general fund expenditures from '20 to '21 fiscal year?
Yes, ma'am.
To this, excuse me, to this current?
From the actual to proposed, yes, ma'am.
All right. In addition, are we projecting to have an increase of 15.6 million in general fund expenditures from '21, '22 to next school year?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. On page four of the budget, the total projected revenue for, um, '22, school year '22, '23 is expected to increase by seven million?
Yes, ma'am.
However, expenditures are expected to increase by 15.6?
Yes, ma'am.
Does the increase in expenditures include the increase of 16.8 million spending on charter schools?
So the increase is inclusive of the federal indirect cost, which is only going up 2 million compared to last year, but that's based on the revised budget. As you know, the indirect cost rate was significantly larger last year because of Esser. We will remain at that large indirect cost rate and include an additional 2 million. Um, due to my estimates for sales tax, along with the roll forward millage, your property and sales tax is going to remain somewhat flat. I am very hopeful that we will receive more sales tax, but I will not put us in the position of a financial cliff in the middle of the year. So I'm going to go with the State Economist recommendations and provide that estimate and hope that we will actually receive more.
Okay. How much of the one-time Esser funds or tax plan funds are being used to subsidize the balance of the general fund budget? That's why I need to see.
I can provide you that information, ma'am.
And then I also need if all of the Esser money and when is the last day of the, uh, that the federal, when is the last year that the, uh, federal government gave us to deal with the Esser money to spend?
23, 24.
All right. General counsel, when I was asking about information for bright futures and the fiscal note on that, I mentioned that it was important to look at years one through four, which would then show fine this first year, ninth grade only would be a cost, but it would be irresponsible for us as a board to say, oh, just X number of dollars, because we only looking at ninth grade year without understanding that we go down this road, which good or bad or indifferent, we go down this road. This year is one amount, the next year and the next year only until that ninth grade cohort is in the 12th grade. The recurrent expense maxes out in their fourth year about. I was, it was explained to me that we cannot approve more than the first year's budget. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am. Louisiana Budget Act anticipates an annual budget to be approved by a board, whether it be a special budget or a general budget. So so it does not preclude a board member's request for a projection beyond the first year. But as far as approval, well, we're dealing with public funds. And so I don't believe the Budget Act anticipates committing funds beyond the first year, an annual allocation by the board, if that makes sense.
Would that apply to Esser funding?
Well, Esser funds were special, um, in in the sense that they were they were given to, in my, I'm speaking on layperson's terms without looking back at the Esser guidance, but they were given to boards with the intention of making sure that school systems and school boards and public entities could address, um, issues related to COVID.
Okay, but did they give money to us and say, you can wait until '23, '24 to use it or you can use it all right now? What did they say? What is, what is, how is the money coming in?
Those budgets, I believe, and I can let Ms., uh, Kelly speak to that a little more detail, but I believe those budgets were given to us with the intention of addressing strategically COVID shortages, like.
Okay, but my question is, the money is received by us all in one year? Or do we receive X amount in year one, X amount in year two, X amount in year three?
So the entire grant allocation was given into four separate drops. There was strong start, Esser one, Esser two, and Esser three. The entire allocation has been given in one drop. How you use it and in what speed you use it was not dictated. You have until '23, '24. And as with all of our grants, you must expend the money and seek reimbursement. We weren't ever given the money. We are getting reimbursed the money, just like title funding.
Okay, so then one more reason why we need to see Esser dollars in the budget, because we got to get reimbursed and we haven't gotten it?
Yes, ma'am. We have received reimbursement.
Now, you just said we hadn't gotten reimbursement.
No, ma'am. We must seek reimbursement for every dollar. We've never gotten the whole pot of money. They didn't give it to us and tell us to spend. We spend and then we seek reimbursement. We have absolutely seeked reimbursement.
So we have gotten reimb, we have received all 300 and something million dollars?
No, ma'am.
Okay.
No, ma'am. We haven't spent all of it.
All right. Okay.
We we seek reimbursements with all of our federal grants monthly.
So we need to, I think it's important that we keep up with what we supposedly already approved in 300 and something million dollars. We need to keep up with what we said we approved, which is just like everything else in the budget. Whether we approved it already or not, we account for it. That's the purpose of a budget. I'm not saying this to disparage you, okay? The only staff person I have is the superintendent and he directs everyone else and no one that comes to this mic as a staff person is speaking outside of the will of the superintendent. So I'm not disparaging you. I'm actually not trying to disparage anyone, but I am trying to get some clarity.
Sure.
Okay? Um, that's all I have for right now. I have lots of other questions, but I'll save them for another time. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice President Collins. Ms. Dyson.
Yes, I'd like some clarity around our, uh, student transportation services. Um, we have had a very challenging year with transportation. Um, we've had a lot of issues with, um, buses not showing up to school to pick the kids back up to take them home. Um, we've had trail buses and we've had problems with the, uh, school sites being told everything was okay. It was all running well that day, uh, to the point where schools, some schools have had to, um, not just rely on whatever email or whatever they get that all's okay and actually have a staff member pick up the phone, call, verify that, you know, right at the, you know, closer to the end of the day. We still good, you know, and all that. And even told that, yeah, everything's good. And then later to be told, we don't even have a trail bus coming for you, for the all those kids. And so I I feel like, you know, for families, because then they have to emergency get off of work. I mean, it's just not good. And so when I see that we're going to decrease and I know we're building inefficiencies, but I don't know much about the particular efficiencies and what kind of, um, I know we're talking about adding a fourth routing specialist and new transportation software. When will that software be available to the transportation team to get these routes, uh, figured out? And, uh, when we decrease by nine bus operators, um, are we decreasing by positions that we've been working without fill, they were unfilled this year? What what are those nine bus operator? Because if we didn't have enough this year, you know, I'm just trying to figure out how we can reduce by nine and have a better product, quality product.
Absolutely. And I will always defer questions about transportation to both Ms. Scott Spalding and Mr. Bell because they are our transportation experts. I can tell you when I.
Are they here?
Uh, when I do the budget, when I I am discussing with areas such as this, that I don't have expertise in transportation, I always speak to them and we talk about what are your needs? What are the expectations for next year? And so in speaking with them, I know they're adding additional routing specialists. I know Ms. Scott Spalding is working on the RFP, which y'all approved for her to do, um, a couple of board meetings ago for next year. I don't know where she is at with that purchasing process and I'm sure that she has a much better answer than I do.
Thank you very much.
So thank you. So Mr. Bell is the administrative director of transportation. He has prepared the RFP and it's been submitted to Mr. Larry Williams. To my knowledge, it has not been issued as of yet, but that it should be issued soon. I do not have a definitive date. I can get that for you.
What kind of turnaround are we gonna be giving for that RFP?
So it has to be advertised.
Yeah, and it hadn't even gotten there yet for 30 days. So we're in the beginning of June, so now we're in the beginning of July.
Correct.
And then what happens?
So.
Then we have a committee.
Right, exactly, for selection. And then that recommendation is brought back to the board.
And then how long does that take?
The selection committee? I would imagine a week or so. It's already been chosen, actually.
The?
The committee, the selection committee has always, has already been chosen.
Been formed.
Correct.
Okay. And so we're then, we're in mid-July at that point, if everything is running very smoothly. And then we've only got a few weeks there before school starts.
So we will use our current software? That is the plan. Mr. Bell will use the current software to route. That's all he has available to him to do that in the timeframe that we have.
So then we're going to get new software and it's going to change routes midstream, right?
I'm not necessarily sure that it will change routes midstream. I think it'll bring some efficiencies. I think that it will be able to track the students that are actually riding and be able to, um, give the team an opportunity to look at the routes and bring more efficiencies to them. Um, but I I'm not sure that it's actually going to change the routes. It may have children picked up in a different order, maybe at a different time or what have you. But outside of moving kids from a different bus or a different, you know, um, bus operator, I'm not sure that I can confirm that because we haven't seen the software presentation.
I appreciate all the work going into this, but I I'm so sorry we haven't gotten a head start, a sooner start on this because now I'm a mom. I'm a single mom and, um, I have used the summer to arrange like my work knows that I can arrive by this time because this is, you know, and it's all getting organized and 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 they they get these transportation cards and they rely on that information and then they go to their bosses and they communicate what time they need to be at work, what time they have to leave work by, you know, things.
Right.
Parental responsibilities. Um, and so when we start changing things after we're already in a school year, it's just quite difficult for families. So we've got to be very, um, mindful and, uh, really have really good communications going on about, you know, because most of the parents aren't even going to know that, you know, we're in the process of getting the new software and, you know, anything could happen and then they'll get this thing, oh, you know, you're going to be picked up 20 minutes later or, you know, and it's just going to affect them. It's going to be hard if that happens.
So we can ensure to address your concerns and make sure that we operate as effectively as we can for parents and keeping parents and students in mind.
With this whole pillar of customer service, we have to be so mindful, um, and put ourselves in that situation where, you know, and there might, some bosses may not be flexible like that. So we're, you know, we gotta work with people. And 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 so, you know, I just, I hate to decrease the numbers when we had shortages. And so that's a little bit concerning. How many buses were we operating without, I mean, like, how many did we plan to have filled positions that we didn't have filled this year, which caused all these problems? Do you know?
So it's been reported about 20% decrease.
What does that mean in number?
As far as numbers. And so we have 525 and so 20% of of that. So it's 104, I guess it is.
Wow, that we were.
Short.
Short.
That is correct.
And so what is our intention? How are we recruiting and getting them, uh, you know, certificated or licensed to be able to drive our buses? And then what are we going to do as far as retention?
So this summer.
And their accountability for showing up to work when they're supposed to, at the location where they're supposed to, what kind of accountability system, all of that.
So Mr. Bell has been working with the HR department and of course with, you know, myself looking at what the issues are, documenting the issues. Documentation was an issue early on. It just wasn't happening effectively so that HR can manage their process, right? And so we have to follow the protocol established by the district. And so he and I discuss that routinely. There are safety classes and CDL classes that are ongoing literally right now through the middle of July to be able to, um, train and onboard. to be able to train and onboard more staff. So we're working diligently to be able to fill the gaps.
And we don't, with the new schools coming on and any changes, we don't anticipate having to do a seniority changeover.
Yes, they do that. In fact, they just did it for summer school, the last couple of days, actually.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am, that's part of their process.
Every every year? I thought it was only when there were substantial changes to our, they could keep their same routes if there weren't substantial changes.
So it's my understanding that they do it every year. I can correct that for you, but that's my understanding, that's what's been reported.
Okay, find that out if you will.
Sure.
Thank you very much, Ms. Spalding.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dyson, Vice President Collins.
Ms. Spalding, real quick, you mentioned something about, what did you say about the status of the transportation routes for the upcoming school year? They, y'all were able to complete during the routing of the-
We will use the current software to do the routing. The routing has not been completed for school year 2223.
Okay.
We're literally just finishing summer.
Thank you. Ms. Lopez. On slide 12 of your presentation, can you, with the expenditure highlights, explain to me, because I was sorting through different notes, and before I even comment, I want to make sure I understood in the first place. This, you went over operations and plant services and increase, et cetera. Can you go over this slide again for me?
Sure. So operations of plant services will increase by 1.1 million dollars. Along with the continued increase in both electricity and natural gas, the district has not completed the contract with Hess for facilities management. The district is maintaining current cost levels for this contract as well as increasing funds for the building management contract that is currently under RFP. Security will decrease by 0.2 million dollars. The district will begin hiring 26 full-time SROs for the district. This will ensure the safety of our students.
Hold up.
Oh.
Sorry.
It's okay.
I'm trying not to ask too many questions, but since we back on this page, how we gonna increase by 26 and cut 200,000?
Because we are no longer going to be using part-time deputies, there will be 26 full-time SROs.
Okay, now. Be switching from part-time to full-time, are are these new positions? What's the salary? How much we pay, what's the, Jesus. What's the salary of these full-time people, $12 an hour?
No, they're full-time salaried, the median average is $55,000 plus benefits.
So we increasing 26?
We're adding, we've never had, we haven't had, as long as I've been doing the budget, we've never had full-time SROs in the schools.
Yeah, I ain't even gonna debate that point. But the increased 26 positions are all SROs, so all the schools can have a SRO? I mean, is that what you intended by this particular note?
Yes, the schools will have, there will be 26 SROs and that is what is in the security budget.
I mean, so what were we paying the part-time people, 20,000?
It's like $35 an hour, plus they have different benefits. Since they're not full-time, there are deferred compensation, which is a different percentage.
Okay, and I, as I thought about it, after I asked the question, I didn't mean to be quite so specific.
That's okay.
Because I, you know, there's so many moving pieces, I don't necessarily expect you to have every detail in memory.
I do my best, what I don't know, I'll get to you.
So where did we, what other place under security did we cut to compensate for the increased positions and increased salary?
That was the only difference in security was 26 full-time from the part-time deputies that we had previously.
So.
Because we still have the two directors.
So 26 additional people at $55,000, that's 1.4 million dollars.
Correct.
Were we saving 200,000?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Sorry about that, Ms. Ware Jackson.
Thank you, President Tatman. Just a few things in looking at, first, looking at the under general fund expenditures for salaries for aides, I'm sorry, substitute teachers and aides. I see where we have an actual amount under 20, 2020, 2021, but nothing in the revised budget for 2021, 2022, and nothing for next year.
Correct.
Can you, can you expound on that a little?
Well, because the substitutes are no longer part-time employees for us, they're through ESS, they are a contract service. So I, they're coded differently.
So they've been taken, so they don't need to be in this budget since-
No, they're in the budget, they're just not under substitutes, they're under contract services.
Oh, I see, they moved to a different space, okay.
Yes, ma'am.
And as far as sabbatical leave goes, this year the revised was over 200,000, but nothing projected for next year.
We are working diligently to ensure that our staff remains in-house and continues working. That can be adjusted, it always is. Sabbatical is one of those things, you never know when someone's gonna take it and it can be adjusted in the revised budget.
Okay. Superintendent Narcisse, I know we've talked about this, my concerns for the reduction in deans and clerks at the school level. Sort of like the first faces you see, the clerks and all. And I've I've gotten a lot of, a lot of response around that, a lot of concern from from parents about certain schools not having clerks, not having deans, some of those support services that they're accustomed to there. And and I'm wondering, I know Melrose is that school that one of the the speakers was speaking of about not having a fifth grade teacher. But not only that, I know there is a certain allocation for pre-K, but if they've got more than what the allocation is, then the classrooms will have to be larger. So I'm I'm a bit concerned about areas like that. But my biggest concerns tend to be around the the reduction in some of the staff and some of the special programming. Montessori needs certain things that have been available at that school that make make them successful. So that's very concerning that it's sort of like like we're losing some things that we we really need. And those types of things are very concerning to me. There's an increase of bilingual positions, but the ESL teachers will be provided for bilingual education to those schools with the target with the largest bilingual populations. But what about schools that also have bilingual populations but not a huge amount? I'm wondering how how we will cover those as well. A decrease in special education positions. There's just a lot of things in here that are concerning. And I'm wondering if under ESAR funds, we will be able to provide some of the the areas of security that we might be looking to do, you know, with with all of the things in the news and people talking about entrances to schools and making sure that areas are covered. Have we allocated any funding in the budget for any kind of of physical needs that we may need to make adjustments at, at some of the schools to help increase security?
So as far as the the specific school, Melrose or the school you're talking about, we have been, as I shared before, and we'll go over the staffing model. What we ended up doing is we use the ratios, which were similar, they're recommended from the state. State has their ratios. And we tried to ensure that not only all programs are intact, but the number of the faculty to student ratio is first met by law. Because, you know, you can't just staff a school with, you know, administrators, but you need special education teachers, or you have an ESL population, but you don't have an ESL teacher. And so those numbers vary, and those numbers vary by school. What we saw based on our data was the schools where they had a larger ESL population needed an ESL teacher. And so this is where you see some of the allocations that happened. As for, I can get Mr. Cesar Rico, who's a part of our ESL team, can come up and talk about some of those schools that may have one ESL student in there or two, which we don't really have, schools that fall in that category, to explain to you how we worked to try to ensure that each teacher that we had would be able to cover a breadth of students across the district. The challenges that we had previously before in the staffing, before I arrived, was you would have, specific schools would have specific teachers dedicated to a school, but not necessarily either keep up with the proper IEP, for example, or would be covering the students that they should be covering. They would just be dedicated to a school, whether that school had those students or not. That made us violate a whole lot of different things. And also, as we've been sharing before, the reason we ended up reassigning different teachers to different places because we have vacancies in those particular area. And that's how the staffing model was presented. So in our 104 teachers of the 3,200 that we had, if they were in the schools that were disproportionately staffed, we moved them accordingly to those particular areas. And as you heard, there was a fear in those things to close that gap. But if you want to talk specifically about the ESL, I can have Mr. Rico come up and respond to you to know what our strategy has been around that. Cesar?
Well, I started this afternoon, everyone, thank you so much for the opportunity. And Ms. Jackson, thank you for that question, that was a very, very good question. So I'm gonna try to be as clear and as brief as possible in regards to our supports to our English learners, all right? There are two main components that we have to focus on, based on the needs that our kids have, okay? The number one need that all our English learners have is that need need more instruction. They need more rigorous instruction and they need to know these, the teachers need to know these strategies to support them. That's why we have these teachers placed at specific schools. But the teachers are to support our kids who are the, in most in need, who have just come into this country, who speak absolutely no English. All our English learners are not all categorized as just one component. They might come at different levels. A lot of them already know English, but they don't know that academic English because of whatever past situations and such. So the main instruction that we have for them has to be in the classrooms. So the the main, the teacher's main goal, the ESL teacher's main goal is to support those kids that are brand new into the country, right? That's their main focus and goal. Now, for all the other kids, for instance, that might be at a school with maybe two EL students, or maybe 10, let's just say, right? We've increased the number of coaches, right, from my department, in order to make sure that per region, we have coaches that are focused on just these regions to strategically place them in areas to where they will be able to support the teachers, the principals, the counselors, everybody at the schools, okay? For instance, in Region 1, we might not have as much, but Region 2, the Broadmoor Sherwood area, that's our highest population, next to Region 5, I believe, you see? So we make sure that our coaches are are supporting them. Now, I want to just kind of be very, very clear about this. Again, and I want to say it, and I've got a great presentation on Monday to our leaders on this, Ms. Jackson, I'm very, very excited. But our students do not have IEPs. In other words, they don't have disabilities. They speak different languages and as a result, they need different strategies by teachers and administrators and everyone who supports them, paraprofessionals, et cetera, to make sure that we are ensuring that they are receiving the academic English that they need along with their continual growth of their Spanish. So in other words, what we're also doing, this is the the second part, the first part was the the personnel. The second part is the professional development and the operations and ensuring that schools, our leaders, and making sure that our our regular traditional teachers, right? Our coaches, everyone, understand specific strategies to help them. That could be everything from a wordplay activity, that could be everything from a feeling awareness, visuals, there's a lot. I'm sorry, I get excited about this and everything. But the point is that we're making sure that we're providing the proper resources and supports to our kids at that area. Our goal is not to make anything lower, if anything, it's quite the opposite. It's to ensure that we're raising the bar for our kids and ensuring that we understand that because you speak a different language, or students who do speak a different language are untapped potential. These are our kids who are gonna make the biggest difference in our district in the future. So I hope that kind of helps a lot, but I do have PowerPoint and I have everything else.
Did you share with the board when you gave the recommendation on how the staffing model connected to being able to provide more access opportunities to more kids and as they can see it in the budget?
Yes, as in the specific number of students to, students to teacher, Dr. Narcisse, yes. So there was a staffing model that was created that we had to go ahead and look, and again, per school, per region, to see exactly where the most needs were. In those specific schools and everything, we saw that the 22 to 1 ratio and such were best suited, our teachers were best suited to these specific schools. And when I say 22 to 1, these specific students that are coming into the country, again, or that are just here, but maybe have absolutely no academic English, those ESL students. Again, the majority of our ESL students who may speak Spanish and not get the academic English, we're gonna support all of them in every classroom. But the ratio was very important to ensure that these are the identified kids and the projected kids, excuse me, of anticipated kids that are gonna be English learners at these particular schools. And then from there, we're able to specifically allocate the personnel needed at those schools and such. But even the schools that might have just one English learner at that school, I guarantee you that we're gonna have coaches at that school, we're gonna have professional development at that school, we're gonna give them the resources that they need, and we're gonna continue to monitor all this with the principals and the administration to make sure that we move the data and we support all our kids in our entire district. So I I hope that kind of answered the question, Dr. Narcisse.
Yeah.
Thank you, Ms. Jackson, for bringing light to this. Ms. Dyson, yes.
No, we, oh, I'm sorry, I apologize.
One more thing around, just a note around textbooks. I didn't see anything, any allocations for textbooks. Are we completely away from textbooks now, or or is it in a different areas?
Kelly?
It'll be continued to be paid out of ESAR again this fiscal year. We we believe in textbooks, ma'am. We will have textbooks.
Good, and will we have a separate budget that that's strictly about ESAR funding available to us?
I can absolutely reach out to Dr. Bethley and include that in in a request for her to submit. It's not a problem, because she is, with all federal funds, handles all of those budgets. But we can absolutely do that. And and Ms. Collins' question, it's already on my list.
Yeah, we can see, we can, we'll see this before the regular board meeting.
Oh, yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am, I'll I'll talk to her and I'll have it to you next week. No, you'll have time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ware Jackson, I accidentally bumped Ms. Dyson, she was next. Ms. Dyson? I bumped you accidentally, you were on the board.
All right. Mr. Rico, sorry to bring you back up, but I'll be asking the question while you're walking up. Thank you for this information. So you mentioned particular schools that have high, high numbers, higher numbers than, you know, and two specific regions that had concentrations of higher numbers. Can you tell me which schools we're talking about?
Sure, now, there's particular schools in every region.
Yeah, for sure.
I was just using that as an example, for instance.
But where are our- But where are our higher, you know, like the two that you mentioned?
Can, can I give you the three?
Sure.
Okay, so I'm going to go elementary, middle, and high school.
Okay.
Elementary is River Oaks Elementary School. Middle school is Southeast Middle School. And high school is Broadmoor High School. Those three schools and are, I'm sorry, go ahead.
River Oaks.
Yes, ma'am, River Oaks, Southeast.
Southeast.
And Broadmoor High School. Respectful.
And then, but you're just naming three. Like, is there another elementary school that has a large?
We have several. I can name two or three more.
And Board Member Dyson, if I could just get in here. We're going to actually tonight, Dr. Robinson and team are going to give a presentation and my update on all of the programming for the entire district, which will be even more specific by region. Notes was a request the board made, and so we're going to present that. That'll answer specifics even in all these program areas from ESL to Gifted and Talent, to all those locations.
Okay, can you stand by during that? Because I'd like to see what other, you know, a few elementary schools that have some higher concentrations, a few middle, you know?
Absolutely, if you, if you want.
We have a lot of elementary schools. So I'd like to see a few more of them, which, where are these concentrations?
And that's a great question, because data is so important. So making sure that we provide any information in regards to that kind of data is, is perfectly fine.
Yes, we'll, we'll bring Mr. Rico up during that time. And just to give context too, because Mr. Rico and the ESL team has done an outstanding job. Our district did not have a clear strategy on ESL. We've been working with the Council of Great City Schools, because that is our fastest growing population. And so they have been working in collaboration on making sure that we're servicing all kids in a lot of different strategies. And also, Mr. Rico has been engaging in other districts across the country with that, so.
Thank you very much. I'm just hoping that somewhere in here that we can, well, first of all, I see that we're switching some of our character development programs into, that the school now will have to use their title funding to, if they choose to have a character building program at their school. I am a strong proponent of character building programs. I, I know very well that we have to, we have to teach them throughout their educational years, at, at all the different levels. I think that, you know, junior achievement, we're bringing them on in a bigger way. They have a, you know, productive citizenship is included throughout their model. You know, there's, there's a few others. One that I'm particularly impressed with is, I'll go ahead and say it, is Manners of the Heart. I'm very, very excited about what I see them doing on a daily basis as far as, even if they're not there on campus, they give principals messages of, to share with the whole student body, and it's infused in daily experience. And I, I really feel that every single school should have a piece of character development. So I don't know how that's going to work, you know? What they're going to have to give up that they usually use some of their title money for in order to get that character development. But that is a big priority of mine, that every single school, so every single child in this district, we need character development more than ever, and responsibility, and, you know, productive lives and productive citizenship. And so I, it's, it's a pull, because I see, you know, I know we're going to then say, well, uh-oh, we were needing this with our title money, we're going to have to let that go. And that's a concern. So I'd like to get some kind of an idea maybe of how much each school gets in Title I dollars, and how much some of these programs cost. So we'll know like how much is left in a Title I budget per school for them to do the other things that they need to do with that money. Some I know even, you know, feel like they have to use that for a teaching position that's not granted to them in the general fund. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, so I mean, you know, do I need a teacher? Or do I need character development? And I don't want them to have to not have enough to cover both, if that's what they truly need. I wanted to find out in the budget, if you can guide me to, like, where, what, you know, where would we see dollars for restorative practices? Where would we see dollars for SEL, social emotional learning?
So social emotional learning is, is being funded through ESSER right now. And so it is not in the budget. Currently, the only items in the budget for SEL and MTSS are their supplies and travel funding, which is in people appraisal. But the actual staff is funded through ESSER.
And restorative practices?
I'm not entirely sure what restorative practice. I don't know what restorative practice, I know what they are, but I don't know who provides them. I know we have people appraisal.
So if I could just clear up, I want to make sure we don't get confused on the different practices. All of that model falls under what we're, we're going to introduce called our multi-tiered system of support. And those are practices, so restorative practices. You have all the sets of practices, and you know, Stacy Dupree, who leads that work, can talk about that in specifics. But each of the variation of practices is what schools may use to strategize in ways to help socially and emotionally support kids. And so when you talk about that, it's, SEL is kind of a huge category, and there's strategies of stuff in buckets underneath that. And so we're, we have a lot of work to do as a district to kind of work through around strategies. And so if you want more specifics, I can have Stacy come up and explain. But one of the challenges that we have been trying to make sure we work through is to help support schools around what are the high lever strategies that they want to use? Because we've noticed that different schools use the language differently, practices differently, and some of their consistent and inconsistent. And so as they think about how they use their dollars, sometimes it's, it's a little bit varied. So Stacy, if you can just come up and maybe help to kind of clarify.
Because I'd like to know, does a, does a school site, does a, does a principal have autonomy to decide? We are embracing the restorative practice model here at our school. We think it's effective, we see it working. And rather than the SEL approach, I, we, they prefer the restorative practice. I've been hearing this loud and clear, so.
Okay, so I want to explain that multi-tiered systems of support is what the district is embracing that has an academic and a behavioral component. And the whole thing is surrounded by social emotional learning, which is wellness. So each school has written a plan, and in that plan, they have to hit certain indicators. One of those indicators is they also get to choose an additional SEL support program. So they'll all be doing Rethink Ed, and then they can choose RTI, Restorative Practices, Response to Intervention, Safe Schools, Too Good for Drugs. And I have my, my staff here, if you need additional questions, Dr. Narcisse, we can provide that. But they have some, they do have some autonomy to add additional components. And by the end of this month, within the next week or so, we'll have every school's plan for multi-tiered systems of support turned in so that my team can review it.
Okay, just one second. Has plan, okay. So, so if, so it's this multi-tiered approach or multi-system approach?
Multi-tiered systems of support.
Okay. And you said that so restorative practices could be written into their school plan?
That's one of the options they have to choose from.
How many do they, how many are they told they have to pick?
They can pick one, at least one.
Okay.
So they'll have your regular SEL universal curriculum, and then they'll have a support curriculum, which could be that, could be Too Good for Drugs and Violence, Second Steps. Each school will select that. And we have trainers who've been trained in the district. And we're sending additional staff to be trained so that we will have more staff that can go out and use this type of structure and practice in the schools.
And you, you called restorative practices something to intervention?
Response to intervention. They're, they're interchangeable.
Okay.
Just, it depends on what you're reading.
Okay, and okay, so I'm glad to know that the school site has some autonomy. The principals have autonomy on choosing which programs, but they are going to have to be using?
A Tier 1 curriculum.
What dollars to do these things?
We already have the funding in place for these, these other Too Good for, Too Good for Drugs, Safe Schools. That's through Icare. And we also have Icare helping us make sure that RTI, Response to Intervention, and Restorative Practices have people trained. We have the curriculums and we have trainers on campus.
Okay, so that's covered in their, the Icare contract or?
Yes, ma'am. We've already, we've had this, we have this training in place, or we'll have it.
What would, in their, in their school plan, could a program like Manners of the Heart, or one that I know, Leader in Me, could?
The district has a universal SEL curriculum, which is Rethink Ed. There are several schools that have opted to do Manners of the Heart, and that is on a case-by-case basis. And Manners of the Heart is working with those schools to help them supplement the funding.
So they're having, they're, they're not, if they want a character development, they can't be provided it through this plan that they have to come up, that they come up with?
Character development is part of everyday education, and your Rethink Ed is character development. It's just a different way of saying it. When you say social emotional learning, that is character development. If they have other research base, of course, we'll look at that and work with Dr. Narcisse and follow his lead.
So I would request that we, when the schools come up with their plans, that we find a way to include the program that they would like to have included financially for them to fund their plan. And their plan can include a character development program that we've used for years that is successful.
So Board Member Dyson?
So that is my budget request there.
Yes, so Board Member Dyson, we're working with schools on their plans. And so as we go through the options on what they choose based on their data to help develop, we'll, we'll look at that. And so we've been, we work with schools in various ways. What we are pushing schools to do is to make sure that they're following their data on what programs they're using to help drive their support. So we could take a look at.
The funding, if they choose that as part of their plan and write it into their plan.
Yeah, so we'll, we'll work with schools directly, as we've been doing around their, their plans that we're going to have set up. They should have their plans, and by next week, so we'll work with them on there.
So this budget has in it that it would be funded by school-wide title funding. And I want to make sure that they're not having to use title dollars. We got to find another way to fund character development.
The history of how schools have chosen, the reason we have it in the title funds is so schools can choose if they want to add a program. They have flexibility now. The reason we don't do it in the general one is because we're not forcing everybody to do it. Because not everybody wants to do Manners of the Heart. Say, want to do another option. So that's why we have it in the title fund. But the, the point, I want to make sure that we, that I hear you saying that we're very clear is we are working with schools on a plan, because schools did not have a plan. And that's driven by data to ensure that they are doing, using indicators to help support the staff and the different groups are doing to actually do a program that for it to be have full implementation. One of the challenges we've, we've observed even from a data standpoint is we've had a lot of pro, different type of programs, but not clear indicators, no implementation. That's why we were excited that the board adopted a strategic plan that has KPIs, so we can help everybody look at data in order to decide on whether we're making progress or not. We're doing that quarterly.
So when are these plans? Is there a way to get the, what, the request that I made was to bring back the, in the budget to show how much, how much each school gets in title funding, and how much some of these programs would cut, would take that chunk out? And then, you know, what would be remaining of their funding? So can we have that prior to, and then presented at our, the regular board meeting?
Do you want all the schools, school-wide budgets, or just the ones selecting Manners of the Heart?
Well, I, I think we should see all. And where in the budget can you direct me? What if we, I know we've approved Dream Box, Achieved 3,000. I want to see if you can direct me, like, where in the budget, how much are we spending on those programs?
Those are in ESSER.
Okay.
I know Ms. Okonski can speak beautifully to ANET, and Dr. Robinson can speak further to Dream Box.
But the, we're going to see those come up in the ESSER funding? That's all I need to know?
Yes, ma'am.
And that's coming for our next, for our regular board meeting?
Yes, ma'am.
And you're going to present that?
I was going to provide it to each board member.
Okay, if we could also present that, the ESSER funding. I think that's what my colleague had in mind. Okay, alright, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dyson. Vice President Collins?
I apologize. I called you to page 12. And I was just, you confirmed what I thought I understood on this security, and it just blew me away. And so then I forgot all about transportation, which is why I had called you to the mic in the first place. Go ahead and explain what you presented on transportation, please.
Sure, so transportation is going to decrease by 1.8 million dollars. DERA funding was continue to pay 26% of our busing cost, because we're buying all propane buses now. While the fuel costs will remain higher than average, we're going to use ESSER funding to fund the new routing software that will assist with the efficiencies throughout the department.
But none of those changes have taken place yet, right? Because we don't have the software yet?
Not yet.
We don't have the new bus routes yet?
We have an additional routing specialist that's going to assist in.
But in this moment, well?
We do, we do have the new routing specialist.
So how did we determine 1.8 million?
Well, it's calculated between the Transportation Administration, Transportation, Regular and Transportation Special Ed. It's a combination of the three different areas in transportation.
And so the 1.8 million savings comes from?
It's cumulative of the three.
How did, how, how was, was the review of the three? And the last to come up with the 1.8 million?
Again, like I was explaining earlier, when I do areas like transportation, because that is not my specialty.
I got you.
I work with them, and we discuss what is needed for the next year. And so I worked with Mr. Bell and Ms. Scott Spalding, and we determined what would be an appropriate budget. The only item that was kind of out of the normal was the software.
Alright, if you could follow up with the Transportation Department and, and help them, excuse me, give them to explain to you where they saw the savings.
I can do that for you, ma'am.
Alright, and just want to mention, I hope that moving forward, every principal has flexibility with their Title I funding, not just with the character development flexibility that was mentioned, but also not being told they can't use Title I funding for instructional specialists. I hope that that doesn't continue, because I think flexibility. specialists. I hope that that doesn't continue because I think flexibility is important for character development programs, but also for instructional specialists more than that. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice President Collins. Uh, Mr. Goday.
Yes, I will be great. Uh, I just wanted to thank both the staff and the public and this board. This has been one of the best budget discussions I have ever heard since I've been on the board. Uh, and I know sometimes it gets tedious and it's down in the weeds. But at the end of the day, the budget is your real, uh, example of how you are, uh, pursuing your strategic goals. And I think since we've come up with a really good strategic plan that is measurable for the first time and that this is the first budget going through that process, I'm very encouraged by the effort, uh, and the inquisitiveness of everyone in looking at these things to make sure that what we say and what we do and how we measure are all in alignment. So I just wanted to say thank you. I know this has been a tedious meeting so far. We've been an hour and a half going through the budget and getting down in some minute details. But, uh, I remember the first budget I came into was passed with a huge deficit with almost no spit, no discussion at all. And to me, this tedium is a vast improvement over where we were. And so I hope that we can continue to put forth what we believe are the important items in our budget, uh, and follow the strategic goals that we have and express those goals in our budget. So thank you for all of you involved.
Thank you, Mr. Goday. I have, I'm gonna be briefer. Um, PT and OT is in contract services now?
Yes, sir, and pupil appraisal.
Told you I was gonna be more brief. Um, thank you. Uh, Ms. Ware Jackson.
Uh, one, one last question. Uh, where can I find, um, um, a line item or, or budget area for, uh, contracts that are under $10,000?
They're not broken out that way. I, I, all contract services are all based upon the LAF guide, um, and they're put in the category they belong. So if it's a regular education expenditure and it's a contract, it's placed in contract services. The dollar amount of the contract is irrelevant.
Uh, is there a way that we can see, that we can track that kinda thing, maybe on a quarterly basis, just to see where we are with contracts that are not, that do not need approval by the boards, just so that we, for information only? Okay.
Yes, ma'am. We can take, we can handle that. For you like on a quarterly basis?
Yeah, that'd be fine.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ware Jackson. Um, the board is clear. So that concludes our workshop and public meeting on the budget. Um, give us a second while we reboot for the committee of the hold. A motion to adjourn by Mr. Blue.
Board, please log into board docs.
We'll be ready in about, uh, in less than five minutes. In like one minute, we've resolved our technical transition and all board members can now log into the system. And so we shall begin shortly, board members. All right, now we, we have a quorum. If I can go ahead and get the room to be quiet?
Yeah, I'll listen.
All right. We've already had our invocation and our pledge of allegiance. Oh, oh, I'm looking at the wrong, yes, we have already had our convocation and our pledge of allegiance. And so we move forward with the, uh, called, the roll call for the committee of the whole, uh, by Madam Secretary.
District nine, President Chapman.
Present.
District four, Vice President Collins.
Present.
District one, Mr. Blue.
Here.
District two, Mr. Lannis.
In the house.
District three, Mr. Howard. District five, Ms. Ware Jackson.
Present.
District six, Ms. Dyson. District seven, Mr. Goday.
Present.
District eight, Ms. Bernard.
Present.
District six, Ms. Dyson.
Present.
All right, and we have a quorum. We now move forward with item B1, receive as information updates from the superintendent.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. Uh, so I just wanted to say how, um, excited, um, I am to hear around like our discussion around, uh, around students and around how we're working to continue to, uh, not only help children, you know, catch up, which is what we've been working tremendously on, but also trying to get them to accelerate uh, in the work. There's a lot of progress that's been happening in our district in a lot of ways from, uh, summer programs that we have coming up soon, uh, where we'll be having many, many, uh, summer programs across the parish to also, uh, you know, families continue to connect and engage with us, uh, around the work. And so I wanted just to highlight a few things, uh, that's been happening, uh, as a part, uh, of our work, uh, cause we've been in partnership a lot with the, uh, the Louisiana Department of Education and others to continue to move the work around our literacy work. And so last month, representatives of the Louisiana Department of Education and the Wyoming Department of Education visited for a literacy tour. Uh, Dr. Barbara Lashley and team and division of literacy team hosted the representatives at the Dewfrock School, uh, because of a lot of literacy progress and looked at, uh, what literacy specialists, uh, spent time in each class to showcase the district's emphasis on high quality literacy instruction. Uh, as many of you know, if children cannot read, write or comprehend well, they cannot do good in anything. And so there's been tremendous amount of progress on that. And we're also excited to, as we tell folks, uh, we're one of the few, uh, parishes in the state where there's an actual scorecard that you can go to our website and look at, uh, the key performance indicators that this board adopted in the strategic plan to see markers, uh, around literacy and mathematics and progress by school, um, to kind of expand, uh, the transparency work that we are doing. And so I wanted to go ahead and, uh, just really shout out to their team for that great work and, uh, the continued work. Cause we, although we're making progress, we have still a long way to go, but we're excited about the steps we've been taking. Um, our gifted and talented department will be holding its gifted, uh, screening blitz, uh, from June 6th to 9th. Uh, parents are encouraged to have their children screened by signing up online. Please go to our, uh, www.ebrgifted.org. Uh, the website again is our www.ebrgifted.org. We're excited, uh, about the, um, gifted screening blitz that will be happening from June 6th to the 9th. Uh, Brandy Williams and team under, uh, Dr. Porter and the Innovation Schools, uh, are really working hard to continue to help, um, work through with our gifted and talented, um, young people in the system. Uh, EBR Summer Enrichment Program will be held, uh, June 6th to July 7th at the Broadmoor High School, Monday through Thursday from 7:45 a.m. to 2:45 p.m. Uh, our summer programs open to all students who need it regardless of their current school location or district and is for students ages six through 12, I'm sorry, students from grade six through 12. Uh, in-person registration at Broadmoor and online registration are open now through June 9th. So please go to our website and visit www.ebrschools.org. Um, if you go to our website and you actually click, uh, where you see summer programs, uh, the summer program page will pop up. You click on that and there's a listing, uh, by month, by school, every program that you can think from enrichment to pre-K. We have a camp for ESL. We have a music camp. We have more camps than we've ever had in the parish. And we're excited about that because we believe the more children stay busy and engage, uh, the more they cannot get into trouble. But also, uh, more importantly, they can be enriched and, uh, be more, better, better prepared when they get to, um, the fall, uh, when we get to school. Um, the other part we wanted to talk about was, uh, district program distribution. We're currently in phases one of three phases process of the EBR program evaluation, which will provide a comprehensive overview of our district's programming. Uh, part one will provide a high level of data regarding where programs are located in our district and the effectiveness of the implementation of these programs. Uh, I will now call up Dr. Michael Robinson, our chief academic officer, who will present, uh, with his team, the entire programs in the system. This is something the board, uh, has been asking, uh, for a while. Uh, so, uh, we will check that off the box. Um, um, the reason it's taken us so long, quite frankly, uh, as I tell folks, we are 41,000 plus students, 6,000 employees and we have, uh, five regions. And there's been so many programs, uh, that we've been, uh, it's taken us time to do an assessment on how programs have gone through the system because there has not always been a collective approach for programming, uh, to, to have what we call pipelines. Uh, there has been schools that have chosen programs, but that has not always been connected to a high school or to an elementary or to a middle. So we are working to organize the programs even within our five pathways. Uh, as many of you know, we're moving the district to our five pathways, uh, between, uh, construction, manufacturing, transportation and logistics, uh, transportation, uh, and, um, uh, technology and then liberal arts, business management to help organize when we have a program, uh, at an elementary school, it can funnel up into middle and to high school. And so we're working very hard to have a much more comprehensive approach, uh, than past practice. And so, uh, Dr. Robinson and the academic team have been working tremendously hard. So I'll allow Dr. Robinson to go through, uh, the programming and then also, um, uh, maybe also let the board too, if you wanna ask a few questions in this process of Dr. Robinson, then I can, I'll finish up the other component. Dr. Robinson?
Thank you, Dr. Narcisse. Good evening, Doc, uh, Mr. Chapman, board president, uh, Vice President Collins, to the board members and to Dr. Narcisse and to the general public. I'm presenting this evening, um, part one, phase one of the program evaluation that we have been, uh, working on. Just trying to make sure it goes to the next, okay. So, um, I'm not going to read all of these slides to you, but just sort of walk through those slides with you. And, but the purpose of this is to try and bring some balance and to look at where programs are located, um, and look at how we are systemically approaching, uh, that process. Okay. So I want to, um, be sure that we, the work that we do, um, whether it's in the division of academics or systemically, that we always focus on our strategic plan and those four cornerstones, uh, are posted there for you. Student achievement, customer service, operational excellence, and also, um, employee development. Um, this certainly falls under the cornerstone of strati, um, student achievement. Okay. In everything that we're trying to do, we're trying to connect, um, to our strategic plan. Uh, all of the work that we do, uh, ultimately goes to, uh, towards building a greater economic and community, uh, economic situation for our community, um, around community development. To the left, you will see the pathways to bright futures. Um, those pathways, um, are technology, construction and manufacturing, transportation and logistics, liberal arts and management and medical and pre-med. Um, the, what makes up this community is the private sector, the public sector and the greater Baton Rouge area. And then we have our regions and some of our specialized programs, um, at the very bottom. This slide right here, uh, basically shows the number of schools that we have, um, 55 traditional schools, which also encompass, um, magnet programs within those. Uh, but we have 12 dedicated magnet schools, 11 charters, um, and we have four, uh, re-engagement centers and two pre-K centers, um, and then one virtual. This slide right here just sort of, um, gives a, a synopsis. And I said we had 11, but we do have 15, um, total. I'm sorry, we need to correct that from yesterday and I apologize for that. But we have 15 total, um, charter schools. And this just basically shows, if you see the, um, the bottom where the, uh, regions are by color, it will show you where our charter schools are. And so, um, the purple looking color, that's region, that's, uh, we have four, that's the north region. Uh, that goldish or yellowish color, that's mid-city region. Uh, the orange is Broadmoor Sherwood. The blue is Highland Old South and the green is southeast. And we have the numbers up there for, for you as well. I do want you to pay attention to that because that does impact our, um, programming. So we're looking at the north region and we have the enrollments there, the total number of, of schools. When you look at the non-magnet and magnet, that helps to create that total enrollment number. Um, the gifted and talented is there as well. Uh, that's all a part of that number. Uh, pre-K and then also Scholastic Academy. We have no great scholars in the north region. Yes, sir.
Just a quick question.
Yes, sir.
On these slides, when you say total enrollment, is that the enrollment at those schools in that region? Or that's not who lives in that region and may go to another school?
Correct.
It's enrollment in the schools in that region?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
And thank you, Mr. Uh, Goday, for bringing that point out, um, because some of our students travel across the district to go to the various schools. So that's the total enrollment of, for students in those particular schools. And we have 17 schools in the north region, um, with only 49, 5,910 students in them. Okay, let me go back? Yes, sir.
What's the capacity for the, and that may be a question you can't answer tonight. I'm sorry about the Dr. Robinson, but if you can't answer that question, could you get that answer back to our board so we can understand what is the full capacity at each school in the north district? And in fact, while we're doing it, we could break it down for all of the regions if possible?
Okay.
So we can understand what's the usage rate?
Yes, we have that.
For the general public as a whole. So they understand how many students we can possibly fit in the school versus how many students are actually attending the school?
Yes.
And, uh, board member, uh, Lannis, uh, that's a part of our facilities master plan. You'll get those numbers as well. I know that I know that Ms. Monique Scott Spalding is going to be giving you guys a collective plan as we walk through, but you will be able to show that as well. So that's a part of the facilities master plan as the board, we've been working through that. Right now, we're actually waiting for, to get a vendor to be able to close that. So you'll be able to get those numbers as well.
Yes, sir, thank you. I'm sorry about the interruption.
That's okay. Okay, so leaving the North Region, let's go to the Southeast Region.
I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Board Member Lanis. Okay, I thought you had asked your question. Board Member Dyson?
We just talked about, talking about capacity in regions and all of that and by school. I'd like to make sure that we talk about functional capacity so that if they have programs that require different configurations as far as rooms or student population counts and that kind of thing, including ESS, you know, the, all of, all of those kinds of things that factor in actual capacity.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
All right, going to the Southeast Region. We have 10 schools there with 7,214 students that are enrolled in those schools within that region. And you'll see the number of magnet and non-magnet students that we have in the Southeast Region. And it's 6,625 for non-magnet and 589 for magnet. You will note in the Southeast Region that we have 301 great scholars, 410 gifted and talented, 450 pre-K, and 223 Scholastic Academy students. Moving to the Mid-City Region, we have 19 schools there with 8,454 students, magnet and non-magnet. You'll see those numbers there. We have 153 great scholars, 392 talented, gifted and talented, 94 Scholastic Academy, and 347 pre-K students. Highland Old South, we have 10 schools with 5,722 students occupying those schools. And you'll see the number of magnet and non-magnet students there along with the gifted and talented, great scholars, Scholastic Academy, and pre-K students as well. Let's go to the Broadmoor Sherwood Region. You have 15 schools with 7,909 students in them. And you'll see the numbers there for the magnet and non-magnet students, but we do not have any great scholars in that area, in that region. 28 Scholastic Academy, 450 pre-K, 26 gifted and talented. Now, when we look at ESS, ESL, great scholars, and Scholastic Academy, you now get to see it in a pie chart by region. And again, the purplish color is, is North Region. The Mid-City Region is like the, the yellow, goldish color. The orange color is Broadmoor Sherwood. Highland Old South is the blue, and Southeast is the green. I don't want to get into a data analysis with you here, but I do want to point out just a couple of things for you. As you look at this particular slide, you will notice the number of ESS and ESL students across the, the, these regions. And specifically, when we look at this, we see a greater number in the Broadmoor Sherwood area, which Mr. Rico was referencing earlier, and you also notice the Southeast Region. I also want to point out, when you look at the North Region, there are no great scholars there, and they're 14%, they make a 14% of Scholastic Academy. Moving on to the other populations, special populations, gifted and talented, magnet and pre-K, it breaks it down for you again by region, and you can see the pie chart in terms of the percentage of students that are in those particular regions, which accentuates the map, the first set of slides that I showed. Okay. So this is phase one of this process, and this is some in-depth work that we are working through, and it's going to take us some time to, to finish it, but we, we're working. And I want to thank our principals because they helped to give us a lot of the data when we sent the survey out to them. And so they were able to provide a lot of the data, and then we compared that and Mr., I forget his name, Eric Johnson. I just say people, I miss Eric all the time, so I forget their last names. But he provided us with a lot of the data and, and also Ms. Andrea and the entire Division of Academics team. We've been working, they have been working, and I appreciate them. So based upon that preliminary work, we're just pointing out just a few bullets. This is not everything, but just a few bullets. We're pointing out that school programming varies across the district, a need to develop strategies to improve programming, leadership, staffing, and marketing that provides students with exposure to high-quality learning experiences. School leadership surveys showed school programming impacts the potential for students to explore access and opportunities. School programming could impact a student's entry into the Pathways to Bright Futures because we want to start early, providing those students with enrichment and classes that they can take early on. And you'll see a little bit of that this year in some of the, the middle schools as students are preparing. We really have some scholars who are able to handle the more rigorous work even in the middle school level. And so we're affording them those opportunities to do that. The preliminary data indicates a review of programming in the Northern Region. And so we're, we're looking, and we sort of knew that before we went in, but we're looking at where programs are located, the types of programs that are in our Northern Region. And we must also be cognizant of school choice and the location of programs as parents do have options. The academic return on investment, again, we go back to our strategic plan. And we look at commitment one. We will ensure every child maximizes their education and personal potential, looking at the pathways to Bright Futures, guaranteeing credential attainment. We really want to push more of our students to get those IBCs as well as the students that are in, are going to be in our DE and AP courses as they will graduate with an associate degree and high school diploma. Three more years for Glen Oaks. And students have the opportunity to receive, as I said, the college credit prior to the appointed graduation time. And that goes back to the employee development. And as our superintendent often says, and it is very much true, East Baton Rouge has untapped potential, and there is so much talent here. We have a lot of talented teachers and just the amount of talent that's here. And assessing and evaluating and creating new programs allows the district to take advantage of opportunities to improve our community and help students to flourish in the 21st century. And this, as I said, just phase one. We will come back at some point to bring in the next phase of this work.
Board Member Lanis?
Thank you, Madam Vice President. First and foremost, to any principal that has submitted any data that went into this particular presentation, I'm going to give them a hand clap.
They all did.
This is-
All of them did.
Beyond amazing. And I see my principal in the building right now, Signator Glen Oaks, I see you. Look, this is the first time since I sat on this board, we were able to deep dive into a presentation and see so many gaps and inequities that have been marked across our system for literally years. And these are things we talk about, but it's a different conversation when you can see the things directly and know where the gaps need to be plugged. So let's start from the top.
Yes, sir.
Charter school breakdown.
Yes, sir.
Now, a lot of people across our community have the conception or the idea that we have over 30 charter schools that are functioning and run by EBR Parish. This just showed us that that is simply not true. And what you've seen time and time again is if a charter school comes before our board and the independent evaluator gets them a thumbs up, and we feel as though that is not a correct fit for us, and we vote that charter school down, they go before Bessie, and Bessie approves that school, and it is a state-run charter. So I'm beyond thrilled to know that you all broke that down. Coming back to region of the Northern Region.
Yes, sir.
Let's talk about this. The Northern Region has more schools than any other region in our parish. Yet, we only have 5,000 students filling those schools. Of those students, zero are great scholars. When I look at regions, and this is not to pick on your region, Ms. Dyson, trust me, I promise you I'm not. I'm just doing a comparative analysis. But when I look at regions like the Southeastern Region, who has 10 schools, they have 7,000-plus students with over 300 of which being great scholars. To me, that is a deep inequity, understanding and knowing that over half of our students, over 20,000-plus students live in North Baton Rouge. Yet, those parents are forced to send their kids across town because we don't have the adequate programming and we don't have the adequate academic, what's the word I'm looking for? We're not putting them in the best situation to advance their academic prowess, is what I'll say. And when I look at the fact that we have 20% of those students also ESS, and we talked about, who is that, Mr. Caesar Rico? Did a great job, by the way. I didn't get a chance to tell you that with your, with your, with your presentation. But to know that we have 20% of our students in ESS, and our students have not been getting the adequate programming that they need to be fully functional inside of our system to be successful as possible, that has been a problem. But in knowing that you all are reprogramming and looking at how we fix that, again, my hat goes off to you, and I appreciate you more than you know. Thank you.
Sir.
Thank you, Board Member Lanis. And this is not necessarily a deep dive, it's an overview, and I appreciate the overview. And I understand it's phase one, and I'm going to treat it as a part one of analyzing the programming. I do appreciate and understand the inequity with those three particular pieces. Excuse me, four particular pieces, very true. I've never been one to deny inequity in this district. I've always fought, though, to be efficient and effective in accomplishing the correction of that. Like my colleague mentioned about North Baton Rouge having 17 buildings and zero great scholars, I do also recognize that the schools in my area, which is Broadmoor Sherwood, according to this region breakdown, also do not have great scholars and limited magnet programming, which is one reason why I was glad that four of the schools in my area received federal funding to bring and begin to push that in a different direction. I want to, I lifted that up to mention that when I pulled the data when I first got in this seat and continued to look at the data, part of the issue and another reason why I was glad that my schools got magnet funding is because almost 30% of the people who live there go to the other side of town. And so then, quite naturally, it would, in fact, be helpful to make sure that we have equitable distribution of funding, excuse me, of programming across the district. Moving forward, what I'm hoping I'm going to see is, hold up, let me back up before I go to moving forward. I do want to mention concerns so that it can be taken into consideration as we move forward. The bullet point about, based on preliminary work, yada, 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 school programming could impact a student's entry into the Pathways to Bright Futures initiative. Give me an example, you touched on it briefly. Give me just a made-up example so I can make sure that I heard you correctly.
So for example, let me take a student like myself who would not have the opportunity to, I would have never made it to be a magnet student or a great scholar or any of that because I couldn't read. So I learned to read when I got to high school. My mom was one of LaFouche Parish's most outstanding educators. I had a comprehension problem. So in order for me to be prepared for an initiative such as Bright, Pathways to Bright Futures, I would have needed to have had some supports, which we are trying to do in the lower grades, building the literacy capacity of our teachers, our administrators, helping our students to become more effective readers. But I would have needed to have had those supports before I could take classes such as Algebra I as a seventh grader. I would have never made it there because it takes a lot of critical analytical thinking and skillset to be able to perform in Algebra I. So I would have never made it there. So it's important for us to, which we did this, have done this summer. We already started on this, in this process, is we are revamping our scope and sequence and looking at our curriculum. Now, Eureka, for example, is the math curriculum. Some may question, well, why are you doing a separate lesson plan? Well, we're not doing a separate lesson plan, but we're enhancing because Eureka, for example, I would struggle with Eureka. So for me, I would need additional supports and supplements that we're providing, thus DreamBox. It really does, if it's used with fidelity, it really does help a student like me who would struggle so that I'm prepared by the time I get to ninth grade to be able to accept going into a rigorous course, rigorous courses such as AP or DE courses, or even working in some of the IBCs. Let us not count, count those out. Those are rigorous courses as well. And so it requires students to be able to have a readability and comprehension level to be able to handle that rigorous work. So in order, and, and in order for them to be successful, whether it's Pathways to Bright Futures, whether they are going into the CTEC courses when they get to high school, we have to address their, students' ability to be able to read, and that's something that we are working on, thus our literacy framework that we're working on for the district and the implementation of that. But we're, but we are also working on something for numeracy to help support our students when they get into, into math, and also working with our teachers to support them around professional development that would help them in teaching. Because this is, this, not, forget about the Pathways for Bright Futures for just a second. Just teaching in general today, June 22, requires teachers to teach at a different level. It requires them to teach in a different way. And so a lot of our teachers, they, they have the content. We have to work with them on pedagogy and working with them on delivery. So it requires new things, and so we are working with them on that. We started that process during the beginning, at the beginning of this year and have some phenomenal stuff we're going to, getting ready to roll out for teachers for the summer, and then also to welcome them back in the fall.
Vice President Collins, can I just add one more thing? I think, I think it's really important that we tease out something because we say this a lot. It's not just a money issue, it's also an access issue. a lot, it's not just a money issue, it's also an access issue. We talk about money a lot, but you can throw money to something, and it still does not succeed. And the reason I bring this up is what we hope that people are beginning to see is that when you look at that north region, you see that there are access issues in terms of the type of programming access that some kids have versus the access they have in another. And I think that's the point I think you were bringing up. So when you look at the Pathways to Bright Future, what we wanted to do is eliminate the issue of access, which you'll hear tonight, because we have a presentation tonight that you're going to actually hear from Glenn Oaks, here with their principal and their team of people here to talk about the work. This is not something that started when Sido Narcisse got here, this has been a challenge for a while. And the bigger challenge that we have to solve as a collective, why I'm excited about the strategic plan this board has adopted and all these pieces, is we have to look at the entire system as a parish collectively, and just not our regions. And so when you think about these access and programs, and we lift the data up and show you, the question that they're going, that the academic team and many of those who've been here for a long time working is, how do we ensure that no matter what part of the parish you live in, children have variations of access? So when we think about the type of programs, quality options, choices, all those things parents want, but you have to be at a particular level of even education or navigation to be able to get to that, and we think that that's a challenge. So whether you're in your region, Vice President Collins, or whether Ms. Dyson's region, or Mr. Goday's region, whatever region you're in, or President Tattman, we have to look at the type of access that we talk about where programs go. And last I would say is, it has to lead to a workforce development space. We live in a parish where majority of the people who are born here stay here, and they are our future workforce. And so we have plenty of jobs that are open here, but the reason when you hear industry say they're not prepared is because we haven't designed a pathway for them to do that in combination with instruction and those things. The last thing I just want to say is, we have to provide more support to schools with teachers. We do, we say, you know, the school knows best, the principals know best, knows anything, but if you talk to principals and teachers, they need support. We have to do better in helping to teach, we have to do better with school leaders knowing how to lead and coach teachers. There's all these components that our system has not always done a collectively good job. And, and so we just, those are things where they will be pain points if we don't have a system and a process to do that, to create a better ecosystem in our parish. And so I just wanted to highlight that as we're going through this work.
Thank you. So part of my concern is I need to see that, okay, Pathways to Bright Futures, your dual enrollment, or AP if folks choose AP. Today, today, there are major deficits for some. We starting pretty much tomorrow, assuming all things get approved, with dual enrollment, a larger dual enrollment initiative for this coming school year. My concern is making sure we don't go back to tracking students the way students used to be tracked back in the day, where you looking at the map of this program and it's here, this program and it's there today. It's a tall order, not impossible, very manageable and very doable, but if we don't process and think about it and have a plan in place, then what you're going to have is you don't have certain programming in North Baton Rouge today. You're moving forward with PBF versus IBF tomorrow in the immediacy, and you tracking the same students, you say you want to have better opportunities into something that have, into the opposite direction you say you want them to go in with the Pathways to Bright Futures, because they don't have what they need. And getting them what they need is something that takes time, okay? And so I know we can get there, but it's a huge, it's been a huge concern of mine from the very beginning, especially when we start using language like from elementary school, five buckets for 40,000 children, just five buckets, insane, starting at elementary school, focus on this, okay, one bucket. I'll use, you use yourself as an example, I'll use my son as an example, he didn't blossom until the end of seventh grade, actually, the beginning of eighth grade. I had told my child he was brilliant, I may have shared this story with y'all once, once or twice before, okay? He didn't realize he was brilliant, even though we read at home like you're supposed to do with your children, on grade level and above grade level, we was reading at home. He chose or didn't understand he could perform well so badly that in seventh grade, he was put in the lower, that learn how to read, CAT cat, literally, over that Westdale Middle. I knew my baby could read more than CAT cat, because he was doing it at home, but what can I tell you if you're not going to do it in the classroom? I know I'm speaking on behalf of many parents out there, okay? He got his schedule for the eighth grade, he said, I'm not doing that anymore. And then he took that initiative. Sometimes it takes a while for a child, for whatever reason, for the light bulb to go off, and we say, in elementary school, oh, baby, this where you going? Middle school, this where you going? Sometimes even in college, how many people went to college, changed their degree, major two, three times, okay? So it's not unique just to the K-12 or to any particular demographic. Long story short, he was a late bloomer. He decided he was too smart for that class, and he was going to get into the great scholars program, and he did, and he could only do it through the guidance office, and she did an IQ test. You know what he scored on the IQ test? He needed an 84 or something like that. He scored in the 97 percentile. There are gazillions of kids in our system, just like him. And if we are not careful, they're going to get tracked in a certain direction that we, we are doing the exact opposite that we intend to do. And so I just wanted to lift that up, and I'm letting you know in advance, that's what I'm looking for, making sure you don't push children into things that they, and robbing them opportunity when they otherwise might have a chance to have some opportunity. Board Member, Where Jackson.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. Dr. Narcisse, I see with this presentation that we're looking at all the different programs and where they are in the district. So it's, it looks like a piece of a puzzle that some of us have been asking for, for a while, with regards to programming and a map, what we've called for some time now a comprehensive plan of the district that shows where our programs, where our programmings are, where the schools are, where the kids are going, you know, what kind of feeder patterns we have, the buildings, the conditions of the buildings. I know that's, that's something that's coming in a short while. And attendance areas connected to feeder patterns. I, I look forward to seeing that presentation on a map so that we can visually see where the programming is, and we can see where the kids are, the populations in the schools, the conditions of the schools, possible feeder patterns, and so we can get a really good look at the district to see what we have, what we're really providing, and where we're going. I know that we spoke briefly, not too long ago, about the next phase of this, the, which piece is that? That's, it's the, the study of the buildings? The facilities?
Facilities master plan.
So can we include, can we make a larger master plan from the information that we're receiving to put it all together into a, a larger, a bigger look?
Yes, so that'll be a part of the facilities master plan, in terms of, and some of your questions are actually leading towards the master plan, so yes, the answer is yes to that. And if I could just influence this on changing, I want to get to change a word that we use a lot in terms of our mindset. We love in our parish to talk about programs, and I tell people we should be talking about pathways for kids, because, you know, there, we have programs, but kids are trying to get into a pathway to become something. And I think that that's the shift that we have to think about. So yes, we have programs, you know, whether it's dedicated or whatever groups that people choose to go into, but the question that we are trying to solve in a very equitable standpoint is that there's enough pathways that whatever a child chooses in that pathway, that one, we provide them with exposure to that, right? If that's what they want, whatever that exposure is, two, and by Vice President Collins, I agree with you, that we don't corner them into a space, which our pathways actually does not corner, there's multiple options in that, and that's why we feel like we've got to keep presenting this to make sure everybody understands the context of it. And the third thing is that people have options, because we love options. We don't like the word that we have to do anything here, I've learned. So, but the question is, you're creating those options going through. That's why I'm excited about this budget, because in this budget, we are maintaining supports around coaches for kids, because we know they have to do that type of work. We're trying to maintain around our work on keeping kids on track. We're trying to maintain keeping more development for teachers in their learning. We're trying to maintain or decreasing the amount of counselor-to-student ratio, which we've done a very poor job in this district, years of that, where it was 1 to 400, we're now trying to move to 1 to 300. And the last thing I tell folks that's really important is accurate information. We have to do a better job, we know, and I always take responsibility from the district side, is to get out information and do a better job in engaging with our community around that. But a part of that is for us to lead our community into looking at pathways that will help them be successful, and understanding that, because our district has not always done the best job in engaging and moving us in a particular direction around that. And I think that that's, that is kind of the hard shift that we're trying to work in a very collective way to do that. Depending on where you ask, who in what part of the parish, there's a very different way they think about schooling based on how they've navigated through that, and we can do a better job collectively as a parish to kind of move that work. And so it's, we just have many hard decisions we have to make in doing that, but also working on ways to educate our, our community in, in our direction.
Yeah, I can appreciate that word, pathways, which makes me think about, like, the pathway to, to get to school, you know, and which path are you going to take, and which school are you going to be going to? I noticed in one of the slides, we were looking at the southeast and Bel Air area, is that the combination? Is it, or which one is it that has Broadmoor? Broadmoor, southeast?
We could pull that back up.
Could you pull that up just, just for a second, so I can, I can give you a visual of, of what I mean, of my concern for pathways? You know, as we know, we live in a district where we have a large population of kids that may move more than one time during a school year. And you see that, look at that map, you see, there's a nice big cluster right there, and then look, there's a little orange piece just above it, that's the area where I live. And kids there are going, they're taking a, a nice ride going down to Broadmoor when they're a lot closer to Estruma. You know, that's, that's one little thing we've been talking about for a long time, you know, and, you know, making it easier for parents to be engaged in the schools when they, they go to a school that has the, the pathways in them, or the, the things of interest that, that they, that they would like to, to, to grow in near where they are, you know, instead of having to get up early and travel. So I'm excited about the transportation pieces that are coming on board, you know, and some things that, that'll come together that may be able to bring our kids closer to home, instead of having them travel all the way this way or that way, because they can, they can get what they need closer to home, and can be more engaged with parental involvement in the schools of, of their choices nearby. So I'm hoping that those kinds of things will be included when we look at this, the larger plan, okay? Thank you.
Board Member Dyson.
Thank you. So I appreciate this work, and I wanted to, to talk about, so we've, we've, we're starting, we've approved two focus schools.
Yes, ma'am.
And what, so Park will be starting this coming school year.
Yes, ma'am.
And Eva Legord?
Yes.
As well?
Will be the environmental school.
Okay. So I would like to see you update this information and share it again with those counts added into these regions.
Okay, we, we were just basing it upon what we currently have.
Right, but we're only a few months away from those numbers.
We can do that.
And those students, have we had additional students applied based on the new programming? Are?
Students are.
So students that are there are able to stay, so we've got to count all of them if they're staying, and then add any additional, what kind of feedback have we gotten, what kind of results has, you know, the registration happened?
So.
You know, we could bring up the executive.
I think that would change some of this.
Focus choice, Amanda, you want to come up and give the board? Amanda runs our Focus Choice Schools portfolio. Thank you, Amanda.
So an update on both of those schools as far as registration numbers. Park will change very little this year, 30 to 60 kids.
What is that, in addition to, how much of the existing kids are there?
I believe it is, we looked at them the other day, it's around 200.
So 200 and up to about 260, 230 to 260? So when you add those?
They're phasing in a grade at a time, their, their models.
Correct.
So just make sure, because it was a pre-K, it was a K-5, it's moving to pre-K-8, so they're going to add sixth grade, which will add to that.
So, but it'll be all grade levels that are existing there right now?
Correct, the students, the vast majority of students that are there are going to matriculate to the next grade and stay, yes.
Right. And so that would be about the 230 to 260, is that?
Plus the additional grade.
And as school gets closer, you're going to have more, and I would hope that we're advertising in the area.
Extensively.
Yes, and we're leaving that registration open, and so, you know, we could possibly have 300 or plus as we get closer. Which color will they be in?
Park is mid-city.
Okay, so that'll add to, and then what about the other one?
And Eva Legord is, I'd have to look at the boundaries, is it, is it, so that's to say, I think it would be Highland Old South, so Eva Legord will be just sixth grade, and it will be 50 to 60 students.
Okay. So yeah, if we can just update this to, to reflect what we know we're doing, thank you very much.
Board Member Lanis.
Thank you, Madam Vice President, and I wanted to speak again, just because I did not want to diminish the work that has gone into this particular study, because I heard one of my colleagues say that it's not a deep dive, it's a overview. And my understanding of a deep dive is one that is a management system that enables one to tackle extraction, integration, and prediction of problems inside of a singular system, and that's what I saw from the presentation today. And again, I'm only saying this because I don't want to diminish the work that you all have put into this, nor the principals, because I know going through all of those surveys, going through all of the computer technology to pull this all together took a whole lot of work. So again, my hat goes off to all of you all. And I say this also to say, and this is a vulnerable moment, because I am a student that benefited from being tracked, and I can promise you this, had I not been tracked, I probably wouldn't be up here today. In fact, in the second grade, I actually failed my first year, because, not because I didn't have a propensity, nor the wherewithal to do the work, I was a student that was dramatically affected by my mom and my dad getting a divorce. And this is for all students across our parish. Had it not been for, this happens to all students across our parish, I'm sorry, but had it not been for programs like Title One that goes and helps students that live in impoverished communities and impoverished areas, I cannot promise you that I would not be up here. If it wasn't for great teachers that tracked me throughout the system like Ms. Kelly and Ms. Linda Davis, one of which that was just presenting an award at our last meeting, I cannot promise you that. presenting an award at our last meeting, I cannot promise you that I would be here. If it wasn't for programs like the construction management program that Glennos High School at one time had, I cannot promise you I would be up here. If it wasn't for the medical program that my brother went through, who is now a surgeon from our school system, I cannot promise you that he would be as successful as he was. While I understand some students and tracking may not work for all, but I can guarantee you this, for the 70-plus students that live in poverty and across our community due to free and reduced lunch numbers that we have, some of them need it. Because a lot of our families don't know how to navigate through our system. They don't know the proper pathways to put their child on. They don't even know what a pathway is. So we have to be able to define what that is. But before we do that, we have to deep dive through the data. We have to know where the mistakes, where the gaps, where the inequities lie so that we can fix those things. And this, again, this is not a punch, a swipe at anybody. I'm only saying this because I am a testimony for students that live it, see it, and breathe it every single day. Thank you all again for all the work you did.
Thank you. I just want to clarify for the record that number one, my colleague and myself clearly have different understandings of the history of tracking and the disgusting impact it has had on black and brown and low-income children regardless of race. Tracking is egregious. The experience that my colleague mentioned is not an example of tracking. It's an example of choices. And that's what I'm trying to help make sure that we don't unintentionally push students in a certain direction. Make sure that they still have choices while giving I hear you saying options, options, more options. I agree. I don't disagree with the overview data. To me, a deep dive, and I didn't say that to diminish your point or your presentation. In fact, it's part one. You gonna start from that place in a part one. Okay. But I just want to be clear. I don't necessarily think that my colleague and I disagree because it's clear from what my colleague expressed that we are speaking of two different things. And I'm looking at what research has shown over time from the 30s and the 60s. And and some even argue it's still happening in terms of tracking certain students and funneling them with limited options. Okay, by virtue of the structures put in place. And we're discussing what structures we want to put in place at some point. So thank you. And Superintendent, did you have anything else you needed?
Yes. Thank you, Dr. Robinson. I just one more. I'm sorry for such a long.
If I can just say one thing.
Yes.
If you go on the systems website and you look under schools, there's a tab that says programs, please click that because that is going to pull up a plethora of data and information. And some of the things that you were asking, Ms. Jill, are found here in that data on the on the website. But if you go on the schools and then clicks programs, it automatically pulls it up for you. And thank Ms. Amy and her team and Dr. Seals and all of them for working with us to put it all together.
Thank you, Dr. Robinson. So we will come back and provide another level. And I just want to make sure just for legal purposes, it's not that we're tracking, it's providing options and pathways. I won't let anybody think we're tracking in our system legally. Is that right, General Counsel? All right. The the last thing.
I'm sorry. Board Member Wade Jackson, is that you had something?
Dr. Narciss may be getting to what I was about to.
Okay.
Yeah, just, yeah. But the one last thing, I'm sorry, this important that we addressed is school security protocols. As many of you know, Uvalde, Texas went into a very challenging time, which has been, quite frankly, very challenging for many school districts across the nation. Myself have gotten on calls with many other superintendents across the country. And just like their communities, our community has had a lot of concerns around safety in schools. So in the light of the recent tragedy, we've been working to increase safety measures for every school in our district. Immediately after the incident in Texas, four main points were implemented, including an additional risk assessment, reviews of current protocol, increased active shooter training, analyzing campus landscapes and those things. And so these are things that we already started to look at when we brought on a new Director of Security, Robert McGardner, who was the, at that time, former Deputy of Police in Baton Rouge Police, who started already aggressively looking at across all our campuses. So I wanted to just give him an opportunity just to share a few slides with our community. The board has been asking, you know, what we've been doing. We thought it'd be important to share with the the public on what our where we have been, what we've done year to date, and what are just a few actions as we go into the the new school year. As you know, for us, it's a very tough time and it's one of the hardest things to kind of go through. So Mr. McGardner, would you start your presentation?
Good evening, President Tappan, Vice Chair, I mean Collins, Board. What we have here is, my name is Robert McGon. I'm the Director of Security for East Baton Rouge School System. My assistant is Ms. Dion Chaney, sitting in the back. Once I got in this position, I knew there was some issues that I have seen at the schools when I was Deputy Chief of Police of Baton Rouge. So so when I came in, we decided to do a risk assessment on all the high schools and middle schools. My assistant took half, I took a half. And some of the stuff that I saw was, we had to take some proactive, we got to take proactive measures on some of the stuff that's going on at the schools. These are some of the things like our partnership, emergency, safety, emergency drill, emergency safety plan, school resource officers. What we have here is that we have these law enforcement agencies that are partnering with us to help us take care of some of these things, especially like the active shooter drill, fire, bus evacuation, lockdown, shelter in a place, tabletops. Now, I'm gonna point out one thing in specific, lockdown. When you lock down a school, I would assume that the teacher will be able to go in the classroom and lock the door and protect the kids inside the school. But we have some of these older schools, they can't even lock the door from the inside. They're gonna lock the door from the outside. That's that's not acceptable at all. We have schools that when the main office doesn't even have a camera in it. So when those parents come up to the schools and act out, we don't have no video or audio evidence to go along with the report that we generate about that parent or parents coming in and coming into the main office. So we getting cameras put in the main office. Before I left Baton Rouge Police Department, we got a grant, a 2018 grant called Cop Grant, where they just starting to roll out cameras. Matter of fact, excuse me, Capital Elementary and Capital Middle both received cameras. And then we had another school, I can't remember the name of it, that was their cameras was just, they weren't even operable. But then they came and put cameras all the way around that school. So also, I'm in a process right now of a meeting with Mr. Mayberry, grant writer. With the grant writer we have here in in the system, we looking at there's a grant called Safe Schools. And the money, all the money that comes from the grant goes directly to the schools for safety. And it's a million-dollar grant. So I'm trying to get that grant so we can go in and do some of the things we need to do. We 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 have these open campuses. And anybody can just walk up to the school and gain access into the school. Well, we're gonna stop that. We're gonna get doors that you're gonna have to buzz them to let them in. You can't have that. Like I said, we did a surveillance camera assessment. We also have a safety summit. And I think a lot of people may have signed up for it in the school system. We have a safety summit, which is going to be at Liberty High Thursday at 8:00. It's put on between East Baton Rouge Parish School System and LSP. And one of the components that they are going to be talking about of what the block is going to be on active shooters and and emergency plans. Let me go back. Oh, how do you go? How you go back? Okay, there you go. So we're gonna have that summit. It's the first, it's the first one. It's the first one that has been developed. And apparently, we're gonna be the poster child for it. So we got to do the right thing on this one. Right now, I think it's over, what, 200 some people have signed up for the summit. It's been offered to everyone in the school system. So we have a lot of principals and they're all gonna be coming to get this, get this training. And that's one thing we want to do is that we want to have, we want to have, we want to have the active shooter training during the summertime, and then we have it every semester, every semester. Let's see. Go back. Can you go back? Forward. All right, right there. Okay, we also have a planning work where we're gonna have ongoing safety training opportunities for the employees and the school teams, new principal safety and security training. And we also gonna have training on navigation 360 where everyone will know how to perform it. And we got the panic button training. That's just like, that's the blue box. And of course, I know y'all don't heard of this term, run, hide, and fight. Well, what we're gonna do is with our resource officers, if the board approve it, soon as that resource officer get those kids into the classroom, his first business is to walk the exterior of their school and check every exterior door to make sure they're locked. And that's a problem we have been seeing that some of our doors won't secure. So we need to go in and secure some of these doors. That'll be his job. The next job after that, then he'll be in the halls helping out the principal or assistant principal. He's gonna be like a mentor. Now, but every hour, once those kids go in that class, he got to do the same thing again. He got to secure, we got to secure. We can't have a situation. We just had a meeting with the supervisors for the sheriff's office that do school security. And we gonna have a meeting with the principals. There's no reason why someone should be going out of an exterior door and leaving it open, propping it open. Why? No, that's that that causes problems there, a lot of problems. And I wish y'all could have came on tour with us when we was going through some of these schools. The placement of some of these cameras makes absolutely no sense whatsoever. You got too many blind spots. We already know where the kids gonna fight at. They're gonna fight in the bathroom. They're gonna fight in the blind spots. And trust me, they know where all of them at. Because that's why they hide at when they don't want to go to class. So we have to have cameras put in a strategic way, not the way they got the cameras up. I ain't gonna call the high school. But I go to this high school to do an assessment. I go look out a window. There's a camera pointing out a window. It's pointing at a tree. There's a fenced-in area around this tree. The only time anybody is in that fenced-in area is when they unlock it to cut the grass. But the camera's facing a tree. What the tree gonna do? That camera could be put somewhere where we have a blind spot at. But we, like I said, we are in, me and Ms. Chaney went out and we looked at all of these different places. And I mean, I'm gonna be honest with you, we in bad shape. I'm just be honest with y'all. I'm be honest with the community. Some of this stuff should have been taken care of 25, 30 years ago. Not this is not on y'all. Don't get me wrong, this is not on y'all. It's not on Dr. Narciss. But previous, I mean, administrations should have been doing something. I mean, it's this, this, I can't wrap my head around it.
So Matt, could we move to the year in a glance? So to what we're gonna be doing?
This is the wrong one.
Go back.
It's not the right presentation. It's not the right presentation.
Looks like we've, we look like we loaded the wrong one. There's a slide. So we will, we can get that. Sorry about that, Ms. Commission. We have a slide where Mr. McGardner will go over about everything we are doing in terms of year to date and what we'll be doing throughout the year. So I think it'd be important for the board and the community to see that. Or we can, we can put that up on our website so we can be able to see that as well. Maybe you could just describe it, Mr. McGardner. Just describe what that is. And then we will put it up on our website, www.ebrschools.org, Ms. Jones, and so we can make sure that people can have easy access to it.
Okay, what we did was we came up with a timeline where we wanna, there's certain things that we don't, we want to have done within a certain time period. This is right Okay, starting in this month, June, we hosting a safety summit with LSP, meeting with right grant writer, school safety officers, who we talked about in the navigation 360 training. That's all will be done in June and July. We're gonna, then in August, we're going to active shooter training, active shooter drills, camera installations, district safety team meetings, and panic button training. October through December, we're gonna conduct more risk assessments, assess each of the sites for complete drills, contact safety training at non-school sites, like this site right here. I mean, I'm gonna leave it alone. I mean, I mean, yes, I mean, this active shooter training, I said, security for the graduations will be through March and May, with safety plans for the EOT activities and assess each site, complete drills for the end, at the ending of the school year. So those are things that we got highlighted that we want to have all these things done and which when they put it up on the website, y'all call us back in, we have to produce what we did. Because right now, those, those, those babies, that those, I mean, you, you go some of these schools, man, and it just, it just, it just, it makes no sense. Most of these elementary schools, the kids have to gain access through through the side door. There's no hallway. And those are the doors that you can't lock from the inside.
So so we have two things we want to make sure that the public is aware. We, one is we will put up the the sheet of all the action steps that we'll be doing. We'll also post it on the website, www.ebrschools.org. They're actually working on that right now as we speak. Board will also be able to share that with you all as well. And we can also do a review. We've been actually trying, working on taking more action to have the schools up and ready before the fall. So that as you hear, they're working on the cameras, locked doors, all those things are proactive things that we have already started that process. And then also, as you know, with the recommendation that we have in the budget to do, to add those additional SROs or school safety officers, depending on what the board decides. And then there also, one of the things that we have relied on has been also our partnership with Baton Rouge Police Department and also with the Sheriff's Department. We've been working with Chief Paul from Baton Rouge Police and also Sid Gochow from the Sheriff's Department as a part of the process. So all of this will be upgrades to our school systems. There's a variance of issues in terms of doors and those things that we have to get set up better. But the challenge that we are trying to work through is the open campus ones. We have some campuses that are more open than others. And so there's just a lot of work that we're going to be doing from now through the summer. And what I could do at the pleasure of the board is to just continue to give updates on as we continue to fix and move things up.
Okay. Board Member Lanis.
Thank you again, Madam Vice President. Thank you for this presentation. What I can honestly say is, thank you for your honesty. This is something that everyone needed to hear. This is a change that should have happened a long time ago, but that's okay. We're at this place now because we're at a critical place in our society where now the conversation is whether or not we arm teachers with guns as a suitable solution for what's happening across our country, across our state, in our city. And that is just simply not the right approach to take. And that is just simply not the right approach to take. Uh, I think a lot of the things that we hear going on is because of something that you simply said, is that a lot of our campuses are open. And when you see a lot of armed assailants on campuses, where you see mass shootings that's happening on campuses that have open campuses. And I think the most proactive thing that we can do, again, not being reactive, but proactive thing that we can do is to ensure that we heighten our safety and security for our teachers, for our students and for all of our employees. So again, I applaud you all for the work that you put into this. What I can honestly say is, every place I've seen you since you have been hired on to be over our security, you have been on the ground, you have been inside of schools and you have been active about your assessment or your risk assessment for protecting our community. And that's plausible and my hat goes off to you. So thank you and your team. Thank you.
Board Member Godey.
Yes, I also just wanted to say thank you. You know, I'm, I'm glad to see that this district is moving forward from anecdotal evidence to actual data where we're doing things and not only in this area, but in, in many, many other areas is something I've been wanting to have for a long time. Two comments, one, I hope you also take into account athletic events, particularly football games and basketball games.
Yes, sir.
Those tends to be places of heightened emotion.
Correct.
And if Glen Oaks loses, but, uh, I wasn't picking on Glen Oaks, just picking on Darius. Uh, but, uh, also, you know, the last newscast that I heard, maybe, and I'm not trying to spread rumors, but this is what I heard, was that in Uvalde, Texas, where the latest killing occurred, uh, the shooter gained entry through a door that should have been automatically locked and the lock was not working. And so, you know, you can have all the people you want, you can have all the things that you want around there, but if your basic, uh, security perimeter, uh, is faulty, uh, a lot of things can go wrong from there. So I applaud the work you're doing and, and anything that we as a board can help move that faster, uh, something I'm sure all of us will appreciate and work with you on. Thank you.
Board Member Dyson.
Yes, thank you. So, um, I just want to make sure that, um, we're all real clear on this. Our district has done a lot of work in this realm. A few years back, I was a very strong encourager that we needed, you know, big plans, we needed very specific detailed plans, and there was a lot of work put into it. Um, we had, uh, we, we gathered a lot of data, we had some three-year, uh, plans as far as, I know that, um, at the time, Mr. Ben Neekase was in charge of it. I, I requested that he come periodically to our board meetings and keep us updated on all of the progress. Um, also, I have also been, uh, very strong, uh, trying to make sure that we, just because there's cameras doesn't mean they're operable, it doesn't mean that they're, um, as you said, facing the proper directions and it needs, and I have been stressing for years that someone's job description has to be, they are responsible, they will be evaluated on if those things, you know, if checks are done in schools and these things aren't right, somebody's got to be held accountable. It, it can't be just that we asking you to do it as a school. It has to be someone's specific job and then everyone on the, and the whole team, school team has to be a part of it, but somebody has to be responsible for, are the batteries working or whatever? Is it, is it facing the right? Because I have, I know that there are situations where we have had discipline problems that we wished we had had the tape and the tape just wasn't there and it should have been, there was a camera there and it just wasn't working. And so, but I know that the district has put a lot of, um, time and energy, so I would strongly, strongly encourage us. I know that, uh, Mr. Neekase is over the workforce development now, but he has a wealth of information and probably can pull up a lot of the research and data and we might, on some of this, we might not need to reinvent the wheel, some of it's done. And, um, it, it also goes to, um, you know, it's, it's another thing that, again, it just seems like we talk about programs, we talk about, um, the condition of the schools' unlockability and all that. It, it's just like, okay, we need this master plan and it, it has to include consolidations so that we can, the, the right number of schools in each area are held accountable for their security plans and all of those things. And so it just goes back to needing those big plans, those, uh, and then I wanted to ask about the panic button.
Yes, ma'am.
So the panic, the blue box, are they in every single, or are they going to be in every single classroom across the district, including?
They not in, no ma'am, they not in every single school.
So the picture paint push one.
No, most of them. Well, the panic button is an app, but the blue box, uh, is not at, is not at every school. And the blue box, most of them are placed like on the wall strategically. I don't know, I have to get with, uh, Mr. LaDuff and find out whether or not there's one in each classroom, but, um, that's, that's one thing we want to look at because they wouldn't able to do the rest, the rest of those schools because of funding.
Well, this is a problem because it can happen at any school, no matter what size they are, no matter where they are. And so we got to work on getting, getting all of our schools. If, if we're going to have blue boxes, we should have blue boxes.
Yes, ma'am.
At all of the schools. And the larger the school, the more blue box you need because you've got way many halls and, you know. Um, we also want us to please be mindful about additional buildings at locations and T-buildings and FEMA Buildings. And they're out there, they're not even on a hall, they wouldn't even hear someone, you know, or, or someone inside might not hear what's going on out there. And so we got to be very mindful of our sites that have additional buildings.
Like Seven Oaks, like Seven Oaks, the, the building on Seven Oaks Drive.
So.
The Wood Center.
So, um, if, if it's okay, um, I just want to, uh, qualify about, I know we're getting very detailed on here on the board floor. I just want to, I just want to make sure we, we clarify this for us and the community. So, uh, there hasn't been nothing that's been done. I know Mr. McGarner is, he's going through schools, he's looking at where the upgrades are. After the Parkland shooting, there's been a lot of stuff that's been done with the new buildings and those things. I just want to make sure that we, we clarify that. Um, but, you know, the, there's still challenges in some of our open campuses and those things that we have to, to upgrade on. And so I just wanted to make sure to do that. The, the, the main important thing is that, oh, important for us is that we want to make sure that the communities are aware about here, the action steps that we're taking. We also train staff, also with active shooting and some of those other things, buzzers, cameras and those things, just to make sure that we have quality in all of our schools. And so that's, I just want that to be the space. Um, I know we're getting into a lot of detail, but we could be here all night in that conversation. So I just want to leave us forward.
I would also ask that, um, when is this, uh, training going to happen?
Uh, on the sixth, that was. When is it due?
It's very soon, okay. Because I was, I'm just hopeful that we can encourage others, other site, you know, if you can get teams from schools, because we have some eleven-month employees that may still be.
Yes, the goal.
Working with the principal.
The goal is to actually have an, the entire staff.
Yeah, right.
And so they're working on a plan to see how we can get the entire staff to go through a training, um, as they go through those. So it's, uh, there's a lot more logistics behind that and so, uh, and working with principals about when they do it and how they do it and those things. And so, uh, that is the goal.
Thank you very much.
All right, and, uh, Superintendent, you had your name in the queue, but that was what you needed to say. Okay, I just wanted to make sure before I went forward. Okay, uh, Board Member Ware Jackson.
My question around blue box was addressed.
Okay, moving forward, uh, you had?
That is my report.
All right. All right, moving forward, item B2, Presentation Pathways to Bright Futures Updates.
Yes, so we are going to present the pathways work. Um, I, I just wanted to just, uh, as the, um, we actually asked the Glen Oaks team to actually come up, uh, to present because, you know, I said, you know, they are the ones that have been piloting this for, uh, the district. Um, we were, we're super excited, uh, just about the work, but they can kind of talk through each of the components of the pathway as they've been, uh, leading, um, the, the district in this space, uh, as we begin to look at this, um, overall. The main thing, I, I, I think that, um, um, as you hear them talk, because they will, as I shared with them, to give exactly how the program went, what went well, what did not go well, those things, is that, uh, um, what I'm hopeful that people sees when you provide children with access, uh, which I like that we had started having the conversation around program, children can do a lot of things. Uh, and we, our goal is to build in that access as we build them up through the pipeline, not only just exposing kids, but getting the read better, doing math and those things. And so we just wanted to highlight, highlight that. And also, um, when we chose Glen Oaks, um, we chose them for a particular reason. Uh, we said, if the program can work at Glen Oaks, uh, we believe it can work anywhere in this school district. And so, uh, we thought it'd be good to allow them to come up with the principal and their team. And I think there's also they have a student here as well that will talk, uh, to us a little about that. And so I'm just still giving an, an update of the pathways work. So, uh, Latasha Levitino, uh, who's our, uh, pathways guru, we call her, uh, will start us off. Latash.
Good evening, Board Member, I'm sorry, good evening, Board President Tatman, Vice President Collins, members of the board, Dr. Narcisse. Uh, we're here today to provide a joint presentation regarding some pilot updates for the Pathways to Bright Futures program as it occurred at Glen Oaks High School. So the goal of this presentation is to provide some pertinent data points regarding the implementation of the pilot program and expound on the district findings based on the pilot experience. So with that, we've had some questions around, as Dr. Narcisse indicated, uh, the selection process in terms of how we establish the pilot program where it was. So during school year twenty-one, twenty-two, the Pathways to Bright Futures program was instituted at Glen Oaks High School. The rationale for piloting the program at Glen Oaks High School was to select a school that had a smaller ninth grade cohort to serve as a control group for the pilot program. Um, additionally, select a site that had a facility structure that would allow for a ninth grade academy model with the ability to isolate the student cohort and staff in a specified space, to select a school that had an existing collaboration with Baton Rouge Community College, the post-secondary partner that facilitated the pilot program in collaboration with EBR, provide access to prioritized academic programming such as dual enrollment, to students enrolled in a school that traditionally has had scarce or limited access to similar program options. And finally, to target exposure to prioritize academic programming for student groups that demonstrate academic challenges and other issues that have had a negative impact on student academic performance and/or progression. So after establishing Glen Oaks as the pilot site. There it is. We established some, uh, goals or some anticipated outcomes. And so with that, they are, we wanted to expand access and eliminate barriers to advanced courses for students as been, as has been reiterated throughout the, um, presentations of the Pathways to Bright Futures program. We wanted to debunk the belief that high-stakes testing and other prescribed academic measures are the sole indicators for student success. We wanted to establish pathways that may culminate in opportunities for students to earn degrees and/or industry-based certifications at the end of their high school tenure. We wanted to foster academic confidence and competitiveness in the students as they matriculate towards earning high school diplomas and post-secondary transitions. And finally, to promote a collaboration between East Baton Rouge Parish School System and the regional post-secondary institutions to ensure consistency in course offerings that lead to industry-based certifications and intentional academic support, leading to positive outcomes for students. With that, I'm going to pass it over to my colleague, Ms. Mayweather, who's going to give you some data points regarding the end-of-year metrics.
Good evening, once again, to President Tatman, Vice President Collins, board members and Dr. Narcisse, and of course, guests and the community. I feel like you can already hear the excitement in my voice. Uh, when you cultivate and nurture something, it is good to be excited about it. It also feels a little vulnerable because you're putting your baby out there, uh, for everyone to see and, uh, you want it to be supported, you, you feel very close to it. So with that being said, I would like to share some of our end-of-year data metrics. At the close of school year twenty-two, twenty-two, there were one hundred and four ninth grade students, that's total ninth grade students. Seventy-seven of those students were identified as Pathways to Bright Futures students, which of course means that twenty-seven, the remaining of those one oh four, were either repeating ninth graders or non-diploma-bound students. I want to make sure that, uh, the board is aware that Pathways to Bright Future students, those seventy-seven that were identified, were done so because we are talking about first-time diploma-bound ninth grade students. Those are the qualifications to classify a student as Pathways to Bright Futures. This next bullet, I'm so excited to share with you, all seventy-seven, all seventy-seven ninth grade students who participated in the pilot program were promoted to tenth grade. That is a hundred percent of students in the Pathways to Bright Futures program who matriculated to the next grade. If you would look with me at those twenty-seven students that were not included because most likely they were repeating ninth grade, had we included only the PBF students for this ninth grade cohort, there would be no repeaters. That's a huge deal and it's a huge, nobody can speak to the culture shift at Glen Oaks High School like my principal can, who's standing here with me, who has been there and seeing the change. This is my first year back at Glen Oaks High School, so I, it is not as impactful to me as it is to someone who's been there and seen what that looks like, to have a hundred percent of your, of a class or a cohort moving on together. So if we do look back at the one hundred and four ninth graders, total eighty-eight percent of those, uh, inclusive of the repeaters, were promoted to the tenth grade and that is still a three percent increase from the previous school year and is of course consistent with the board-approved strategic plan, uh, key performance indicator one point seven to be exact. And also, uh, one of the metrics that we feel proud of is the average GPA for our Pathways to Bright Futures cohort is a two-point-five-nine and that does include all ninth graders. And the district-wide average GPA for all ninth graders across regions and across all schools is a two-point-four-four. So we are also very proud of that. One thing that I do want to say before I go on to this slide, which looks at a LEAP comparison, as a seven-year test coordinator in this district, um, I feel obligated and also, uh, feel responsible to make sure that the board and the public is aware that anytime we share LEAP scores for a, uh, current year, we want to make sure we know, uh, that you guys know that this is school-level data. As you know, LDOE has not yet certified and/or finalized, um, EOC score or LEAP scores because it is not yet the close of the window. We have not even seen in this district middle school or elementary school LEAP scores for this particular testing window. So we want to make sure that everyone understands that these comparisons were, uh, generated at a school level. And again, based on scores that we are receiving at the school. It's, I'm sorry, did someone have a question?
Perhaps it may be accurate to say that the district is not ready to release EOC scores, but it is inaccurate to say that we don't have the scores. We do.
We do have some scores. We do not, LDOE has not released to the district or to school sites some scores, for example, the, uh, three through five or the six through eight scores. But high school scores have been released.
Yes.
They just have not been finalized.
Okay.
And we are a combination school, so we do, you know, we have some of our scores.
But we have received, just for clarity, and fine if we don't want to release it at this moment, just means that we need to, I need that information once it's time for it to be released.
Absolutely.
Okay, but we do have, for these particular students, EOC scores in possession.
We do.
Let me just clarify. Vice President Collins, if I can just get clarity.
She can continue, that's all right.
No, so I just want to make sure clarity. Andrew Okoski, who's our head of accounting and assessment, can you just explain, just so we can make sure that the public is clear?
As those of you who may be parents of high school students know, or friends, relatives of high school students know, scores have come back on the individual level for individual students. They trail a couple of days behind them. It's not a complete picture at this point. We only have student level that you can raw tally by hand. Not all of them have been in, middle school isn't in, some of your repeat testers are not in. We're going to have repeat testers again this summer. And so at the student level, you can release individual student scores. But what the state does is they wait to release school level, district level in July, and then it becomes public. And so as a district, we don't typically release rollups until it becomes public.
All right, and that's fine. And I've pretty much said what you just said. We have the information. It would not be accurate to say that we don't have the information for ninth grade. We might not have it for sixth grade.
We may not have it for all.
Might not have it for all levels. But y'all did just say, we have it.
We have it for some, who've taken it.
That's it, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sorry you had to come up here. Thank you, I'm sorry.
No worries.
And since I had already interrupted you, board member Dyson would like to interrupt the presentation right along with me, and I apologize. Thank you.
So you indicated that all 77 ninth grade students who participated in the pilot were promoted to 10th grade.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm wondering how many of those 77 ninth graders passed their dual enrollment?
If you give me three more slides, you're, you have that information?
Perfect, thank you.
So back to the LEAP by comparison, initial data, again, school-level raw data does show that in both Algebra I and English I, which is what ninth graders typically take as their LEAP assessments, end-of-year assessments, we have grown in both proficiency as well as basic and above, about, well, actually, 16 to 23% year-over-year for basic and above, and by 1% for mastery. And then in English I, 26 to 35% basic and above, and then 3% in mastery, growth in mastery. This slide, for many of you, may be shocking. It was very stark to me. I am a longtime Baton Rouge community member. I am a product of Baton Rouge schools, a proud graduate of Baton Rouge Magnet High School. Both of my children are K through 12 EBR public schools. Both of them graduated from the McKinley High School. I see some representatives here, as did Ms. Levitino. I mention that only because those were institutions where my children and myself had many, many, many opportunities for advanced coursework from the start, from ninth grade. When I look at this graphic, the most stark thing to me is, first of all, the enrollments that were available to all students at Glen Oaks High School were only in the small percentage of Magnet or CTEC pathways. If you look at the difference between school year 2021 and school year 2122, which was the inaugural year of the Pathways to Bright Futures program, this is what access looks like. This is what opportunity looks like. There are many, many, many graphics around this room and on every slide we're presenting that say every student. This is every student. If you are a longtime community member, like I am here, if you have been in this district for a very long time, then that is the goal of what, the work that we do here, is for students to have the type of access that we are affording them at Glen Oaks High School through this program. I have always worked at urban schools, even though I did not attend one. And that's for this reason, because this is what every student's access and opportunity should look like. I'm not usually an emotional person, but this is, this is what I want to see and what I want to see other schools grow into. So that being said, our course load for dual enrollment and/or advanced coursework went from 30 enrollments in the year 2021 to 244 this first inaugural year of PBF.
Thank you, Ms. Mayweather. Okay, so again, the goal of this presentation is to provide some operational and practical data points. And so you're looking at some of the same data pieces but from different lenses, because what you just looked at was the enrollment numbers. So if some of you saw where it's 240 in the ninth grade, obviously, there are not 240 students. We're looking at the number of enrollments, because for the most part, even in our post-secondary partners, the way that they collect their data so that we can ensure that there is a transparent view in what we are presenting as a whole, is they are looking at their data by enrollment as well. And so we have a later slide where we'll look at it by student. So in this particular case, still keeping the enrollment in hand, you're looking at the grading type breakdown by enrollment. So we could kind of go through each one of those if we needed to, but what you're looking at is pretty much a bell curve. You have your A to F category, and then also your Ws or withdrawals have been counted in there, because our post-secondary partner also keeps track of withdrawals. So that being the case, going from the A to F piece, we do have a bell curve there, and we're still looking at approximately 70% of our students earning an A, B, or C, which is a college-credit-bearing grade mark. So this one is for enrollment. And then on the next slide, this is speaking to, I think, board member Dyson's question, grade distribution by DE courses. So we have the four courses that were a part of the pilot sequence for the Pathways program. That was the World Geography course, your World History course, your two foreign languages. And then also, we have up there for you, because this group did also participate in some technical programming as well, there's the health, the Introduction to Healthcare Occupations course up there. So what you're looking at from each one is where the grading marks fell for each course, period. And again, just like the last slide, there's also a listing for the withdrawal numbers as well for each one of those. So overwhelmingly, you see majority of the students are falling in the ABC areas, with a few outliers in some particular places. One thing that we will note, again, this is a pilot, and as you'll see as we go through some later information, the purpose of a pilot is to learn and grow and do better. So the earlier sequences, you see the foreign language piece in there, and what we did learn from this piece was that because of the fact that, as many of our colleagues have gone through in terms of some of the things that are changing within the district, in terms of course sequencing and trying to do some uniformity around course sequencing, there are a large number of our students that have not had exposure to foreign language at the elementary and middle grades, like other students, Glen Oaks being one of those groups. So going into that foreign language piece at a dual enrollment level, there were some challenges there, but again, they had their academic coordinator and some support pieces in place. We had some remediation, some intervention activities. We had some supports built in to kind of walk them through those pieces, but that is an area that we did learn from, and we have some findings and some ideas for how to support those pieces in the future.
And Board Member Dyson, to go back to the actual accrual of the credits that you mentioned earlier, not just the grades, but the actual accrual of credits and how those may be placed and gained by students, this goes back to the 77 ninth grade students that we talked about. Seven of those students did engage in dual enrollment. They were initially enrolled, but did not earn the, the class credit. Some of them were in the course and just didn't earn the credit, or they might have withdrawn because we did some academic awareness checkpoints. You know, every four and a half to five weeks, we did some academic awareness checkpoints to ensure that students would be able to succeed and wanted to make sure that we did what was best for them. Eight students earned three hours of college credit. 14 students earned six hours of college credit. 15 students earned nine hours of college credit. 18 students earned the full attainment, 12 hours of college credit. And you will also note a bullet point under the 18, that six of the 18 full attainment students actually earned 14 hours of college credit their freshman year of high school because of the additional introduction to Occupational Health course through their magnet pathway, through their medical magnet pathway. And then you have 15 students who were not engaged in dual enrollment, and we've listed the two reasons why they might not have been. Either they missed a lot of seat time, 30 or more days of school, or they missed the enrollment deadline. As another board member mentioned earlier, we are quite a transitional district, and DE does follow college deadlines, you know, to whichever institution it is attached, and so they missed the deadline. I know that this is not necessarily the platform for recognition, but I would be remiss if I did not at least acknowledge and bring up a student that we have here that falls into one of these categories. First of all, I was a magnet coordinator in this district as well some time ago, and I know that a brochure, or a website, or an academic coordinator is designed to have certain speaking points and make you feel a certain way. Children see what they see, and they say what they see. And they're very, very unmoved by talking points. And so I think it would be very valuable for you guys to really hear from someone who went through it. I will tell you that this student participated in every one of the dual enrollments available, including the Health Sciences, because she is a medical magnet student. I will tell you that this student earned an A in every single one of the 14 hours that she was enrolled in as a medical magnet student at Glen Oaks High School. I will tell you that she has a 4.33 GPA at this time. There are a lot of things I could tell you about her. She is a basketball player at Glen Oaks High School for the Lady Panthers. And so there, this is, we're talking about an all-encompassing student, but one thing I want to share with you before she comes up and shares some of her own experience is that Melon Beauchamp could have gone to any school in the district. She chose to come to Glen Oaks High School for two reasons, because of the medical magnet pathway, but also because it was the pilot program for Pathways to Bright Futures, and there is no one else that could speak better as to that experience. So it is with great pleasure, honor that I present to you Melon Beauchamp, our PBF Pilot Student of the Year.
First, first, I would like to thank God, my mother and father, superintendent, board members, principal, signator, teachers, and the staff at the Glen Oaks Magnet High School. And last but not least, Ms. Mayweather, thank you. The Pathways to Brighter Futures provide me and those of the Class of 2025 an awesome opportunity to excel in life. As an incoming ninth grader, I was nervous about the expectations, taking college courses, and being the first class. Ms. Mayweather, the BRCC instructors and educators of Glen Oaks eased my transition by providing guidance, support, and encouragement as they slowly let our hands go throughout the year. We were taught to be leaders and innovative thinkers. We learned to work collaborative to accomplish goals, and as an individual, we were able to grow and mature. As I now move to the next chapter, I have became anxious and, I mean, sorry, I have become anxious and eager to embrace this new endeavor. I am truly grateful for the opportunity in the program. Again, I would like to say thank you to everyone, and I was very appreciative of it being the first student of the year selected to represent the Pathway to a Brighter Future. Thank you.
Can I say something?
Well, first of all, I like to say, thank the superintendent for, for trusting us with this endeavor of piloting this program. It has truly been a blessing for Glen Oaks High School. The culture is starting to change. It's going to take time, you know, it'd take a year to get like it was, but now you've, you've developed a ninth grade class, and they call it the first class, and you can tell the difference of those students on campus. They're the most mature students on campus, and they're ninth graders, you know, but it's, it's truly a blessing. And I just think as, as they matriculate to the next grade, next year, we have ninth and 10th grade both in the pathway. We've already identified the building, we've already identified the staff to take care. So in four years, I want you all to just pay attention and look and see what this program has done for Glen Oaks High School. But that's all I wanted to say. All right. Throw me the ball, Mark.
Ms. Beauchamp, I'm trying to hold it together right now. I really am, because this is so emotional for me, but I won't be long. I just want to give you this medal on behalf of our superintendent, on behalf of our board. You are the future, and students like you that's going to change this district and take us to levels that we've never seen before. So my hat goes off to you, ma'am.
I want to thank her parents as well, who are here, and her family. I know it's been a long agenda of waiting for your daughter to be recognized. I want to thank you to everybody who came up and spoke. I want to mention one other thing, because I think it's very, very important to note. If you look at the 18 students who earned 12 hours or more of college credit, we saw a slide Dr. Robinson presented earlier in the presentation that mentioned that the North Region has the highest, actually has 20% of the ESS population in this district. Part of that 20% is with us in this PBF pilot pathway. And one of those students had full attainment and is a SPED student who earned 12 hours of college credit. And many of the other SPED students are in those partial lists that earned three or six or nine. So to me, that's where we're going to gain the equity in this, because SPED students are not excluded, ESL students are not excluded, 504 students are not excluded, students with learning disabilities or reading disabilities or writing disabilities are not excluded. They are supported, they are monitored, and then they are delineated as necessary, but they are always going to be given a chance and enrolled to begin with.
Okay, so if we return to, so you've seen some quantitative data, we have some qualitative takeaways as well. So Glen Oaks students and teachers completed their first year with the PBF programming. And so we, again, there was a plethora of takeaways, but just to kind of capture three that recall back to our original outlined goals for this, we noted that eighth-grade LEAP scores are not a primary indicator for success in post-secondary pursuits. So it is not one of the data points that you're looking at today, but obviously, when we're talking about 104, even 77 students specifically to the PBF cohort, the scores are all over the place. And yet, there's still some variance of success at each one of those levels. So that's one takeaway that we have here. The second one was increased opportunities and access to advanced coursework yields better performance for students, as there was an increase in the ninth grade overall GPA. That one kind of goes without saying, you get the opportunity to do coursework. I think one of the, the fears was that as a student is given an opportunity to do something more, that they may crumple at the challenge. And what we And what we find in our data points that we're looking at is a lot of them met that challenge and continue to push further. And then our third takeaway is that, kind of again, a given. Socio-emotional learning is an important aspect in building a culture of success as students in the first class felt more connected to their academy culture. So a couple of things that we did, Ms. Mayweather's spoken to it, Ms. Beauchamp has spoken to it. But there was also a survey that went out to students at the end of the year, just to and and teachers, just to kind of see, to gauge where everybody was and how they felt about it. So in looking at that, being able to kind of have that collaborative structure and that form of support is beneficial for both groups or both stakeholder groups in moving forward. So, there it is. The following aspects are necessary for district-wide implementation and continuous improvement. Again, three. The ninth grade academy structure implemented is required and to keep and, I'm sorry, to get and keep students on track for a timely graduation. So you kind of see that in a lot of the data points that we looked at, as well as the qualitative measures that you've seen here. Expansion of advanced course options to allow student flexibility in aligning with post-secondary goals. So as we mentioned before, when we initiated the pilot, there is, and the pilot group participated in dual enrollment coursework. Well, as you move into year two and you're able to explore more, you have the opportunity for those industry-based credentialing course or courses aligned with industry-based credentialing, even though we did have a group of students in the medical magnet that also took what would be considered a technical path. And then, of course, the AP coursework is opened up as well. So that's something that we took away from that pilot piece. And then that last part is fostering a collaboration between the East Baton Rouge Parish School System and post-secondary institution to ensure continuity of supports for students. So to kind of explain that one, what we find is there are supports out there for students that are enrolled in dual enrollment AP within the district, but also when we're working with post-secondary partners, they have built-in support opportunities. So we don't need to really reinvent the wheel a lot of times. There just needs to be some more conversation and collaboration around how to use those supports within both of those systems. And with that, that is a district look at it. So what happens for Glen Oaks for next year?
So as a team, trying to figure out how to keep the same structures and supports that we have in place for ninth grade and then to really expand those to include our 10th grade and our our moving cohort. The preparation for Glen Oaks High for school year 2022, 2023 is going to be as follows. First of all, the program will expand at Glen Oaks High School to include two grade levels. And the updates will include, but of course, are not limited to. We will do check-ins at points to see what else needs to be added and what else we could do to grow and support. We plan on progressing the ninth grade cohort to a prescribed 10th grade program of study. In addition, beginning to talk about delineating those student groups into potential pathways, including technical considerations like the CTEC or industry-based certifications. And then also, we're basing that on first-year data, but monitoring academic metrics at checkpoints throughout the year. Someone mentioned that when we all, you know, became degreed, we can count probably how many times we changed our major or, you know, our our coursework of interest. So those are important things to note because on a progression of coursework, we can say what we think the kids should take. And sometimes things happen in the freshman year, in the sophomore year, maybe even the junior year. And so as long as students have information and families have as much information as possible about those options that we keep talking about and that we're having those conversations, not just us making those decisions or me making those decisions or a counselor making those decisions, but really speaking with families about their options and making sure that they understand that before we make those decisions. And so that's the academic metrics that I'm talking about, parent conferencing and things like that. Maintaining the modified ninth grade program of study with some adjustments based on the findings from the pilot year. One of those adjustments was the world languages, the moving away from the world language DE that Ms. Levitino mentioned and discussed. And then also to include some AP coursework. Now that the model for Pathways to Bright Futures is to include an AP option, Glen Oaks is not a school that has traditionally had many AP options. As a matter of fact, at this time, there are only 11th and 12th grade AP options. So we want to make sure students coming into the Bright Futures pathway or the program, especially if they're ninth graders, that we have the option that they were offered. So that's a a growth area for us. We want to continue the academy model by moving PBF to a building that accommodates both ninth and 10th grade. Mr. Signator alluded to it earlier, that we will be moving buildings with the PBF office, our instructional office immediately in the middle of both grade levels. This came, one, we had already planned on doing this, but this came as a direct converse, as a result of the direct conversation with students. Myself and Mr. Foreman, my office mate, who has a hand in in helping me run PBF, we were sitting one day and having a discussion with kids. It wasn't a formal survey, it was an informal discussion. You know, we're a small, small hallway, so we can do that from time to time. We see our kids a lot, we know all of our kids. And they specifically asked, our ninth graders asked, when the new ninth grade class comes in next year, are you guys going to leave us? Do we just go and what what happens? Are you guys still going to monitor us? So we said, you know what, they're not ready yet. They need another year. So our principal said, which building do you want? How can we make it work? So I think just stopping and seeing that this isn't, it's not just numbers. We're not just putting numbers of kids through. These are little personalities and we adjust as 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 needed. So one of our growths or one of our implementations is going to be a ninth and 10th grade PBF model. And we'll we'll be the only ones in the district who obviously have the opportunity to do that. So we're going to do that and see how that works. And then to expand our collaboration with BRCC, our existing collaboration with BRCC by incorporating additional learning models within the PBF program at Glen Oaks High School. So to include what we've already had, which is face-to-face dual enrollment instruction, synchronous online learning, and also asynchronous learning as well. The other point of improvement or growth that we would like to have is we want to identify and develop our own Glen Oaks High School faculty to try to receive adjunct certification opportunities and/or AP training, to build the internal capacity for a variety of advanced course types so we don't have to constantly bring in adjunct professors or have to have BRCC or other institutions try to find staffing for us. And then, of course, all of this, you know, only works if the the dreaded master schedule is done as need be. And one of the improvements or growth areas for us for going into year two is that we need to ensure that our master schedule includes common grade level planning for PBF PLCs to continue that collaboration with not only the post-secondary instructors, but also the onsite Glen Oaks High School staff.
All right. And with that, we're going to invite our colleagues from the Division of Academics to come up and discuss student supports for specialized programming for ESS and EL.
Good evening, once again, board members, Dr. Narcisse. So as we embark upon this journey with the Pathways to Bright Futures, and we're looking at students who this concern has come up multiple times. I think Ms. Mayweather eloquently spoke to it regarding students with disabilities. Are they able to participate in the program? And the answer is obviously yes, it is. These students are afforded opportunities to pursue a traditional pathway such as TOPS University or TOPS Tech Jump Start. And so to the question that has been raised, whether or not our students with disabilities can participate, they can, and obviously, they are doing exceptionally well in this particular pilot. So we will expand that for next year. So when we talk about students with disabilities receiving their accommodations as stipulated in the IAP or the IEP, that's also including our students that have 504s. They will receive their accommodations. We are working with the university professors and the teachers that are in those programs, and they are helping to support those students. If a student's IEP called for whatever accommodations, they would get that as a part of their the entry into the Pathways to Bright Futures. So they would not, none of none of those accommodations would be excluded. And that varies from student to student. Okay? How will those accommodations be implemented in a dual enrollment class? We certainly heard that this evening from Glen Oaks. It's a it's a collaborative effort. And we work in collaboration with the university. And I just got to give a shout out to Dr. Barlow over at BRCC because of the, I mean, she took us, I remember the day we went in, and she took us from the beginning to the end. And Chancellor Smith, who just really worked with us to even take our angst down when we started this because we were just wanting to make sure we were doing the right thing for the kids. Our ESL students will also be a part of this as as well. And their accommodations, our EL students, I'm sorry, will be a part of this, and their accommodations will be provided as well. They don't have IEPs, but they do have accommodations. And so whether they take an AP course or a DE course, they will be provided with the supports that they are in need of. And same type of collaboration will occur between the teachers and the professors will for ESS students will also occur for 504 and for our EL students as well. And this just basically talks about the monitoring and the district support. A lot of the instructional strategies that are employed in all of the classes now that they're receiving, they will receive those in the DE situation as well, whether it's small group instruction, whether it's extended time. Glen Oaks did a lot of great strategy, employed a lot of great strategies around supporting those students, having some of the, not the technical name that was used. I want to say a boot camp, right? Yes. And that's where the students had, they brought them in and provided an opportunity for them to do assignments. The professors were willing to work. And so these same types of accommodations would be provided to our EL students and our ESS students, as it has been already. Okay? Any questions? Okay. So I will now defer to Dr. Lashley. And we also have other data and information we could share as well.
Good evening. President Chapman, Tatman, that's just coming in the door here, and Vice President Collins, board members, and Dr. Narcisse. As we know, we've heard a lot of good things this evening about programs and different things of that sort. But one of the things that we know that's very important, which is one of our six keys, which is making sure that we ensure that our eighth graders have a successful transition into middle school. And so with that being said, we need to take a look at, we're going to take a quick look at where we are because we know with the Pathways to Bright Future, we want to make sure now that we are adding those stopgaps. In fact, we're starting this summer to do that. And we'd like to just take a quick glance. So I want to share a few data points with you just for the perspective of finding out where we are right now. And then we're going to take a look, a quick look at some of the things that we're going to do in order to support and intervene at those levels where our students need it. So as we can see, has it has already been stated that the question has been asked right now, do we know where our eighth graders are? And it's already been stated that we have not received our LEAP data yet. Yes.
Okay, you ready to?
I just need to, before we get too deep into this, are we talking, is this data Glen Oaks data? Or is this system?
No, this is, no, this is not Glen Oaks data. This is not, this is district data. And thank you for asking that question.
I'm sorry. Thank you for asking me. Are you finished with your question?
Yeah, yeah, I just needed to know where we were, what we were talking about here.
Well, you you asked that question, which caused me to ask a follow-up question. Where is the eighth grade? I already was going to ask after the presentation, where's the eighth grade LEAP data specific to Glen Oaks?
We don't have the eighth grade data specific to Glen Oaks right now.
Excuse me, let me clarify. Let me clarify. Excuse me. What I had asked for as part of this presentation, and we have the EOC data already for the ninth grade, but we don't want to talk about it yet. I'll take that. For these ninth grade students who have gone through this coursework, their eighth grade LEAP scores is clear. So when I ask, because I want to understand, where was their reading level before going into ninth grade? How did they do in the courses? And I don't get either the how were they doing going into it? In addition to, okay, and what did the state standardized test say at the end of the course year? For the end of course test? Then, yeah, y'all really ain't give me nothing to work with for me to analyze this accurately. You just, it's not that hard. It's quite frankly, very disrespectful. Okay? And no, I do not buy into the myth that high-stakes testing and other prescribed academic measures are sole indicators of student success. No, but we have these standardized tests in place. Supposedly, at the bare minimum, it says whether or not a child is reading on grade level is relevant.
Vice President Collins, we apologize. We'll we'll make sure we get that data to you.
And you know, you can wait until y'all ready to release the EOC.
We'll just, we'll just get the eighth grade Glen Oaks. Since we're, yes, since we're focused only on Glen Oaks.
All right, thank you.
It's specifically for Glen Oaks, the ninth grade students who participated in.
Yes.
The pilot.
We apologize for that.
We apologize for the misunderstanding.
I will do a better job at my bullet points with my requests that I sent via email. I'll do a better job. Thank you. Go ahead.
It's okay.
Thank you.
Do you want to hear this? You're saying, I'm sorry, Barbara.
No, Ms. Lashley, I wasn't saying to interrupt your presentation. Okay? But since the point was raised, I I went with it.
Well, I definitely, I definitely see the the requests moving forward, and we'll work toward that. What I what I wanted to do was show in that we're really concerned about our eighth graders, as you have said, Board Member Collins. So in that we didn't have our data from LEAP right now, we thought, let's take a look at our eighth graders and where they are right now. And so we went back to the seventh grade LEAP data to give us an indication of how our eighth graders came into us this year. And so when we looked at that data, we were able to see that they came in where forty percent of them were really not performing at proficiency. And so that was a point that we wanted to make note of as we move forward. We also wanted to see, and and again, with the bullet points, and I apologize, we misunderstood those. But there was a question about reading levels. And we know that the LEAP data does not give us the reading levels. It will assess standards. However, we were able to ascertain those reading levels by looking at our achieved data, which really focuses in on the Lexos. And in doing so, we were able to find out where our where our students were in terms of reading levels.
Ms. Ms. Lashley. What are they proficient, what are they advanced mastery, basic, approaching basic? In what?
This is in ELA.
So then, okay, so I'll take that on my part as a misspeak.
Okay.
ELA, not necessarily specific to reading.
Well, it's ELA from the LEAP standpoint, but there was a question around where, what grade level are our eighth graders reading on?
Okay.
And so what I had attempted to do was to provide that information in looking at the LexIls scores, which really gives us that information a little bit. It gives us an idea of where our students are reading. And so with that being said.
Okay.
When we looked at those students this year, at the end of this year, we found that we're right at sixth, seventh grade level with our eighth graders this, our current eighth graders across our district.
And then for clarity, when you say LexIls scores?
Yes, ma'am. That is where we look at where a certain range that our kids will fall in after taking their, what we call our level set with the ACHIEVE. And so that gives us a reading level. If we want a reading level, that's where we get our reading level. So that's against complex text, how they handle complex texts of that sort.
Okay. So then, because I had written that question down.
Yes, ma'am.
So then your eighth grade reading levels, the LexIls you're referring to are based on data from ACHIEVE 3000?
Yes, ma'am. Because right now, that is the place where we can get those LexIls scores currently. And so though those are apples and oranges, when you think about LEAP and you think about ACHIEVE, but again, one gives you a mastery of standards, which is your LEAP, and that would have been their seventh grade. And I want to just preference that with one of the things that I think we should take in consideration. When we look at our eighth grade students and where they are right now, we need to consider that they had those two years behind because of being out of school, then we had the COVID. We had different things to happen. Our students actually lost about four years. So I wanted to preference that with that. And so it's important for us, though, to know where our eighth graders are as we talk about making sure that they're successful transitioning into ninth grade. And then it also helps us to know those areas are opportunities for growth, where we can, we're starting it this summer, we're saying, now that we see where they are, or we have a strong predictor, we can now start working on those things right away.
So Dr. Lash, if I could just add, the reason I credit the board for this T plan is because, remember, these state assessments are one-time, and they don't provide item analysis in very detail around what performance is compared to the ANET data that the board has adopted for their benchmark, which is much more helpful to teachers to decide what their next move and strategies are to help students. And we also do it quarterly, so we can be able to pre-predict how a child would perform or where their gap is before they get there. And so that's why we're excited about keeping consistency around our benchmark assessments.
And Dr. Narcisse, I'm glad you brought that up, because again, I have three different sets of data, but I think all data is good data. So with that being said, with our ANET data, the most important point that we can make tonight is that we're moving in the right direction. So though those eighth graders came in, even with our ANET data, the first cycle, they were around 41% or so. Now, at this third cycle with ANET, our predictor of how our kids may even do on the LEAP, we're at 51%. So we're increasing, and we can tell where we are with our ANET data, and we're moving in the right direction, is what I want to say.
For clarity, 50% of what?
51% proficient of the students who came in, and we tested about 2,000, 2,800 students. And of those, we had about, we started out at the first cycle of the assessment, they were at 40 so percent, 41% or so. Now we are right at 51% in terms of where they are showing proficiency this last cycle around.
Okay.
Which means we're improving.
You said it, but I don't want to mix my, I want, make sure my notes are accurate. The 693 and the 774, by the end of the year, the 774 represents what grade level?
That represents about the sixth or seventh grade level. And to be on track, as an eighth grader, we need about a 1050, 1010 LexIel to be on track. So we're at a good, we're at a good place. We need to know, I think it's always great to know where we are, so we know what our next moves are and what we need to do. And so all data tells a story, and I thought, especially when we're looking at the opportunities that we are going to provide as we bring back that other data for you around the Glen Oaks students, know that some of those students that may not have been in the program or may have been, or actually, these eighth graders would be some of those students matriculating up.
Okay. Thank you very much. Did you have anything else in your presentation?
No. Other than, I had one slide.
Okay.
I think. One more. I did have more things, just to quickly say, so now that we know a little bit of the story around our data, what are we going to do about it? These are just some bullet points about how we're going to intend to give support and intervene at those levels. We're going to dive really deep into small group instruction this year to make sure that we're differentiating instruction for the students in high school as they move through. That's something that we don't typically do a lot of, but we've seen that movement this year because we dove very deeply into making sure that we are doing the job embedded professional development, so that teachers can know how to adequately use their curricular resources. And we've seen good gain from that. Those are just a few things, and again, we're starting that summer. We're embedding writing in. We know that a large part of our assessments are built around writing, and so we're starting right away using our LDOE rubric as, from day to day, not just waiting until the end of the year to start with those things. These are a few things that we've already begun, but we'll dig deeper on those as we move through the year. A few other things, like, what are we going to do? Like, who's going to provide this? We know that literacy coaches will be in all schools this year. We're also going to lean in very deeply with our instructional leadership teams around this data and talking about what we're going to do as next steps, being very strategic in our continuous improvement planning and monitoring around this. And then, of course, we talked about that through acceleration and intervening. And I think that's important, because it's not just enough to look at the challenging students, but also those students who are doing quite well. We don't push them up to the next level as well, so we're going to be working on that. So we call it, we're going to accelerate and intervene at the same time, because as we always say, we're not, we're not talking about remediation, because as Dr. Narcisse always says, we cannot remediate children into success. So with that being said, we're going to accelerate and intervene, which is a more term that we'll use there, and we'll do it through a lot of the data and informing ourselves as we use those pieces that we mentioned before. And lastly, if we just focus on, what you stay focused on will grow. So it doesn't take a lot of strategies. We don't need a whole bunch of them, but we just need to find the ones that really work, that we feel like will really move our students. And as we concentrate on those, as we can see, we are already moving in the right direction. As long as we're moving right, we're doing well, and so we're going to continue to focus on those as we provide support to all of our students this upcoming year.
Thank you. Board Member Dyson, you still have a question or comment?
I'm good for my.
Okay. And Board Member Landis, you already spoke?
I have it. Thank you. I don't want to diminish the work that has gone into this, and I really wish that Principal Signator was still here right now, because people don't even understand, this man was baptized by fire when he took over his job at Glen Oaks High School, and the culture of where it was then, the involvement or the lack thereof, and what he has been able to do in cultivating this campus, keeping these, our students on track, and giving them something to believe in. I'm really trying my best to hold my emotions right now. Ms. Mayweather, could you please stand? Excuse me, I'm sorry. This was my 10th grade biology teacher. She's aging backwards, I'm aging forwards. But it's because of the dedicated work from people like yourselves, who work tirelessly, like other teachers around our school district, and the energy that you have put into moving this has been tremendous. And for me, the moment where I realized that this is something that needs to happen was when the U.S. Secretary of Education, Dr. Miguel Codona, came to Glen Oaks High School, met with the students one-on-one, went through some of the data and said that this needs to be the pilot for the country. That is a moment in our school system where we need to be proud, because the job that you were given with the ninth grade population that you have at the school, I don't think people truly understand what you're dealing with. And the fact that you were able to move them, and the story heard tonight from that young lady, who gave her all, and look how she's achieving, that's something that just simply, you can't glance over there, and I just want to tell y'all, continue to do the work. Continue to be the example that we need to see, so that our students understand that they truly do have a place here inside of our school system to be as successful as they want to be. Thank you.
Thank you, Board Colleague. I just, I do have like, one more question. I do want to first say, first and foremost, this being piloted in Glen Oaks, even if the numbers were much worse than what they're showing, I think it still is a blessing and a benefit to the students who, who were able to obtain something. Okay? And I mean it very much. But what I want to get some clarity around is the intention, or when the program started, all 77 students were supposed to take four dual enrollment classes, two one semester and two another, the next semester? So then there's three and three. So there's six the first semester, and six credits the first semester.
Yes, ma'am.
Six credits the second semester.
Yes.
What happened that 18 students were successful in that out of 77? And eight, what, help me understand, what happened to like, the eight students who earned one of the four?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
So there's, sorry, there's a couple scenarios that we have to look at. This is why we wanted to show the data in two different ways. We wanted to look at the enrollment count, and then we wanted to look at the student count. So even if you kind of look at it and divide out the enrollment count, which I believe was like 20, 240 by four, saying, because it's supposed to be four and four, you don't get 77. So you know that there are some scenarios in which kids did not engage in one or two of the other courses. So in some cases, the kid that maybe got nine credits, it was because he had the three classes. And for some of them, it could have been, for example, French, because that was one of the ones that was our learning area, right? So if I did not do as well as I'd like to do in French one, we did have a group of students that took French one in the second semester, because I want to get the higher GPA for it, or if I did not do well in French one, as a college prerequisite, I can't go into French two. So we have two different pieces you have to look at. It's the number of students that were engaged, and then it's the number of enrollments. And in all cases, it isn't four and four, but there are various situations as to why that might happen. You also saw some withdrawals. We wanted to show the withdrawals in terms of enrollments and not in terms of students, because some students may have withdrawn from, withdrawn, sorry, from one course and not both courses, or one course and not all four courses. So you kind of have some uneven pieces there, because again, as Ms. Mayweather pointed out, there is a monitoring system in place as well, because we have to be mindful of the district deadlines in terms of when grades are due, the college deadlines in terms of when a student can drop versus when a student can withdraw, because they were solely dealing with dual enrollment in this. And so in every instance, you didn't have that evenly across the board.
Okay. And offline, I need to revisit the way I request, and this is really not directed to you.
Okay.
But I'm raising it to those I had a discussion with. Need to revisit the way I requested the information in the first place, because it would make it a whole lot easier for me to see exactly what you're talking about, just like that.
Okay.
Okay?
And Vice President Collins, may I add one additional thing, and that is this. Sometimes from the plan or the outline to the implementation, a lot of things change. And I will say, as a longtime employee of VBR, whether a child that I'm managing or directing, whether they ever, ever earn a dual enrollment or not, a credit or not, an AP credit, any type of advanced coursework or not, for myself as an academic coordinator, as a principal, as Mr. Signator, as a counselor of any of these students, I see my number one priority as an educator to be, to ensure that at the end of the day, a student progresses towards the requirements of graduation as set forth by the Louisiana Department of Education. So for that reason, there are instances where a student may start out in full attainment and have both, each semester have both of those dual enrollments registered or enrolled, but then we may withdraw them, because we want to do what's best for the student. We don't want to impede their progression towards their graduation, towards their high school diploma, because we are trying to, like you said earlier, push them into something that they may or may not need. So that's why we put those academic awareness points in, and those are metrics that, you know, and we can discuss this later, and I know you didn't ask for all that, but we look at absences, we look at grades, and we look at behavior. And just, there's a certain maturity level that sometimes comes. So some of those students will be worked back in. So like Ms. Levitino mentioned, maybe they were not in either or both of the first semester dual enrollment pathways, but then we may have worked them back in. So that's where you get the difference in the three, the six, the nine, and in some cases, zero, because they may not have been able to, you know, academically handle any of those courses. So we are making, going back to those options, we are making sure that this is an individualized academic awareness and not a whole group.
Thank you.
Okay.
And then, it's part of this, okay? What is on the high school transcript for the 36 college level Ds, 20 college level Fs, and 14 withdrawn?
All right. I'll start with the withdrawals, because that's an easier one. All right. So in terms of I'm withdrawing out of the college class, I then default into, in the case of a DE course, they're earning a full credit in the semester version, but I'm still approaching the same coursework. I have the C time in terms of moving towards a semester credit for it. So you'll have a student that would have credit for a traditional high school version of that course, because remember, all of these have equivalence to something else. That's why it's dual enrollment. In the case of the D or the F, as Ms. Mayweather pointed out, again, there were some academic monitoring pieces in place, and so the students had the opportunity, as they were reaching through, to say, some of them were more like, I want to keep, I want to keep going, I can make it, I can do this. So some of them do have the D or the F in the coursework, which goes back to what I was explaining about that French situation. There are some students that had the first semester course that they were taking in the second semester to go ahead and recoup that. We also talked with the post-secondary provider to ensure that there were some opportunities for students that wanted to take a remediation opportunity. But yet, those courses do exist on, or the marks, sorry, do exist on the transcript as is, but it really is contingent upon the student, because it goes back to, as Ms. Mayweather was saying, we had some students in some situations that, I have to go back to French, because that's the best example. I missed French one, so I can't go into French two. But world geography and world history don't have anything to do with each other. So I can go straight into history. So you had some kids that did that as well. So in the case of some of the poorer marks, there was some flexibility to be able to go back and say, okay, well, I can go and kind of get the second half of a traditional course here, and then I can catch that other piece at another time. And that would speak to your withdrawal pieces as well.
And Ms. Collins, also, the way a transcript would look, and if I could share some of this, let's say, for example, because these are dual enrollment courses, but they are directly consistent with something else on the high school requirement, right? So for example, if a student took the French one and So for example, if a student took the French one and the French two course, pathway, or progression, and they earned one of the credits but not the other. Or they didn't earn either credit, but remember, in high school, to receive a credit, you would have to get a D or higher. Whereas for the college credit, the dual enrollment credit, you would need a C or higher. So there could be students that earn two Ds, but they still met progression because they at least received the high school credit for it. So our intention is always not to hurt a student on the high school side while trying to advance them in coursework on the dual enrollment side.
And this is my last.
Yes, ma'am.
To me, it's problematic, because, for example, with the foreign language. I remember foreign language being, it might be different now, because I'm aging myself. But I took Spanish one and Spanish two in high school. In high school, not in seventh grade or eighth grade to be ready for college-level Spanish one, Spanish two. And so that just being one small example of how not a high school transcript, perhaps, and I could be wrong, maybe it's a, you know, I don't know, it just seemed kind of, I'll let it go. Board Member Dyson, thank you.
Just real quick, so some of this data is outstanding, and I'm real excited to see it. But I also have some concerns. And one of the things that I'm looking at is when you look at the pilot program overview. So if you take D, F, and W, you've got a total of 31.4%, so about a third roughly, that their TOPS eligibility and college transcripts are hurt by this. Okay, so we've got about a third of them that are taking a blow on their college stuff and TOPS eligibility. We've got, it looks like about a third rounding up 30.9, so 31% that did make a C. So they're going into their college with a 2.0 on that work, and that doesn't help them with TOPS eligibility. You know, it's the, what, the lower level of TOPS, the 2.0, not the college bound. And then you've got an outstanding 37.7% that made either an A or a B. So, you know, it's a little not third, 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 but it's close. And so I'm concerned about, I'm very happy for those, a little more than a third, that excelled. I'm really concerned about the ones in that 31.4% of them that we have harmed, I think, in going forward. Maybe they, the Ds got high school credit, but that's going to affect their high school GPA too, which goes into TOPS. So that's concerning to me. And then when I looked at the, because I just have to be a realist, and I'm very happy about a lot of this, and the work that you've done, and the hard work, and, you know, the success stories. But there's, you know, there's the other side to it. And so if we look at district-wide data, not specific to Glen Oaks, but current eighth grade data, and during COVID and all, it looks to me like we've got about 61% that are scoring either basic, mastery, or advanced district-wide. And then 40%, so I guess we've rounded up both times or something, because we've got 101%, but approximate. So we're doing approaching basic and unsatisfactory. We've got 40% of our ninth grader, incoming ninth graders, who are going to very potentially be that 31.4% or that might be 40, that we may harm them going forward. So I'm very concerned about that, and I'm really sorry that Superintendent Narcisse is not here right now, because I know that, you know, that's not, I don't even know if you know how to answer this or what there is to say about it.
Okay, take a stab at it, in terms of where the question is. Okay, so regarding the Ws and the F percentage, again, the Ws, they're not being harmed on the college side because the, while it's a, it's a course attempted, it's not going to affect the GPA, because it doesn't have a GPA weight.
Right, but some colleges limit the number of Ws you can take. So it's a ping.
Right, so we're, but we're.
Used it up.
In terms of just looking at GPA, because I kind of got to take it in layers, it's an onion, right? So looking in terms of GPA, we don't have that situation. Now, in terms of the D and Fs that we're looking at there, you're talking about only high school GPAs at this point, because if we're looking at transferability, if it's not a C or above, it can't technically transfer. So in this one, you do have the one that you've scored in terms of your grade point, quality point, sorry, for the D, and then zero for the F. Let's also bear in mind, though, that the students have an elevated, because when we're looking at this, this is by enrollment type. So this is not meaning that there are 30% of the students that receive that, that's 30% of the enrollment. So it's also possible that a kid may have had a D in one area and got a B in the other class. Because remember, this particular pie graph was looking at enrollments, not students. So I may have gotten a D here and a B there, but remember, the B has an additional weight to it, it has four points, whereas the D has no points. So some of these things, not saying this is going to work out for every situation and every student cleanly, but some of these things are going to go back to what we look at for academic advisement for the counseling piece. So we're not absent of any of that. All of that has to be a part of the monitoring process that Ms. Mayweather, as a coordinator, worked so hard to kind of work through individually with each student. And so that's where that planning piece comes in. But I don't want us to look at that in a conclusive manner, because again, we're talking enrollments on this particular graph and not necessarily the student.
So we really need to get that other graph.
If we are able to give out student data that way, we can get that to you. So then the other piece of that was, I think you referenced the eighth grade students. So this is the pilot, remember, and I think we talked a lot about dual enrollment, because the pilot was dual enrollment. But when it comes to the eighth grade students coming in, they also have access to an advanced placement course. And this is not by any means, College Board, I am not saying that an advanced placement course is easier than a dual enrollment course. But what I am saying is, advanced placement course is a high school-level course. So some students do benefit from a longer engagement with the coursework, and they're able to have those, that the high school, it's a high school course that has the college test at the end. So some of those students may choose that route, because maybe the weekend workshops will work for them in terms of kind of helping to build some of those skills. And as Dr. Lashley spoke to as well, if those literacy supports are in place for those students, knowing this data ahead of time is a huge point to be able to say, okay, look, there's 40% of our kids that are below basic. So there needs to be some built-in supports for those students, especially when we're talking about if they're going to go into the dual enrollment coursework that for the social studies aspects, because they have that text complexity, or if they're going to go into the AP coursework, because that's reading and writing as well, that knowing that data ahead of time and being able to work with those groups of students would be to our benefit. And that, again, is what the pilot is trying to help drive our strategy in terms of moving forward.
And Board Member Dyson, may I add to that by saying, as Board Member Lanis so eloquently pointed out, my age, I have, I'm science-based, so I'm used to making data-driven decisions. But I do want to share one other component of this, which we've tried very hard to, you know, I guess if you've never been to Glen Oaks High School, or you've never really experienced the climate in the community there, it is truly one of the remaining community schools. And as such, there is a different depiction for that community as far as college-bound students and things like that. At the end of the day, we don't want to harm anyone. But if you asked any one of these students, the withdrawals, the Fs, the Ds, they do not want to come out of PBF. And it's not necessarily because of the advanced coursework. It's because of the culture that they're a part of, it's because of the support. I do not believe that if they were not a part of this dual enrollment pilot, that they would have been supported in the same way, even as far as their accommodations, which are, you know, obviously legally bound to them. But there are so many supports. One of the, I think one of the best things that this model provides is not only the adjunct or the college teacher, but that Glen Oaks-based, that faculty, that EBR teacher that does support them on the off days. So I don't know what the model will be going forward. Because we're going to have to, we're going to have to work through a scaling up, right? Or scaling out throughout the district. But what we were able to provide at Glen Oaks High Schools for our supports is when the college professor came on Mondays, Wednesdays, and Fridays, that Glen Oaks-based teacher is there every day, including the Tuesdays and the Thursdays. And so they felt so supported, they do not want to come out of this model. Now, what is, as Ms. Levatino mentioned, what the pilot was able to teach us? You know, there's some takeaways, there's some really good takeaways, and like you mentioned, there are some concerns. And one of the concerns is, we don't ever want to harm the students. So moving forward, we will be able to keep these students in that model without having to do the full attainment of the associate's degree, which was initially the goal of this program. But now that they have three different options, when we see, if we, if I'm able to do those four-and-a-half-week academic, you know, check-ins, and I'm able to see that a student is not going to do well, that the literacy supports, regardless of the literacy supports, the student is just not moving towards attainment of that, before it reaches that W, before it reaches that D, before it reaches that F, that student will be afforded the opportunity and will be encouraged to come out of that. There are two things that are going to help us move forward. One is not only just the option for not to have to do full attainment or the AP, but the fact that the student can go down to one dual enrollment instead of both per semester. That is an option within moving forward, the scaling out of PBF. So you have many students who may not have the best reading level, but could do well in the other choice or the other aspect. And at the end of the day, I mentioned earlier, my job is to make sure the student progresses with or without dual enrollment credits. So at any point, as the academic coordinator, as a principal, as a counselor, that we feel that this student is not going to be helped or is not going to benefit from this class, we will pull them out. And that's just, and they're still allowed to be a part of that PBF, a part of that academy, without being forced into that coursework.
So you've actually answered some of what, because I was, I had the concern of, why did we let them go so far to get the Fs? Why did we let them get so far to take the Ws? And, you know, this is going to be massive if system-wide.
It is.
And I'm thinking about large schools that don't have your little culture.
Yes, agreed.
And they're big, and it's going to be massive, and there's going to have to be so much supports. And, you know, where are all these people going to be coming from and hired from? And, you know, it's just, the big scale of it.
Yes.
Is, you know, we hadn't given this very long as a pilot in this little bitty school, you know?
I understand.
Okay, thank you.
Board Member Gode.
Yes, thank you. Just a quick question, you may or may not have the data. But how many of the graduating classes this year from Glen Oaks qualified for TOPS?
I do have that on the graduation program, which is, I'll have it with me, and I will have that back to you.
You didn't have that on the side? Yeah, I was just curious, because we talk about all these numbers, but I don't know, I don't have a context to put it in.
Agreed, and that's why I mentioned, I wish I would have had that number of students who traditionally at Glen Oaks High School have qualified for TOPS, and especially within the last three years.
Thank you.
And we will get that to you.
Send it back as an inquiry.
Well, I don't know, I mean, the top, the graduates that did graduate, there collectively was over $300,000 in scholarships.
That's good. Very good. What did he say?
The graduates.
Board Member Wedge. Yeah, those.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. Question, I'm wondering, were there any employees at Glen Oaks that were exclusively dedicated to the pilot?
Yes, and I had really wanted one of them to come today, but she just had surgery. I think we are remiss that she's not here, because to be able to share that process of what that looks like. So we had two classrooms, complete classrooms, that were dedicated to dual enrollment, because those were the two classrooms and the two teachers that each semester, those dual enrollment options ran through. One was Ms. Cezanne Cowley, and of course, she supported the history and the geography pathway, those two courses, and then Dr. Enoch was the French one and French two. So those were the EBR Glen Oaks High School faculty and staff that handled it from the school site end. And then, of course, you had professors from the BRCC side that did that. So there, the way that they supported the students, that was a daily measure. Though that was supporting the lectures, supporting the activities, and anything that needed to be pushed in in order for students to be supported.
Were there any other supports, like counselors and, you know, about how many?
So before we get to the counselor or other personnel, they were also teamed, those students. So even though you may have had a teacher, teacher teaches six classes, right? So four of those, though, were completely pathway kids. So they kind of moved as a cohort in that case. So you did have some elective teachers as well that like solely served PBF students. And so there is a, there was a counselor working with ninth grade primarily. There is also.
A dean that works primarily.
Was a dean working with, and then there was an instructional specialist working alongside Ms. Mayweather.
Counselor, dean, and instructional specialist.
Yes, ma'am.
And there were others that, that were looking at the electives, is that what you said?
Yes, so for example, all ninth graders in, on the magnet side, do take one specific teacher that handles all of ninth grade, that was Ms. Terrence. Ninth graders who were not in a magnet pathway or who are not considered magnet students, they all took ICT, which is the BR Bytes LSU STEM pathway, and that was their elective, and that was Ms. Efferson. So to answer your question, not only are students in PBF, in the ninth grade academy, all in one area, so are the staff. And so it's better for planning, they all know all of the students. I know Ms. Dyson mentioned that that may not be the capability at every school, but I will tell you that it was a lifesaver for us. Getting to connect with the kids, for every teacher in the ninth grade hallway to connect with all the students, monitor them, know them, see them in between classes, because they're all in the same hallway. They really didn't need to go out of our ninth grade academy hallway or the PBF hallway for anything, except for PE, JRTC, if they chose to do that instead. Any type of a band or arts elective that they were involved in, and the magnet elective, that's it. Everything else happened in our hallway. And again, as I mentioned before, ideally, my office is in the middle of that hallway, so I'm able to monitor very well and watch movement.
So it sounds like there was a lot of focus specifically on these students.
Absolutely.
Specific staff and staff with particular obligations.
Yes, and that's why I actually mentioned that our, moving forward, one of our growth areas is that there needs to be dedicated time for us to meet as a team. And, you know, those teachers, staff members that are involved with PBF, prior to my coming, the master schedule was planned based on content-level planning. And so we, again, this is having to work with your principal and your administration to really support this. Our principal, every Monday morning, does Monday morning motivation, where he takes all of the students into the auditorium, and it's the Monday morning message, there could sometimes be a speaker. It's just getting everyone ready for the week announcements, things like that. So he afforded us, that's about 35 minutes every Monday morning. And so that's the little time that we stole, and he allowed that. Our teachers didn't have to go down there, that was our planning and meeting time. So moving forward, it would be very nice to have a larger-scale PBF planning time. So moving forward, it would be very nice to have a larger scale PBF planning time, especially with two grade levels now, you know, accommodating two grade levels, which is double the teachers. And so, yeah, it's, it was a lot of support, both internally and externally, the COS team, but also partnerships outside of the school that really, that it took to make it work.
The partnerships outside of the school, meaning the, the colleges? The college staff?
The secondary institution, and also partnerships with approved, I care, you know, EBR approved partnerships. I care, Big Buddy.
So what?
City Year.
What kind of roles did they play?
Those were the, when we had boot camp and things like that, where we allowed students to recover work time and coursework. They provide tutorship. For example, French is a very hard area to find a lot of certified tutors in. So some of those people were brought in by the mayor's office and Big Buddy, you know, certified French students.
So Big Buddy did a little tutoring?
A little bit, yes, ma'am.
Yeah, and, and, and these were for 70 students, right?
For the, say that one more time?
Seventy students?
Seventy-seven, yes, ma'am.
Seventy-seven, seventy-seven students. So, okay, okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, moving forward, finally, with, and I, and look, some of these items I specifically requested. So I'm not, you know, we're gonna be here a while, but I admit I brought it on myself. So moving forward, but item B3, Presentation Comprehensive Staffing Model.
So we'll have Ms. Nicola Hall and the HR team come up and present.
Good evening, everyone. Still have a few more hours before morning. My name is Nicola Hall, Chief HR Officer, and I have my awesome team here with me. And what we're gonna focus on, we will be focusing on, are the questions that came in from the board request. And also, Vice President Collins requested for us to present the data. So this is what we're doing right now. So each of my team is gonna come up and present the information. And if you have additional questions, we will definitely take some time to respond or get the information later on for you. All right, ready? Come on, guys.
Good evening. Madam Vice President, members of the board, Dr. Narcisse. We're going to give some clarification to some questions that were brought to us following the May 19 regular board meeting. And our time has been well spent, so we're gonna go through this directly and just give you the answers to your questions. So the first question was, are the parent involvement facilitators and literacy and math coaches flexible positions? And you were referring to the comprehensive staffing model. So the response was, the literacy and math coach positions were Level 1 positions, and they were, were required. And they were required because after meeting with the teams, the teams from instruction, they felt that we needed these two positions for all schools because we were trying to accelerate and intervene with students who needed additional assistance. The parental facilitator, paraprofessional position was a Level 3 position. So this was a flexible position, and leaders were given the opportunity. Yes, ma'am.
I'm sorry. This '21, '22 school year, the positions were what? The parent liaisons?
Para, yes. It's a para position.
So I know going into the next school year, the people been told they need to be pairs. But last school year, they wasn't. I mean, maybe a couple of them.
Okay, so your question, Ms. Collins?
Yes, ma'am. So I guess I'm getting, I need clarity around when you say they, that particular one? I will ask offline, because it involves a whole lot more. It, it involves a lot. Because that's a, what they, I can't imagine they're gonna be tasked to do the same level of work at a $30,000 pay difference. That ain't for you to say, I'm just saying.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
All right, next question.
Good evening, everyone. Next question, can there be a dean in middle schools? And how can you go about adding them to the roster? The answer to that question is yes, an academic dean is available. So when working with school leaders and working through the comprehensive staffing model, we listened and heard their desire and need to re-allocate those dean positions. So the instructional stabilization positions were able to be used for an instructional dean, and that was a change that came about after working with school leaders and being able to structure their campuses appropriately.
Hi, so I've been wanting to get up for so long. How are y'all? So anyway, good evening. I, oh no, I'm fine. Good evening, Dr. Narcisse and Ms. Collins. Congratulations on graduating, that was exciting. And thank you so much. So I wanted to talk a little bit about recruiting and the numbers that you asked for. So our main three universities that we connect with here is Southern University, Southeastern University, and LSU. And then we recruit, depending on where we go in the fall and the spring, to different universities based on our needs. The questions that you asked were, do we recruit from universities? Of course, yes. And then do we have any new hires? And of course, that answer is yes as well. This is some of the data from the past year. So we recruited and hired approximately 91 candidates from the year. That is about the same as the year before. We also need to remember that over the course of that time, recruitment has changed in the sense that after the pandemic, there wasn't as many in the universities as normal. Also, we've noticed that over the course of that time, that the university candidates and students have to complete a year-long residency. So we don't get to hire them like usually at the end of December or in May. We can only hire them usually at the end of May. So that's been a very different scenario for us. Any other questions that you had about that? I think I, I tried to answer that specific question.
Well, remember Dyson.
So can you explain, so what do we need to do to work with the universities or the legislature, whatever it is? What do we need to do to alleviate that problem?
So I, I, I think it's kind of like, I try to think of like the payphone and the cellphone. I don't think things are ever gonna look the same. We're gonna have to move forward. One of the things that I love most about what's happening in our district right now is that we're embracing those changes. We already have great relationships with all the universities. That isn't going to, I mean, that's still the same. The, the thing that has changed the most is that the, the schools are not producing the candidates that they once did. So one of the things that we're doing is we're reaching out to the Career Services Department, and we're reaching out to other colleges, because alt certification is going to be a very big change that we're gonna see. We're already seeing it. Dr. Robinson already talked about it. The pedagogy is going to have to look different for our new candidates. So we're gonna continue reaching out to the universities, but we're gonna have to change what we do and how we do it. You can't continue to do the same thing over and over.
But what are you saying about, like, we used to could hire a mid-year, and they could do their service work, or their hours they could earn in our schools?
Well, so.
For the spring semester?
It's a year-long residency. And that's qualified or required by the state of Louisiana. So we don't have any ability to change that. The state legislature is working on things. But I would say that for East Baton Rouge Parish, we have gone from having zero candidates in our schools from Southeastern. Now we have 15 to 20.
And it's an excellent program.
We have had that the same at LSU. We have, every semester, we grow every year. And we have now almost 100 new candidates in our schools in the fall. So it is continuing to grow, but it's gonna have to look different. And, and when I say look different, we're gonna have to get those candidates from other places than the College of Education. And so we already have a pre-service, we already start with pre-service. We've already moved that from pre-service at BRCC, where we have kids that meet with us every Thursday in Empower Hour. We've grown that. And some of these kids that are on this list are kids that we have recruited and worked with over the course of three years.
Well, thank you for all your hard work. I know it's, it's a, a, a part of you that you would want to excel in this, and I really appreciate the work.
One thing I want to say too, before I leave, is one of the things that recruitment has worked really hard, and the pandemic has shown that. And Dr. Narcisse says this all the time, it takes a village. We have learned through this that we cannot just recruit teachers. We have to recruit bus operators, we have to recruit child nutrition. We have to continue, and the, my favorite thing, and this is my 33rd year in East Baton Rouge Parish school system. I started here as a student teacher. I love this district, I love this community. We do what we do for the kids that we service. That is ultimate, and that is most important. And one of the things that we have seen over the course of this time is that our bus operators have master's degrees. Our child nutrition workers have master's degree. We have to engage those and move them, and Allison's gonna talk about it, but our parent-to-teacher educator program. We have so many people in this school system that are talented and can move to different levels. And I love that East Baton Rouge Parish offers different varieties of pathways, not just for our students, but also for our employees. We have so many opportunities that they can move to different areas. We have to stay focused on that. Spring fling was April the 2nd. It was an incredible day, I don't know if anybody got to come, but it was the first time that we did a recruitment event for everyone in our district. Not just for teachers, but for every single person that wanted to be part of our school system. We're gonna continue to do more of that, because we have candidates within our school system. And also on this list, I'd just like to say, there were five of them that were, they were from our school system. We have a grow our own program in the high schools. We're doing all the right things. We just have to recruit 365 days a year, not 24 hours a day, because you gotta sleep a little, but we can do it. So any other questions?
Nope.
Thank you all so much.
Thank you.
Before we transition to the next question, because, it's okay. We just want to make sure that I showcase the great work that my team is doing, and do take a village to actually do the work. So Allison is going to just give you a quick synopsis, pretty quick, about the grow our own program, so you have a better understanding of the work that we're doing from a recruitment and retention standpoint, to ensure that we're, you know, slow in the leak at the same time, but attracting talented, qualified, certified teachers.
Thank you. Good evening, Vice President Collins. I'm gonna do it, I can do it. Board members, Dr. Narcisse, she told me to be quick five times. I got it, okay. So, the Unlock Your Potential program, we are so excited about it. It's our educator, educator pathway. It's for all EBR employees that are degreed. All employees, that's bus operators, that's clerks, that's everybody. And what it does, it removes a lot of barriers that we have out there. Financial barriers, success barriers, access barriers. It's for those who are dedicated to teaching, and we want to provide that resource for them. So what we provide, I can be quick. We have free practice prep, we have accountability partners that lead them along the way. We also have free study materials. And then they have a scholarship that they attain for free enrollment into our district's alt cert program, Teach Baton Rouge. So with that, just a quick update, we're in the middle of Cohort 1, and we have 15 participants that at the end of the summer will be eligible to be classroom teachers. And these cohorts will be running throughout the year. So we're excited to provide those opportunities. And one more thing, not only are we recruiting and attaining and training, where we know the importance of, what, retaining. And with that, we have all types of programs that we're making sure that we continue to push out, our recognition programs for classified employees, new teachers, mentor teachers, transportation, child nutrition. And I do want to say thank you all so much for those who've had an opportunity to attend those celebrations and those recognition programs. Also, we just know the importance of making sure that employees know that they feel valued, and they are contributing to the success of this school district. And the success of this school district, of course, lies in our children and helping them. So thank you again. We're also working to enhance our wellness programs. We love working with you all with those things. Mentoring for all, not just teachers, mentoring for all, and also our, building our leadership pipelines.
Okay, this is my slide. Which, what was any of the information in the CGSS audit applied to the process? Which parts? So in the last presentation, I kind of went into detail, so I'm just gonna do a quick synopsis in the brief some time. We talked about building collaborative relationships with all stakeholders. I, Nicola Hall, not as Chief of HR. I believe that the only way to bring forth sustainable change is to lock arms with other people and to work together. And when that was highlighted in the, the results from the audit, it makes me excited to go back to my team and say, hey, this supports what we need to do, and we have come a long way with collaborative partnership. We developed basic HR metrics, and we cannot wait for Ms. Amy, if she's back there, to start showcasing that information on our website, so people know exactly what we want to do, because we love to celebrate great things, even though when things go bad, we acknowledge it, and we learn, and we grow. But we also want to celebrate really awesome things, and data makes sense, right? And also turnover rates. I honestly believe, and I know I get quoted a lot about that, and I do believe that happy employees do stay around. So I wanted to make sure that for our turnover rates in terms of retention, that my HR supervisors are taking the initiative. When someone's about to leave, if I get wind of it, I want them to pick up the phone and call to find out what's happening, so we could address it quickly before we lose a math teacher or a science teacher, which is so hard to fill. And we're addressing those turnover rates. And lastly, develop a comprehensive SOP, which is standard operating procedure. There is a link in there that tells, it's a wealth of information. It's a good, nice Sunday morning read with some coffee, if you like to get that, you know, dive deep into something like that. But the information is there, it's very transparent. If you have any questions or concerns, please reach out to me, and I could gladly, gladly expand on it.
All right, next question, and I think this came from Ms. Dyson, I think. This was regarding non-budgeted requests. So principals were, were provided opportunities to request positions that were not initially allocated to their schools in the comprehensive staffing model. So question number one, how many requests were made? And principals were actually allowed to collaborate with their executive directors to make these requests through our frontline system. So how many requests were made? 170 requests were made, 35 were approved, 125 were denied, and there were 20 blank forms in the system. And also, we gave you a listing of the schools that actually put in requests, non-budgeted requests. Oh, this is me too. Okay, why was the staffing model introduced so late? During the, during the current school year that we're in, Human Resources initiated this process on April 28th and continued through May 13th. And I'm just gonna say that we took into consideration that spring break was so late, and then we were working around the testing window for the district. But we did receive some feedback from school leaders and from the public about presenting the comprehensive staffing model as late as it was. And for the future, when we're pushing out something of this magnitude, we will take that into consideration so that people will have more time to digest something of this magnitude. so that people will have more time to digest something of this magnitude. Any questions? And these are just some additional links if you need some more information.
Hello again. We are back to a question about deans. So the question was, is there a way to review the comprehensive staffing model to add them as an extra position for middle or high school campuses? And the answer to that is yes, as it was previously. After reviewing and meeting and speaking with school leaders, executive directors, the comprehensive staffing model was amended so that school leaders have the opportunity to use their instructional stabilization positions to reallocate that dean back to their campus. But I'll do it if you want. Sorry. Okay. All right, the next question is, how are principals able to get their impacted staff back if their enrollment numbers have changed? So we have a plan for that. Right now, principals are looking at the J-Campus projections. The rollover has not happened so that they have student numbers that are a little more accurate. But there is a 10-day count after the first day of school. And at that time, we will look at where there are a larger number of students, a higher concentration of students or a lower concentration of students in case we need to make any changes. And we also will have quarterly staffing reviews as a Human Resources Department with the school leaders, the executive director, to make sure that we don't have staffing holes on our campuses and jobs and positions are filled and students are being adequately served.
So will the deadline on the transfer list be lifted?
The deadline was extended.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
And we're still working. If there are any school leaders or staff who has concern, because once again, we're customer service. We want to make sure that folks understand. You could always call, email, text, or send a SOS signal. And I always respond, my staff always respond. And we help as much as we can and provide guidance along the way. So just encourage people to reach out to us so we can assist along the way.
Oh, I'm sorry. Board member Dyson.
Yes. So this, my question about the principals being able to get their impacted staff back, I mean, those very people that were part of their team. So it says within a certain time period. So you mentioned the October 1 count. And, but if you see that it's happening before that and that the numbers for J-Campus enrollment, you know, then we can go ahead and get them back.
So let me just, let me just clarify a couple of things that never happened in the past and we were trying to do something different.
Right.
Is that customer service piece and that support, right? Because things change very frequently. We're still waiting for folks to retire, right? There's still that information coming through. So we, it's very fluid, it's a moving target. But we are committed as a team to make sure that we are addressing every concerns that comes across our desk. And we do understand that we do have a passionate group of employees. And we love passion because we are passionate about the work that we do. And we're here to help and assist as much as possible. So if the numbers come through, the first rollover comes through, we look at that again. What was different in the past between now and then is that now we're having quarterly review. We want folks to be normalized, right, with that process? Where we're just not doing a staffing conversation in April or May. We want to do this quarterly so folks understand the importance of not only maintaining your staff, but also looking at certification, looking at performance evaluation and all that good stuff that goes with it.
So, but you're saying October 1 count comes through, and they've already working somewhere else, but they're going to be able to pull out of the somewhere else to go back home?
So, no, the point is, we have the rollover that happens. When is the rollover? July? July 1st is the rollover. And then the first day of school, 10 days from the first day of school, we have a 10-day count that we looked into, we always look into. And then the quarterly review. And the staffing supervisor, I should respectfully say, my HR supervisors are committed to making sure that they have an ongoing conversations with school leaders because we want to make sure that they understand that we're supporting them. Things change, things happen. And we have to be able to ready, to be ready to facilitate those conversations.
So back again, do they get to go home?
If they're, if, if they're.
If they're wanted, the principal wants them, they want to go back?
If they already moved, that's a conversation that the principal to building principals would have to have if that's a, if that ever happened.
Okay, so that was my question. Impacted staff back if their enrollment numbers grew?
Yes, and we won't know that until the rollover, until the different scenarios happen. But we're committed to, you know, working with folks.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And a question came in, please send the staffing rosters for school year 2223 for all EBR schools. And if you click on the link, which I'm not going to do unless you guys need me to do that. And it's accessible to anyone who accesses. You could definitely see all the school rosters within the school, within EBR school district.
The question came in, how if at all were transfer requests incorporated into the staffing model? Please provide a list of employees requesting transfers. Who they, who are they and what was the process? The process for transfers was the same as it always is in the district. We have a transfer period where employees can actually go into the portal. I think we did it through Survey Monkey. They can apply for a transfer. It's open for a month. They actually go in, apply for a transfer. And then we sent out a notification from the Office of Human Resources telling them that they've been provisionally approved for a transfer. And a transfer is simply, if you get a transfer, you're looking for a new home. But if you don't get a new position, you simply go back to your old position, first of all. So I would just like to tell you that this year, with us having impacted employees, an impacted employee, we owe them a position. So when we started looking at staffing, we made sure that the impacted employees were placed first. Then we looked at interim employees that were certificated, that we were, that were eligible for continued employment. Then we looked at new hires and transfers. Okay? And we did reopen the, the time period for transfers because principals reached out to Ms. Hall as far as needing more time and employees also. Any questions?
Oh, I'm sorry. I was looking at the backup material and left the screen.
I think Jill's already had her question.
Okay, so then board member Goday.
I'm sorry. It's been a long night. I'm sorry.
Okay.
Yes. I see the question here is, provide a list of employees requesting transfers. Is that getting to the point where that is overstepping our bounds as a board getting into personnel issues?
Sorry about that. I don't believe that, I don't believe that crosses the line, Mr. Goday. Generally, the law anticipates situations that are personnel-related in terms of personal actions, actions that the parties probably didn't anticipate. You know, weren't voluntary, involuntary employment actions, I think is what law anticipates. So I think we're fine there.
Okay, thank you.
So this is the last question, or I should say itemized question. Questions, and this came from Vice President Madam Collins. And we're going to attempt, because sometimes what was sent to us, sometimes we try to interpret what you're requesting. So if this is not what you're looking for, just let us know and we'll go back and tweak it.
I appreciate it. And I acknowledge that you were trying to schedule a meeting before now, but time didn't permit.
No worries.
Thank you.
All right. So Ms. Wilson and I will attempt to address those. So the first question is an itemized number of staff per staff type and school site. So there is a humongous.
So the second link on this document will provide you an itemized list of staff at each school site and a comparison from 2122 with the projections for 2223.
Is someone trying to open?
While we're trying to open that, I'll keep going. The next bullet was school type and categorizing our schools, traditional Montessori. So we did categorize our schools. And we have our traditional schools. We do have two Montessori schools. We now have Focus Choice schools. We have schools with magnet programs or magnet programs, dedicated magnet. And we have alternative program schools. So what we did is put together a spreadsheet to address the other bullets that were issued that categorized the schools and that information. So we hope that it makes it a lot easier for you to see and navigate. So the total number of students enrolled is listed there. And unfortunately, we can't pull the link up right now for the spreadsheet. But you'll see the total number of students enrolled. And right next to that is the projection for the 2223 school year. You will also see the number of certified staff on the campus and the number of new positions that have been added to the site. The last bullet, the number of certified full-time staff, that information is provided. And we added a link to that because we were able to compile all of that information. So that link was added today. So hopefully that's on your copy. If it's not, we'll update it. And then, we just want to preference that the link, which is the fourth link for the certified full-time staff is for 2122. We do not have 2223 as yet because we're at the tail end of staffing. So once we have that, we will definitely add this. All right. And then the last bullet that we need to address is the total number of new positions brought to the board for approval. So that is going to happen in the next presentation that Ms. Hall will be a part of. So that really couldn't be addressed at this moment.
Okay.
All right. Any questions?
No. And I'll follow up once I get a chance to dig deep. And I'm going to let the superintendent chair the meeting while I take a quick restroom break.
Are you letting us out Superintendent Narcisse?
No.
And sing.
Any more questions from the board? All right, then we'll move on to the next item. We will now have a compensation study presentation. We'll ask our Chief of HR to come up with the SSA consultants who've done the compensation study.
Oh, God, my glasses all broken. Good evening, once again. I'm going to be up here for a few times. So I am excited about this, super, super excited about this. It's another project that was successfully completed. So before we, I turn it over to the SSA team, I just want to make sure I provide an opportunity to explain what is the purpose of doing the compensation study to provide some perspective. We can all agree that the most valuable resource and greatest assets are employees. A compensation study is an important tool used in an organization to maintain competitive advantage. And the four that are listed there, recruiting and retaining top-tier talent, improving employee morale, improving organization culture, creating and maintaining a healthy budget. Important to note, because there's so much passion behind everything that we've been doing. So I want to make sure that I go on record to state that no one is losing their job because of this process. This is long overdue. No salaries will be affected. Employees will be reassigned to the correct board-approved job descriptions based on their qualifications and experiences. I just want to make sure that I state that. And just a quick background of the SSA team. SSA consultants have, has worked extensively with school districts across Louisiana and is currently collecting compensation data for other districts in the Baton Rouge region. In addition, SSA consultants utilize a national database for compensation studies, which allows market comparison by city, parish, county, and our region. Just want to give a quick overview of what happened during this process. And if I'm speaking too fastly.
I have a question from Board Member Jackson.
Yes, yes, ma'am. Would you back up just a second?
Sure.
That, was it the third one? Oh, shoot, where is it? About employees will be, okay. Important to note, no one is losing their job. No salaries will be affected. Employees will be reassigned to correct board-approved job descriptions based on their qualifications and experiences. What does that mean, be reassigned?
So tonight, one of the, the purpose of the compensation study was to review some job descriptions. We do have about 5,000 job descriptions and about 12,000 in our system. We do have a new system that's coming up that we have paid a wealth of money investment. And we want to make sure that the information that's going into that system is correct. In addition to, we do have employees that are currently in positions that are not board-approved. And through this process, we're going to be able to align them with the correct board-approved jobs and also align with the board-approved salary schedule. So I know I said a mouthful.
When is that going to happen?
That's going to take about two to three months after this. Because what's going to happen, I need to look at, my team and I will need to look at the remaining 2,800 employees who are non-instructional and make sure that I'm looking at each individual going down the list and make sure that Nicola is assigned to a approved job description, board-approved job description, along with the salary schedule. It has to be aligned because it's, right now, it's dysfunctional. That's the best word I could use. It creates some level of dysfunction. And the team will explain exactly and get more into details about that. But this is a great opportunity for us to correct some past issues.
So for now, some people may have a certain job description and their job descriptions only will be changed, right?
Correct. So they're not losing their jobs. They're not losing any monies. Once you guys, and I say you guys, meaning the board, approve, because one thing you will know about me eventually, that I don't do gray. It's either black or white. And I do not want to have to come and account for, Ms. Hall, why was XYZ was in a position that was never board-approved, right? So I'm making sure that I'm doing due diligence to assure that folks who are in positions are aligned with a board-approved job descriptions and that my team is not making up jobs and aligning people to it because of whatever reason.
So there's no movement right now. But in about three months, there's going to be some movement where people will be moved to different positions?
Just their, just their job titles.
Just their job titles.
Correct, correct. So let me give you a perfect example. And I'm sorry, I'm getting ahead of the game here. There's a good example right now, like steno clerks, right? I don't even know what a steno is. But I do know what a clerk is supposed to be doing. So those are the type of things that will.
So if I could just help, help as Nicola's trying to, Ms. Hall's trying to clarify. In our current job descriptions, you have job descriptions that are outdated.
Right.
They do not match up. They have titles, but they're, what their roles are do not match up with what they should be actually doing. This has been historical because we haven't done a compensation study in this school system for about 10 to 15 years. I know the SSA consultant will come up. Usually, you do a compensation study every three years to ensure that there is alignment. So there are job descriptions, the way they are written, they may have, I don't know, finance and nutrition when it's a nutrition person. But the way that they're written qualifies them to get a certain pay. So what the, what, you will hear this from the consultants. What they're working to do is to clean all of that. So we have to, the board will have to eliminate titles, accept new titles with appropriate job descriptions that will help the alignment to current positions for jobs. And this has been, unfortunately, because the system has not, we haven't done a good maintenance approach to ensuring we're up to date over time. That has caused the challenge that you have. And so what the HR team has been doing has been working to clean it up. So each job is aligned to a budget line. So we're making sure. So we're making sure that we're paying the appropriate costs of what that is. And the consultants will come up to do that. So as you see these job descriptions, you'll see the various categories. And the reason I had to bring it to you in a bulk is because it's eliminating certain jobs. They had to rewrite them for new jobs for the appropriateness. And then there is, there's three categories that you'll see in that. And you can ask more as the consultant comes up.
Yeah, I just want to be perfectly clear on this line right here because of the way it's written, that people are not moving.
No.
No, where it's aligning their job description to their, the appropriate job description to what they're actually doing in their job. That's what's happening.
Right. We're just, yes, okay.
That's correct.
Correct.
Just want to be perfectly clear.
No, and I understand that. And this is why I wanted to make sure that I kept the three bullets as the way they are. And also to help with performance review, right? We talked about accountability, you know, if a person is only supposed to be doing something and it's antiquated 20 years ago and you're asking them to do things now. There's a debate, right? And progressive discipline and school leaders need additional support. So this is kind of what this all ties up.
Because the system has not cleaned itself, it has caused us more dollars to spend, which has been, you know, as the board knows, their, your job is to ensure that we're using our dollars specifically. So I, we do want to bring up the consultants.
So I'm just gonna go straight to them.
Thank you.
Sorry, guys. If anything else comes up, just.
Real quick while they coming up, that this spreadsheet here link, it's telling me I don't have access. So whatever y'all need to do, maybe just change the privacy setting or whatever. I don't know.
Okay, we'll take a look at it. Okay.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Good evening. You all are amazing, amazingly dedicated public servants to be here this late. So we have a compact presentation, but we are happy to answer any questions that you have. I'm here with my associate, Cody Socié. Cody's actually the project manager and he's gonna talk a bit about the methodology. I do want to say a couple of words in introduction. And I'm really trying to balance this. You have a system that has not been maintained well. As the superintendent said, you haven't really had a comprehensive study staff that, you know, projects maybe 10 or 15 years. Some adjustments have been made in different areas. But our ability to do this study is completely dependent upon you having clean data, clean job descriptions, so that we're matching apples to apples to the districts and databases and so on and so forth. And we jumped into this study very willingly with willing partners in your HR team only for us all to figure out that we had wet spaghetti that we were trying to deal with. And when I'm telling you, we, we deal with public organizations. I don't know how many compensation studies we have going on at any one point in time. They all have issues, some much worse than others. But we are used to it taking HR people a year or almost a year to clean up just job descriptions and basic information that we need. And I think you didn't sleep for a few weeks, but you got it done. And they still look good, even though literally I think they were working around the clock. I just can't thank them enough because it's always the consultant's fault. And nobody threw us under the bus and they just worked diligently. The reality is that you have a lot of opportunities for improvement. I think Ms. Hall touched on a few of them. But I think getting through this study and then you all going through the job descriptions and helping them clean, clean and weed that out is gonna be an amazing process. I don't think you can administer a pay plan effectively without that. I think, I'm not sure how people were doing it. They were probably doing some manual work and spreadsheets. You're getting a brand-new, you know, enterprise-wide system. And so to be able to have clean data in that is gonna be very important. But let me now turn it over to my associate, Cody, to just say a few things about our methodology.
Thank you, Christelle. You just took half what I was gonna say anyways. Perfect. So as Christelle mentioned, the most important thing is having clean job descriptions. The HR team did a wonderful job working as we were going through the study, updating position descriptions, letting us know once they had been revised. And then once they were revised, we were then able to provide market valuations for each of the positions. So basically what we did is we took an approach, a dual-track approach for this study. We had school-based positions, which were teachers, principals, librarians, counselors, anything that was housed directly in a school. And then we had non-school-based positions, which you would consider like central office, support staff, HR, IT, anything that would fit into that group that wasn't housed in, directly in a school. So for school-based positions, we gathered data from 10 other different school districts in this state and then directly compared each of those positions to their equivalent in those school districts. For the non-school-based positions, which also exist in private industry and public industry as well, we used a database, which we were then allowed to regionalize to the Baton Rouge region. So we were dealing with specifically this area's dataset, not Washington DC or New York. And so that is the dataset that we used for the non-school-based positions. Of that, so 78% were, so this is the total employee costs for the current payroll. 78% of your, your current payroll is school-based employees. 22% is the non-school-based employees. So for our study, we looked at a total of about 200 different positions for the benchmarking purposes. Of those 200 positions, we wanted to make sure we were looking at a diverse group of, of, of types of positions as well. So we wanted everyone from the bottom to the top. And we wanted people in all different walks or industries. So we wanted people from HR, we wanted positions from HR, we wanted positions from IT, child nutrition, we wanted positions from, yes, sir.
Cody, I just want to make sure we provide the public clarity. So school-based means money going to the schools, correct?
Yes.
And non-school-based means central office.
Central office, services, yes. So the school base would be directly housed within a school.
So if we're reading this graph, 78% of costs and dollars are going.
For your employees. Payroll and payroll to your employees. 78% of your payroll is based in schools. So for our benchmarking purposes, like I just said, we wanted to make sure that of those 200 positions, we had all different walks of life, all different levels, from the bottom all the way to the top. That way, at the end, whenever we took an aggregate of these 200 positions, we could feel fairly confident that we had a representative group across the organization and that we were being fair to all, all different groups. So the 10 districts that we used in the comparative cohort, we had Ascension Parish, Livingston Parish, West Baton Rouge, Zachary Central, Lafayette, Calcasieu, Alexandria, East Feliciano and NOLA Public Schools. Basically, what we did is we drew a circle around Baton Rouge and we said, who do you touch? And then outside of that, we said, what are the other major metropolitan areas in Louisiana? We also got some data from Cato, but it wasn't as complete. So we didn't include them in, in this 10, but we do have that as well. But these are the 10 primary comparisons for, that we, school districts that we gathered data for, for the school-based positions. So this is the preliminary findings. On average, positions are approximately 8% below market comparable rates of pay. 8% for not having done a compensation study in 10 years or, you know, however long it's been. Surprisingly, not, not that bad overall. And that is, and once again, that's an aggregate of these 200 positions. Some were farther below, some were less below. But having taken a good benchmarking approach and having a representative sample, on average, 8% below market rate. And then the base pay, especially for teachers, you know, your frontline teachers, is on, on the minimum side, lower than some of your direct competitors that are in your direct vicinity. So those are some two big takeaways in our methodology behind that. And I'm gonna throw it back to Christelle to kind of walk through some of the implications of that.
Thank you. Let me make one other comment. Cody talked about the, the two groups and comparisons. I just want to make sure we're clear. The school-based positions were compared to other school districts that are close by for the most part because that's your competition. So you're looking for market competition, market comparable rates, right? But when you go out to find, to find an accountant, you're not just competing with school districts. So that's where we went to the national database. Cody's able, and his team are able to regionalize that because you're competing with Lamar and Entergy and Pinnacle Polymers and ExxonMobil. So I would echo what he said, that 8%, I held my breath. 8% is not bad. So when we look at your really close regional competitors, and we, we took teachers as the example to pull through all of this, but you're gonna have somewhat the same situation in principals and, and other school-based positions. This is an amazing slide to me because it's looking at your entry-level pay, the minimum of the scale. And Ascension, who's right down the road, is paying people almost $50,000 to come to work there. So if I'm getting out of school with an education degree and I want to serve as a teacher and I just look at this information, which is published information, we, we don't measure up. At $46,300, Livingston is just a little bit higher than us at that entry level. But Zachary Central, Ascension, and I believe West Baton Rouge passed a millage or some sort of tax recently. And so all of their positions have gone up as a result. When we look at the maximum of the range, so once I get in here, if I'm gonna stay through my career, what does that look like? The board has made adjustments over the years. So actually, you look really good once somebody hits 20 years. And what happens is you, you begin to have Proposition 3 money kick in. But I will tell you, your published salary scale says that you're only paying $55,300. And so I've communicated that to every single person I can grab in the hallway to say, I don't know why that is, but it's misleading. And so if somebody just goes online, they're gonna think that you're, you're capping them lower than everybody else. It's interesting, however, that Ascension of the people who are there has the highest minimum and the highest maximum. And so they're gonna, they're gonna continue to move people through their steps throughout their career and retain them. When you look at the, the two together, you can see that Proposition 3 money does look nice. And so after somebody has been here for 20 years, they can get $1,000 bonus a year for the next 20 years. So if you want to work for 40 years, you can earn $75,000 as a teacher. Now, obviously, there are other stipends that are involved with certifications, master's degrees, et cetera, et cetera. That's gonna be true in all districts. So we, we only concentrated on base pay because that is, that's the apples-to-apples comparison. I think, speaking for the superintendent, in most other areas where you served, the urban school districts have really been the place to teach because their salary scales are usually higher. We put in St. Charles Parish because they're a very wealthy parish due to their industry base. But also looked at Bossier, Jefferson, Cato compared to East Baton Rouge. And you can see the urban districts just are not keeping pace with the suburban districts. And surprisingly, Jefferson, starting salary is even lower than ours. And I think they may even be the largest school district in the state. But we're not losing people to Cato or Bossier usually. We're not competing with those areas. So this is important and interesting, but I think it's, it's a plight across the state. So in this recommendation of moving your, your pay scale, all your pay ranges up 8%, this would not include the superintendent. This would not include any of your chiefs or executive directors, attorney, and board members. We wanted to make that very clear because we had a lot of questions about that. And I think that oftentimes, when we do a salary study for a public organization like a school system, people think, oh, the people at the top are gonna get a whole lot of money. But in reality, they're, they're not, not in the recommendation, not part of this. So I think that, you know, this board in particular and the superintendent, we, we've talked with people during this study, gone back and looked at comments that were made when we were first engaged. And you want to be a market leader. That's part of the reason why you did the study. So you, you ought to be considered the best place to teach in the area, in the region. But in order to do that, you have to have salaries that are comparable to the competition. And so we, we absolutely think running a compensation study every three years and monitoring what those competitors are doing is gonna be important. I think if you all are able to do this, that you will find surrounding districts figuring out how to move, move and try and keep the distance ahead of you. But we, we think as soon as you could possibly do it, to make that move, to make especially that entry level more attractive, which really worries us. And if you can't do it until the 2324 school year, that's fine. You can go ahead and figure out the, the underpinnings financially. But we also think that you need to keep going. So if you can go up the equivalent of 10% over this payroll and then after that go to 12%, that way you'll bridge. What we see is becoming a very, very competitive market. We're talking with the state. The governor had a task force on teacher recruitment and retention. We have all their data. We're talking about how we can help them in the next year in the governor's last session, which is a fiscal session, for any proposals that might be made. We, we are seeing what other states are doing and what they're doing in progressive school districts. And they have all sorts of incentives, but the reality is their base pay holds against the competition. So until you have that, you know, and, and people feel that, you know, it's a legitimate sort of place that I can start my career. I just didn't get a bump here or whatever. I think, I think we may have issues. So that, that is the recommendation. And we asked the CFO what, and the superintendent, what an 8% increase in pay would cost. And that would be an additional approximately $27 million per year in year one. So you have a large payroll, as you saw in the pie chart that, that Cody showed you. The interesting, and, and I will just tell you, surprising to me was how much of your money is being spent at the school-based level. So I think there's a public perception that your central office is so stuffed with people that they're crawling all over one another. And that may be true, but that's not where the money is going. It's not, your people are not there. Your people are out in the classrooms doing their jobs. And so I think, you know, that's an investment in your programmatic mission. I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have or go back over any information. So thank you.
Board Member Dyson.
Oh, sorry. I just want to make sure the recommendation's clear to the board based on what the compensation consultants are saying. So the goal, based on the recommendation, in order for us to be at market value, would be at 8%. And then over the three years, we'd move to 12%, which would make us the leading in the entire state, I'm assuming, for attracting teachers. So we would do that over a three-year time, 8% in '23, '24, 10% the following year, then 12% the next year. The question would be is, I do know with how teachers, yeah, how, how things are going right now, how do we consider a, you know, what we would do for, for this upcoming year? And there's a lot of different ways we can, to do that, to at least compensate as we plan for that big jump.
Board Member Dyson.
Yes. Thank you so much for all of this work. And I very much appreciate the effort and the speed of which you and our HR team worked together to get this done for us. Because I did have a real sense of urgency in the ask. I am very pleased to, you know, see this come. I am very pleased to, you know, see this coming. I am concerned that we're going to wait till the 2023, 2024 school year, so we've got to get our teachers and morale and all of those things for a whole nother school year prior to implementation of this. And so I am definitely asking, when can we go ahead, for one thing, and approve, approve that we're going to be doing this? Would it have to wait all the way until next year's budget time? Or could we approve this intention? How's that going to work?
I think the question that the board would have to examine is how do you accomplish the increase? And I think that's something the consultants have spoken with board members individually and in groups about. There are a number of ways. I don't want to throw things out and, you know, create items, but I just seem to like to speak to it.
Yeah, so in the meetings that we had, we believe that we can, in a year out, because we have a lot of moving pieces going on, there's revenue that we're having coming in, there's all these moving parts that we can get to the 8% in '23, '24, and then '10, '12. The challenge to do it right now is it's very complex because there's a lot of different revenues and scales and a lot of things. So as the consultant has, you know, shared with us, you know, you're talking about a percentage increase across the board, and so there's a lot of complexity in that. What my recommendation would be to the board is give us an opportunity to go back with our budget team and look at for this year to do another type of stipend or at least give a recommendation to the board on what we could do this year as we prepare for the whole shift for '23, '24.
So yes, that is my ask, is that we consider when we can go ahead and approve this so they know that it's an approved board item, you know, contingent on us finding the funding, of course, but then the other thing I was going to ask is, hopefully, we can right away find a way to do an additional stipend or stipends during next school year, and also get that approved so that they know that they can count on it come July, August, when they return.
Yeah, so I would agree. I would say give myself an opportunity with the team to go back and give you some options for the year, and then we'd be able to do that at least for this year and then go into '23, '24 and talk about the, you know, the 8% because it's much more complex. You know, I know they're giving you a simple format, but we need to, there's a lot of moving pieces that we have to make sure that happen, so we would not recommend trying to do a overall percentage this upcoming year, especially with our current budget.
I completely get that. It's a big system and a lot of moving parts, but yeah, the sooner we can go ahead and approve a stipend for the coming year and get one at least on the approved list, that would be great. Thank you.
I will make one comment. In talking with some of your colleagues, your neighboring superintendents, either asking them for their data or talking in focus groups about teacher recruitment and retention, I will tell you that you are absolutely correct. Whenever you get your numbers together and any move that the board can make sooner rather than later, some of the superintendents are getting people to commit to their contracts earlier than I've ever imagined that that would happen, and they're trying to lock in they're very good people. So if they know there are other options out there, I think, you know, you really, you want to get that to them sooner rather than later, certainly with good numbers to back it up, but I do think that's part of the competition right now.
Excellent.
So some staff who have the same position are not being paid proportionate to their time of service. So for example, some new principals with very limited or very little, excuse me, previous principal experience are making more money than principals who've been principals for nine, 12 years. Has your compensation study explored that type of?
That is probably an individual situation. We explore trying to keep our clients from making decisions that create that kind of compression. So for example, to knee-jerk and say, well, let's find some money and just do, you know, people that we're hiring right now, well, what about the people that they've been hiring over the past few months? Or what about someone who's a more tenured principal or teacher, to your example, board member Collins? And those things happen. I don't think your HR team will be able to readjust. So best practice is you don't cut people's pay. If you made the mistake of putting someone in a position and they're earning a little more money than they should, then we just put a big red circle around them and say, okay, you need to catch up with yourself. But the reality is sometimes you do find those anomalies, and until they begin to get the job descriptions sort of right-sized and consistent, when you're told that you have 5,000 job descriptions and you only have about 6,000 employees, just think about any other organizations. So if you have a job description for nurses, you're going to have hundreds of people in a hospital who are in that same job description. Now, there may be addendums to that and specializations and, you know, you get here on the salary scale, but the reality is the basic job description is going to be the same. You don't have enough examples like that, and I realize that, you know, you do have some four- and five-person departments in central office where there is specialization, and so you wouldn't expect it, but you wouldn't expect as many as you have. And so I think when the staff starts peeling all that away, what you're talking about is going to become very obvious and easier to correct.
So because, so I'm speaking from reviewing what was released by a constituent from a public records request.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? And so in this instance, what I'm trying to convey is that it's not a matter of, which I get what you're saying, and that's a valid point, but the concern is not about mixed-match positions, salaries, et cetera. These are people with the same title.
Mm-hmm.
And principal is just one example.
Right, right.
And so then perhaps maybe one thing we might be able to manage financially in the immediacy is right-sizing principals and other obvious positions that, or excuse me, because it's not a position problem, it's a tenure problem, or it's a not compensating people for the amount of time they've put in problem.
Mm-hmm.
And so then perhaps at the very least, we could look at the principal position and the other positions we've become aware of, and right-size folks who've been dealing with us for as long as they've been dealing with us, not to take away from principals who just started, but at least, at the very least, get the principals that's been here for a decade and being a principal for a decade to make as much as the one that just started.
Yeah.
This year.
And I will tell you, that's very demotivating, obviously, in an organization. The interesting point is that your policies are very clear, because I think I've asked Ms. Hall three times.
Okay.
Would you ever consider bringing somebody in above the minimum? And when the answer is no, 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 then it should have been no, and so you would never have that problem.
So can I ask a question to clarify, Vice President Collins? I hear what you're saying, just want, in the process, as we get to increasing salaries, we're going to be correcting salary scales, correct? And in those salary scale corrections, that, will that help right-size principals who have been either underpaid or these individual type of, I'll say, deals that have been done? Will that correct that?
I believe your HR team is getting ready to look individually at every single employee. They just need to clear out some of the clutter in order to do that.
So historically, to your point, Vice President Collins, this has not been a new practice, there has been different pay.
Yeah, I didn't mean it as an indication of this current administration. I'm just saying.
Yeah, so I just wanted to clarify that this process that they will go through, even before we get to the 8%, while we're, they will make sure that they're right-sizing salaries of those who have not caught up, because it will be on a scale. And if you are, if you came in where you have been, you know, off that scale, then your pay would not decrease, because you can't decrease, but you could be redlined. And at least in the places where I come from, where you want, sometimes you would incentivize leaders more, you wouldn't do anything to their base salary, you would just give them like a bonus or something like that. What has happened in our processes is that we have turned the bonus into the actual salary. So, and so there's a whole lot of movement in that, you know, in terms of performance pay and those things. So this will help to clean that, but there's a lot of moving things the HR team must do to, you know, identify what those are, look at the scale, et cetera, et cetera. So I know we're simplifying it for you, but the problem you're talking about will be solved by the time we get to the 8%, and those folks who are off that scale will be identified, and then discussion can have accordingly.
Thank you.
Want to come to the mic?
Bill, you need to come to the mic. Bill, Bill, you need to come to the mic. You got to speak from the mic.
My name is Bill Scott, okay? I work for her. Not really. But I did start the company 50 years ago. Things have changed a lot. The competition for good people today is like nothing we've ever seen, and there's a shortage. The competition is going to come after your people. That's what they're going to do. And they're going to come, people at the bottom level or the middle level, they're coming after the best you've got. And if you don't understand the need to be least competitive in what you are paying people, you got no chance. And what happens is if you wait too long, you're going to look up one day and some of your best people are gone, you know? And that's where we don't, we don't talk about that often, but we should because that's a big part of the world that we live in today. It's not universal. I mean, it is universal, it's not to schools or public sector, it's just generally everywhere. So I just want to make that point, just the realization what the real cost is of not doing it.
Thank you.
I might just add one other item, Vice President Collins, to your point about principals. There's new research that the Louisiana Legislative Auditor just put out, a few important points in it. It echoes this. Pay is not the only thing. As Bill said, it's a big part of it. It's sort of table stakes. If you don't have that, you're not in the game, but a teacher wants to work for a strong principal and a school leader that's going to support them. So that's why you can't just pull out teachers and do this or IT people and do this. It's really got to be, you got to lift the whole boat up. So your comment reminded me of that. Thank you.
Thank you. And there are no other requests to speak?
I just want to reiterate, Vice President Collins, and the board, that I'm 100% in with this recommendation, and if we get to move this up to 12%, we will be leading not only the state but the whole market around this. So, and that will happen quickly in three years, which, so I just want to make sure that the board is aware of that, and I believe we can get there. I just think, you know, as everything else, it just takes time to do that.
Thank you. Moving forward, item C1. Oh, I'm sorry. Board member Goode.
Yes, given the time and the extraordinary amount of presentations we had today, I would like to make a motion to adjourn this meeting and call a special meeting for next Thursday at 5:00 PM to take up the business items, because we have, I think, 18 business items, and we spent the whole time doing these presentations. So I would like to, I don't know how we call a special meeting, I think the president needs to do that, but I would like to move to adjourn and ask the president to call a special meeting for next Thursday.
I'm not in disagreement, I'm just giving warning that I'm going to be out of town on that evening.
Okay.
But I'm not in disagreement.
Does not need a second. I just wanted to clarify, only the president can call a special meeting and set the agenda, so, yes.
And then I just would like to, off the record, just since we have adjourned, mention that Council shambling, I do look forward to, in July, us discussing and working towards a policy by the end of July on having a time limit, et cetera, for our meetings.
Actually, that policy has already been drafted. My plan was to meet with board members next week, 1/1, to go through that.
Thank you.
4/7.
Thank you, thank you. Adjourned, if it was not already clear, adjourned.